Good evening, everyone. Good evening. Our meeting is about to start for our city commission meeting for Tuesday, October 21st for 6:00 PM. Madam Clerk, can you please do the roll call?
Commissioner Shonoff.
Here.
Commissioner Florimond.
Here.
Commissioner Smith. Commissioner Smuckler.
Yes, she is.
Commissioner Sue.
Here.
Vice Mayor Daniella Jean. Mayor Michael Joseph.
I am here. Well, she... Okay. Next is our invocation by Pastor Tobin of the Full Ford Methodist Church.
Thanking everyone. Let's bow our hearts together. Oh, Holy One, we gather tonight seeking wisdom. Wisdom that is bigger than anyone here. Any of us, any of our egos, any of the work that we do. Bless our council, our staff, our neighbors. Let us have clear minds and steady hearts and the courage to serve the common good. For our city, North Miami, and the wider world, we pray. We pray for peace where there is conflict, safety where there is fear, and dignity for every person. Guide our decisions toward justice and compassion, especially for our community, our children and youth, our seniors, our working families, small businesses, and those without a voice. Give insight for issues close to home, for public safety, affordable housing, good schools, traffic and flooding, care for our environment, and resilience during hurricane season. Help us disagree without being disagreeable. Listen before speaking and seek solutions that lift our whole community. Thank you for the women and men who give their time to serve here. Hear our hearts, oh Holy One. Hear our prayers. May our work be marked by integrity, transparency, and hope. Teach us to love our neighbors in deed as well as word and walk humbly together. Let us be instruments of peace and voices for change. Bless this meeting and the outcomes and all the work that will follow. That what begins here tonight will bring life and flourishing to North Miami and peace to our world. Amen.
Amen. No, no. God knows all intentions, not just words, so...
North Miami Beach. Let the prayers come into North Miami Beach. Thank you.
Okay, next is our pledge of allegiance. We all stand.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, thank you all. And like, I'll just reiterate, God hears all. So sometimes we might not speak the right words, but He knows our intent. So as a preacher's son, I respect that and believe that wholeheartedly. Next is Madam Clerk. Do we have any requests for withdrawals, deferments, or additions to the agenda?
Yes, Mr. Mayor. At the request of Commissioner Sue, item number 9.18, which is resolution number 2025-160, is to approve the city commission meeting dates for the 2026 calendar. That is being requested to be pulled from the consent agenda and moved down to legislation. At the request of Commissioner Sue, item number 11.4, which is ordinance number 2025-09, this is to establish the Housing and Economic Development Department. That will be deferred to a future meeting date. Also, under appointments, item... Under appointments, item 13.4 is appointing Francesca Taylor to the Planning and Zoning Board. That is also being requested for a future date per the city clerk's office.
Thank you, Commissioner Smith.
Yes, I believe I was on the winning side of hiring somebody from... for Human Resources to help them with a national search for a manager. I'd like to bring that item back for revote. I've studied it now and I have more information I'd like to share with my fellow commissioners. I'd also like to discuss why we're taking the economic development and deferring it, being as the money was already put in the budget to establish it. And I was with the Beacon Council this morning from Dade County, and they are looking forward to collaborating with us. So I'd like to add that and I'd like to discuss before we vote on taking that out of the agenda tonight.
Okay, so what I'll do is this. Can we add that particular, the one that you... Just so we can confirm with the clerk to add it on the first part of discussion? Just for that particular, the one that you want to have a reconsideration?
Yes, that would be fine.
Okay, so we'll add that to the first item for discussion on our agenda.
I think that's a... In fact, that's a good idea before Human Resource comes up, yes. Thank you.
In our discussion. And I guess, in regards to...
Mr. Mayor, you wanted to add it to the first item, but...
Discussion for...
Correct, but the item for the city attorney has been on the back burner for three months now. So I'd like to maybe push that towards the end, and it's closer to when the Human Resources is going to make their presentation. So would that be okay if it's like, paired up together?
I have no issues with that. So we'll move Madam Clerk. So we have a request to keep the economic development ordinance on the agenda.
Okay.
To remain where it is. We also have an addition to the discussion. A reconsideration of the... Of the... Hiring the headhunter. The headhunter.
A headhunter. Can we do that at the same time as Jacob?
I think we could do that. I think we can do that.
Yeah.
We can still have the discussion with the Jacob because it's in there already. So that's inclusive, so we'll...
But I want to make it two parts, so we decide that first before we have the discussion because maybe it will pass and the discussion will be null and void. There's a lot of new information.
I agree that we should do it before Jacob does his presentation, but at the same time.
At the same time. So it'll be part of the discussion when we get to the item. It's under discussion.
Only if we'll have time, otherwise...
I am gonna... I'm gonna... Mind you, I'm gonna be as concise as possible.
We can move it later.
We can move it.
We can move everything later.
Depending on time. So Madam Clerk, do you understand where we are and what we're doing?
Yes.
So we're adding pretty much on one...
No, I mean, there was a rebuttal from Commissioner Smith about putting the economic development...
To remain, to keep it where it is.
Well, yes, a question. So there was supposed to be a discussion, so I thought I'd like to give my two cents. Creating a department and being a division requires a whole load of different money involved. And considering the budget that we are in right now, the deficit that we have, using all of our reserves to balance the budget, I would like to put that on hold until we get a city manager so that he can then decide if this is his forte or not. Perhaps if we do get a city manager that has the expertise in economic development, we might not even need anyone because he can probably direct the city, the community development director in the direction that would be more prosperous for us. So that's why I'm asking to defer it until we get a city manager.
I would like to keep it on for the simple reason that the million dollars is already put in the budget.
Yeah.
It was already approved to sidestep it. And even if you get a manager that can add to the economic development, he's running the entire city, he's running 450 employees, he's running everything else. The kind of devotion we needed, it was very exciting. The two-hour trip today around the city with... And I believe everybody was invited. But with the Beacon Council, the words out of their mouth when they left, the question was, what did they get out of it? And the answer was opportunity. The answer was advancement of a city. The answer was... And I mean, staff was there, they can justify everything I'm saying. I don't think things like this should be put off. We have the attorney, and if you read it, in fact, the very first paragraph when we get to it, there's one little sentence in there that explains every reason why we need an economic development. And I was going to read that sentence.
So we're... I'm for your statement and your position, Commissioner. So we're gonna... Right now, we're, like I said, we're gonna make one addition and I guess modification to the title of the discussion I am regarding when Jacob comes to also include the rediscussion of the headhunter. But we're also keeping the economic development where it is. Do I have a motion to accept the agenda as amended? I second. I can second it without passing the gap. All in favor, say aye. Aye. Any opposed?
Nay.
Yeah, one opposed. All right, next item is presentations. Our great Senator Chevron D. Jones.
Welcome.
Thank you all. I appreciate you. Thank you, Mayor. You promised me.
I promise. That's my promise.
All jokes aside, it's so good to be here with you all this evening. I would be remiss if I did not, who... My colleague on the other side of the chambers who is here, Representative Aristide who is here, who also joined me.
A doubleheader.
I know, right?
Right?
I'm going to do... I'm gonna do the legislative update and then I'm gonna bring Representative Aristide up so we could present the check to you all. That's okay. Okay, so first of all, to the residents, I also want to give the opportunity to introduce my team who does amazing work. That's Kai Gorrell, who is Chief of Staff. Devin in Carrington, who works very closely with the city. So I appreciate you all for at least having us to... Giving us the opportunity to serve you all. So let me start off by saying that this year, the legislative session went just a tad bit longer than usual. We have a 60-day legislative session, but this went about 105 days over because of the discrepancies within the budget that was happening in both the House and in the Senate. This year, we filed about 23 pieces of legislation. Of those, eight were heard in committee. Six were passed off the Senate floor and three were signed into law by the governor. These are a lot of these bills weren't just symbolic bills. They were real policies that addressed the issues that's happening within our district. I'll walk you through just a few of the bills that we passed this legislative session and were signed by the governor. We passed SB 14, which provided $1.7 billion in relief to the family of Peneo Javier, who was a young recreational leader. He drowned due to negligence in the city facility in the city of Miami Beach. We passed and signed Senate Bill 268, which protects the privacy and safety for our elected officials. And that shields your information prior to the governor signing this into law. As you all know, your information, the information of your spouse and the information of your children is public record. But now, now that the governor has signed this into law, your information can now be redacted. The information of your spouse and your children can be redacted. My office have been helping the elected officials within the district and across the state file your paperwork to be able to redact your home information and of your spouse and children. If you reach out to the office, they will walk you all through how to get that done and get your addresses redacted. We also passed SB 1174, which makes it easier for foster parents who move within the state to maintain their licensure. Prior to the governor signing this, if you were a foster care parent and you lived in, let's say, Orlando, you would not be able to move to a different county without having to, A, get a new license, and B, also put those children back into the foster care system. Now with this bill, you can take your license and you can take those foster care children that are under your care with you when you move throughout the state of Florida. This year, we... The state passed a $115 billion budget. About $1.5 billion of that was less than last year. It included about a $1.3 billion tax relief package with the headline being the permanent repeal of a lot of the business rent tax, which we have been fighting for quite some time since I've been in the House. But this year, the state actually went through with it. We submitted about 100 funding requests on behalf of the cities, towns, and the organizations that's across the district. Thirty-six of those were included in the budget that went to the governor's desk. And by the time the final signatures and vetoes were done, about 19 remained. If you all heard about any of the vetoes that took place this legislative session, I think the governor was an equal opportunity Democrat or Republican. Many people's projects were vetoed this year. But I am happy to bring home some money to the city of North Miami Beach. We're bringing back $300,000 that you all have requested for the North Miami Beach Police Marine Vehicle. That $300,000 that has been secured specifically for the city that myself and Representative Aristide and our other colleagues in the other chamber, we fought for to make sure that we bring home. In the year where the governor vetoed about $950 million in local projects, I'm happy that we have brought this home this year. And I have a few more things that I want to go through to let you all know about. We are about to move into the next legislative session, and we've already filed about 10 pieces of legislation with a couple of more to file. The session will start on January 13th. As you all know, committee weeks have already started. Thank you all for coming to Tallahassee because it really does mean a lot when you all come up there and it makes our job just a tad bit easier. I will... I do want to let you all know, I would encourage you to come just a tad bit earlier this year and not come just during session because I will be honest, the sausage is being made right now as we speak because the budget is tight this year. So my suggestion is that you all come during committee weeks to Tallahassee and then make one more visit during session. We've already filed about 10 pieces of legislation. One of them is SB 114, which is entitled "The Continuity of Care and Health Insurance Contracts." Currently, right now, within... There's a negotiation that's happening with an insurance company and a hospital. But the insurance company contract has elapsed with the hospital, and those individuals who were in network, thought to be in network, when they go to that hospital are no longer in network because the hospital and the insurance company are in negotiation with each other. And so now, individuals who go to the doctor, go to the hospital, who are on this particular plan, they're now out of network and they weren't notified that they're out of network. So this bill says that if a insurance company and a health practitioner are in negotiation with each other, that continuity of care must continue until you all work out whatever business transaction you are having, that's happening to ensure that individual's continuity of care is not interrupted. We've also filed SB 170, which is titled "Emergency Relief." We know that many Floridians are hurting right now. This will be a pot of money that the state of Florida will put aside where individuals will be able to apply into, to help them with relief with childcare, will help them with relief with health insurance payments, property insurance costs. It's more of like a hand up that's coming from the state of Florida for Floridians. It doesn't matter what your party is. I think we know that a lot of people are hurting right now within the state of Florida. In the last bill, and many of you have heard about it because we spoke about it in our legislative update we did, and that is the Blue Envelope Program that we are doing along with Representative Valdez. And this bill is for individuals with autism spectrum disorder. It provides them with a blue envelope where they can hold their driver's license, their insurance, and their registration that can be placed in the visor that if they're ever pulled over by a police officer, that they can hand that document over to police officers. Because as you all know, just because individuals might be autistic does not mean that they don't live a normal life. You have these individuals who drive, and sometimes they are verbal and sometimes they are nonverbal and to ensure that there are never any discrepancies or misunderstanding with our law enforcement. This is why we have filed this bill. And thank God, we are working with the Sheriff's Association and the Police Chiefs Association who have signed off on this piece of legislation. And hopefully, we can get that across the finish line. Again, I know that was kind of long, but thank you all so much. And we want to be able to present you all with this $300,000 to the city. Thank you again.
Mr. Mayor, could I say something?
Senator, before you leave, Commissioner Smith wants... A couple of our commissioners want to say a couple of words.
I would like to say to the state senator and to our representative, remember, every dollar counts. We'll take every one you can get for North Miami Beach. But I really wanted to mention something to you and with such gratitude and to the public. I was at that meeting where you come, both of you, come to us and say, we're here to hear what you want. We're here to hear what you need. So there was a meeting about two months ago that they... A woman came. She has children with autistic children. We spent about 20 minutes with representatives, understanding the needs and how can it be corrected with ideas. They have their assistants taking notes. They're taking notes. And look what happened. The public, through our state, our representatives created something that are going to help many lives, many people to have a better... Parents at home to rest a little easier while their children are out that are capable of driving. I can't thank you enough for listening. I can't thank you enough for doing something about it. And know that if you have an idea, it doesn't stop with you. Thank you so much.
Thank you, I appreciate you. Thank you.
Just a couple of things quickly I just wanted to mention. We do have an event tomorrow evening. We do have an event tomorrow evening. Yes, with me and the senator, we're going to bring Citizens Insurance. It's going to be, it's at the Senior Center, right, on 183rd and Northwest 12th Avenue. We need to talk to citizens. We've been chasing citizens since we got there. It's been hard to get them down in Miami. If anyone that's listening, please come and take advantage. If you have citizens, you're able to communicate with the representatives of citizens to be able to talk about what your concerns are. And we did work together. We did bring Florida Homes down here. And on next Wednesday, those that are looking for appropriations from the community, we will be in our office next Wednesday. I want to recognize my aide, Mr. Keter, Ellis Keter, who's here with us. He will be there. We will give you a presentation. Those that want to look for the state to try to get funding and appropriations, it is the money that we've all put in the, in the, in the pot. And I think it'll be good if we can get some of it back. So thank you so very much.
Thank you, State Rep. Thank you, Senator.
Thank you.
All right. Madam Clerk, next item on the agenda is public comment.
Good evening, everyone. The mayor and commissioner of the city of North Miami Beach has opened a meeting for public comment at this time. There is a three-minute time limit for each speaker. Speaker, when you're called to the podium, please state your name or the name of the organization which you are representing. The mayor and commissioner of the city of North Miami Beach recognizes the importance of civility. The city of North Miami Beach requests that all in attendance exercise civility towards each other. And our first two signed speakers are Janice Coakley and Eunice Flowers.
Good evening, Mayor, Council residents. Janice Coakley, city employee, ASME president for the general employee. Well, we had, I had two items to speak on, but one was taken care of. But we have employees that work out here in this city in the hot sun daily, and they start off at $15.76 an hour, plus have to pay for health insurance and et cetera. These are hard workers, these are some of them, and they work in beautification, they have multiple tasks. They will not live as long as I do because I work in the office, they work in the sun. I know residents and staff, city's employees out there working hard. In fact, they're planting some more beautiful trees over there. And all of we asking for, to look in, to adjust these employees' salary. They have had four interviews, and no one is accepting the job because it does not pay Also, the staff, the department is short four people because nobody wants the job for $15.76 an hour. We have part timers that work here in the city, making $45 per hour, up to over $100 per hour, and we cannot pay these employees a little bit more? Some of them are retirees, and I have that information. So please see what you could do for the beautification division. Well, these employees love their job, they love where they work, they love their manager, they like what they're doing, they just want to be paid like everyone. But if they take some of these part timers who making $45 an hour up and put some to their salary, thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Coakley. Before we, before we go to the next speaker, and Madam, Mr. Manager, you've heard the comments, I would like to take a moment, personal privilege to recognize Judge Hellman, Kevin Hellman from Miami-Dade County Court. Just if you want to come in and say a few words. I want to be a good member of the bar if I didn't do that, so.
Thank you. Good evening, everyone. My name is Kevin Hellman. As the mayor said, I'm a county court judge. I'm assigned to the Joseph Caleb Center in the Civil Division, and I just started there, I was appointed last July, July of 2024. I'm new to the bench, but I'm not new to practicing. Before that, I was an assistant public defender. I worked in the public defender's office here in Miami-Dade County for 28 years. Half of that time, I was the training director, so I worked developing young lawyers to represent people who cannot afford private counsel. My job is different now. I really appreciate being invited here, Mayor Joseph. It's a pleasure. I'm trying, now that I've got my feet under me and understanding my role as a judge, to get out into the community and to get to the different municipalities, to meet, to meet the officials and to meet the people and to hear what's on everybody's agenda in different neighborhoods, different communities that are in the county, because that's, that's, those are the cases that are coming before me. So I thank you. I look forward to meeting all of you further, and I'll stay for, for a good bit to hear what some of the, some of the concerns are of the people that are here for the meeting. So thank you.
Thank you, Judge. Please, Madam Clerk. Next speaker.
Eunice Flowers.
Good evening, everyone. Eunice Flowers, Sunray East. I want to take a moment to put this on record and to thank the mayor and commission for acknowledging my original intellectual property and creative rights. I would like to thank our city for entrusting me, someone who has been a proud resident for over 33 decades with a project so near and dear to my heart, the Washington Park Documentary. This initiative began as a project I started independently with my company, Beautiful Gates Production. As a creative entrepreneur, I was already in the works interviewing residents of Washington Park who gave their consent to share their stories. A special thank you to Reverend Kyle Gibson, who allowed me to use his church for the first round of interviews. All was on track and going well, then suddenly the project stalled. I have since learned and want to thank Katelye Juashen, a member of the Washington Park Voters' Council and Library Advisory Board, who coordinated efforts with Trish Harris and Lorenzo Hall, president of the Washington Parks Voter Council, to secure support for the documentary from the city and its various departments. Thank you so much. If I'm missing anyone who played a part, kindly let me know, as I want to acknowledge them as well. This initiative aligns directly with my mission to preserve neighborhoods at risk of having their histories erased and to celebrate their stories with dignity. It was also during this time that I began the Washington Park Documentary, that the Miami-Dade County Library System honored me by inducting me into their local author's program for my children's book, Maya and Xavier's Adventures in Little Haiti, which uplifts one of our most historic neighborhoods. I am also featured in the Miami Herald and several publications for this project's innovative leadership and my revolutionary work. This means so much to me again, and to the people I represent, oppressed and underserved populations, because America has a longstanding history of extracting, erasing, and capitalizing on the ideas and the labors of African Americans and other marginalized communities. Many persons of color continue to carry the scarcity mentality as a result of deeply rooted systemic racism, in efforts to feel powerful, to be important, and not to be overlooked. Blacks have been known to be repressed, sidelined, and undermined by their own people. A history unacknowledged is a history repeated. Tonight, by supporting a project led by a longtime resident and honoring the voices of those who live this story, North Miami Beach is choosing to write a different chapter, upholding accountability, public trust, and providing equitable access. Thank you for your commitment to preserving legacy and supporting local voices like me, Eunice Flowers. I look forward to working you all on the Washington Park Documentary. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker. Karen Harold.
Good evening. Hi, Joe. I think my foot fell asleep. My name is Stephen Zalkowitz. My address is 17301 Biscayne Boulevard. I'm here tonight as a resident of the great city of North Miami Beach. And Mr. Mayor, Vice Mayor, Commissioners, Mr. Intermanager, Mr. Attorney, first, I'd just like to thank you all for the hard work that you do and the hard decisions you make. So I'm here tonight to address the city manager search issue. So from my perspective, I would urge you all not to do a national search, not to spend the taxpayers' money, not to spend our time doing a national search. It's fundamental, it's fundamental to me at least, that a city manager of a South Florida city be from South Florida. It's fundamental to me that a city manager of a South Florida city have relationships with the Miami-Dade County Commissioners. I was down there this morning. It's not a nice place, all right? There's a lot of tough questions, there's a lot of information you need to know about your city, about South Florida, and what goes on here. So to look for someone from, I don't know where, Iowa, Chicago, Texas, California, who's going to come here, I think that puts us at a disadvantage downtown. I think it puts us at a disadvantage here. I remember, and I don't know if any of you remember, that we did hire a manager who was not from South Florida at one point. He was from far away. You remember. For two, I think he lasted seven months. And then we were back in the same position of looking for another city manager. So I know you all have, I think, 70 names of people. I don't know how many of them are from South Florida, but I think having knowledge of the region, the community, and the local government and the county government is fundamental to the job. So before you spend six months and I don't know how many thousands of dollars of the taxpayer money, doing a search to hire a company, to travel, to have people travel here, interviews, the process, I would urge you not to do it and to look for somebody from South Florida, and I think you have names already, and just please move ahead with the process. That's all I ask, as a resident. And lastly, I should mention too, that that person should have knowledge of Florida Community Redevelopment Agencies and how they operate. And someone from Iowa, Chicago, or Texas isn't going to have that information. And you have a road ahead to extend your CRA that's going to involve the city manager. That's a negotiation between the city, the CRA, and the county. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker is Mara Hawk, and then Karen Harold.
Good evening, everybody. My name is Mara Hawk. I am a resident of this no-so-beautiful, nicely-friendly city anymore. Sorry to say that, but it's how I feel. As a resident of this city, we must hold our representative accountable by staying vigilant and closely monitoring their proposals and actions. With the residents highlight our concerns, in reality, we clear fact, despite the risk of being silenced for expressing this truth. I urge the mayor and commissioners to prioritize essential needs, such as city cleanup, beautification, and improved security, before even considering extravagant purchases like a boat or the expenditures that will further increase our taxes. To maintain a stable economy, we must put an end to frivolous spending. Thank you.
Thank you. Madam Clerk, let us take the time.
My name is David Zepin. The last name spells Zulu Abel Papa Echo November. I'm the founder of the blog zepin.subsec.com, including my personalized links to real estate financing and cryptocurrency exchange. I ran briefly for mayor in 2023, leaving to guarantee a quicker result. I still have my key to my 2007 gifted elementary classroom disabled, earned by picking up eight teaching credentials than passing the Jeopardy! exam consecutively, which means I will never clean dead feral animals from the streets, resell books in the city library, both jobs where I interviewed, or be a consultant for the police department. Fine and good. I am just another gray nomad of work with unsteady pay and benefits instead of an office among the once envied window-side tribe of Japan. My life can be summed up in three Hollywood stories. Getting egged on my way from work in 87, applying for University of Florida in 88, only to attend FU North without an acceptance letter, and warning the Public's Magazine in '01 that their new house brand of apple juice had zero nutrition despite their five-foot ads to the contrary. Where is my cash reward for saving them a bad reputation? There's so much for my hopes as a national merit scare scholar semifinalist as a member of the 1%. What are the chances for normal people, the 68%? How much useful work gets delayed or shared by my overworked would-be coworkers, creating, creating false profit on the ledger? I thought the Bible taught us to beware of false profit, Matthew 7:15, by not having the work. The police-involved shooting in early September points to a larger mental health crisis in and around the old Wolford-by-the-Sea area. The overworked, the under earning, the desperate who beg me for money. I hope it leads to a heightened demand for social workers and related help, whom I hope are less expensive than the SWAT-level law enforcement. First responders are priceless. Zero responders like me can only do so much to keep the confused out of their inboxes.
Fifteen seconds.
Maybe this Kuwait War era systems analyst can do storytelling, like my Vietnam War era opposite number, Dennis Prager. Maybe I should run for governor, if only as a joke like Pat Paulson. Thank you.
Thank you, Time. Next signed speakers are our former Commissioner Barbara Kramer and Mr. Kazan.
Good evening, Barbara Kramer. Commissioner Jean, I wanted to thank you for your resolution or ordinance regarding the public arts. I didn't come up here on first reading, but I just wanted to say, I think it's a great idea. We've always kind of wanted our developers to bring in art with, when they came before us. We haven't seen that in a while, but one thing I do want to ask is that you do find professionals for this committee that are from backgrounds with art and design, architecture, branding, marketing, and that type of thing. We still don't have any branding in this city, so I don't know how we're going to be choosing what we want them to bring here. And I keep stressing how important it is for the city to have some sort of branding so we know who we are. It's, I feel like, a broken record. I think you know how important it is, and I hope you'll push that initiative. Regarding the Housing and Economic Development Department, I really believe this needs to be held off until we have a permanent city manager. Bringing in a whole new department, and we don't even have, we have an interim, but we, we're going to have someone who's going to see things differently. If it's something you all want to do collectively, I just think you need a permanent city manager here to execute this type of thing. And finally, the ordinance regarding the reduction of development costs for previously approved projects impacted by economic conditions. If our city needs to take more time to speak to these developers about a new development that they want to do because they can't afford to do what they did prior... that they want to do because they can't afford to do what they did prior, I don't know why we need to reduce those fees because we're doing this all over again, and we're allowing them to reduce their costs, which then is going in turn to reduce our revenue coming in because they won't be the big developments they were supposed to be. And maybe we should find out if their attorneys are reducing their costs because why should we reduce our costs? And then they're paying all this big money to these savvy attorneys, you know, to reduce their development. I also don't think we need to school these people on, you know, I guess, tax credit programs, bond programs, and housing subsidies. I think that's something they should know while they're coming into here. Otherwise, I don't know why we're having these type of developers spending this kind of money. I don't think they can afford it if they don't even know that type of information. So that's all for now. Thank you very much.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Mabara Kazan. Just to note, the mayor got up and left when public comment is on, but he humbled by the people that voted for him. There's his humbleness. I want to make mention of Senator, the Senator Chevron Jones, he came and he donated like $300,000. And he told you about what he voted for, but he never told you that he voted for North Miami Beach not to get any more surcharge from Miami Gardens. He voted for it. Him and all the people that you guys were clapping and cheering for, they voted to not to starve North Miami Beach of that. And I do not know why you guys went and hugged him up, kissing him up, and all these things. You know, he should not even be coming to give that speech here. And the mayor, the liaison, he is the water plant. He's the liaison for the PUC. The mayor, Michael Joseph, he never came to a meeting for the entire year. And when we have the discussions to be happening to take away North Miami Beach Water Plant, if we make a couple errors, he tells the commissioners, the staff, everybody not to come, let him alone go. I heard him and Chevron Jones squared off in some physical match. And I told the individual that was just a put-on show. You want to know which side he is on. I don't think he's on our side to keep that water plant. And he's going to have to go pretty sooner or later. The city manager, I just think that you need to do the national search. The last time we had a city manager, the last several times we had city manager coming from Dade County, was a lot of wheeling and dealing and outsourcing this and outsourcing that. We need a national search. And when Lyndon Bonner was here, the guy from Auto State, the things were running really well until he suckered up to the mayor. And whenever a city manager, interim city manager, suckers up to a mayor, that is when our city gets problem. I tell staff, I tell the managers, I tell the attorneys, not to sucker up to the mayor. You have seven people we elected, and you need to listen to the seven people, not just one person. The mayor is the titular head for a meeting only. He has one vote. He does not own the city. So you have to smart up on that. Economic Development Department, I agree with Commissioner, former Commissioner Barbara Kramer and Commissioner Lin Su. Commissioner Smith, you voted against the budget, so I do not know how you're boasting that you voted for the Economic Development Department. You voted against the budget. You voted against that. And finally, okay, let me talk my...
Let me finish.
I do not, I disagree with G5 having their extension license. I think we do need to fire the city attorney.
Thank you, Mr. Kazan. Thank you. Next speaker.
Karen Harold.
Karen Harold, North Miami Beach resident. Welcome to everybody, mayor, vice mayor, commissioners, city manager, staff, city attorney, lovely clerk. Welcome back, Commissioner Su. Hope your mom's doing well. Nice to see all the faces. Okay, I wanted to talk about on the agenda 12 business tax receipts regarding the extending the operating hours for Taboo Miami G5. It's a very bad idea. The business location is 337 Northwest 170th Street. What the business offers from a web search is adult entertainment. You can even book time and events for the ultimate adult experience. Did you know the age for entrance is 18? Hmm. How does this contrast with the city's professed goals towards programs and events geared towards educational initiatives for our youths and residents? What message does this send to our youth? The usual age for clubs is 21, not 18. Is there any city code restricting the age for clubs? And if not, maybe there needs to be. The existing hours of operation, if the web is correct, are Wednesday and Thursday, 6:00 PM to 2:00 AM, Friday and Saturday, 6:00 PM to 3:00 AM, Sunday and Monday, 6:00 PM to 2:00 AM. Put it all back to 2:00 AM. The club is right at the intersection of major highways that many customers will use to go home, increasing the risk to other drivers on the roads due to drunk driving. The end result from a drunk-driving accident can be devastating. Recently, there was a tragedy on the New Jersey Turnpike when four young men, teenagers, were returning home from a trip after all the holidays that we just had during the early morning hours. They were hit head-on by a wrong-way drunk driver, and they were all killed. The later clubs are open where alcohol consumed and the greater risk of a drunk-driving accident occurring, putting other drivers on the roadways at greater risk. If your child or relative was returning home from a school trip or camp experience and on the road, many schools have trips to, like Disney World, and to stay the most time there. They often come back at the early morning hours. Or even if you're driving with your family, returning from a trip. Would you want to be a part of increasing the risk of a drunk-driver accident? We have a responsibility, not only for the residents of NMB, but to the drivers of the highways near us. A blood alcohol concentration, BAC, of 0.08% is a legal limit for driving. Even a BAC below the legal limit can cause impairment and increased risk of a crash. At a BAC of just 0.02%, you can experience a decline in visual function and a relaxed feeling. By 0.05%, you may have reduced coordination, impaired judgment, and lowered alertness. Please do not allow extended hours for this club. If possible, bring all the closing hours back to 2:00 AM and increase the age for entrance to 21. I beat the clock.
Thank you, Ms. Harold. Next speaker.
Mr. Mayor, there was the last signed speaker.
All right. Seeing public comment is closed, next is agenda item number seven, announcements, Communication Department.
Good evening. Jasmine Joseph with the Communications Department. Go ahead and take it away, IT. This October, there's so much happening in the city of North Miami Beach. From community planning sessions and cleanup days to family festivals and fitness events, it's a month full of connection, celebration, and engagement. The City of North Miami Beach Mayor and Commissioner invite you to take part in Comprehensive Plan Public Shiret Week, an exciting opportunity to help shape the future of your community. Join residents, neighbors, and city planners from a series of interactive events where ideas and collaboration come together to design a shared vision for North Miami Beach. On Wednesday and Thursday, October 22nd and 23rd, stop by the Open Design Studio between 10:00 AM and 2:00 PM at the Yes Center Computer Lab. Then Thursday evening, join us for the Highland Village Open House from 6:00 PM to 7:00 PM at the Highland Village Community Center. To conclude the week of shirets, Friday, join the Work in Progress presentation, October 24th, from 6:00 PM to 8:30 PM at the Marjory and William McDonald Center. This is your chance to share your voice and be a part of the planning process. For details, contact the Community Development Department at 305-948-2966 or email planning@citynmb.com. Join us for Friday, October 24th, for our monthly senior luncheon. Enjoy great food, raffles, and friendly conversation in a warm and welcoming atmosphere. For more information, call 305-948-2957 or email nmbparks@citynmb.com. Help keep North Miami Beach clean and beautiful during Florida City Week. Join our neighborhood cleanup on Saturday, October 25th, from 7:00 AM to noon at the Ulieta Community Center. Work alongside our Public Works, Code Compliance, Parks and Recreation, and Police Departments, and take part in recycling demonstrations and educational activities. For more details, call the Public Works Department at 786-988-4929. Celebrate Halloween in style at our Pumpkin Decorating for Seniors event, Saturday, October 25th, from 11:30 AM to 1:30 PM at the North Miami Beach Discovery Library. Bring your creativity and enjoy a fun, festive morning of decorating, laughter, and community. For more information, call the NMB Library at 305-948-2970 or visit nmlib.com. Get ready, ghouls and goblins. The City of North Miami Beach Parks and Recreation Department invites you to the Monster Mash Bash, Saturday, October 25th, from 5:00 PM to 9:00 PM at the NMB City Hall. Enjoy music, dancing, games, and costume fun for the whole family in a safe and festive environment. For more information, contact NMB Parks Department at 305-948-2957 or email nmbparks@citynmb.com. As we start our countdown to our centennial, step back in time at the Roaring 1920s Kids' Costume Contest, happening during Monster Mash Bash at 8:00 PM on Saturday, October 25th. Children ages 3 to 15 are invited to dress up in flapper dresses, suspenders, pearls, and hats for a chance to win prizes. A parent or guardian must be present. For more information, call 305-787-6028 or email communications@citynmb.com. Atiende a nosotros Dia Mundial contra el Cáncer de Seno. This program will be presented in Spanish. Para más información llama a 305-948-2970 o visita nmlib.com. The fun continues at the NMB Discovery Library with pumpkin carving and not-so-scary Halloween party, Saturday, October 25th. Pumpkin carvings begin at 5:00 PM, followed by the party at 6:00 PM. Enjoy blui storytime, crafts, and costume contests, and trick-or-treating for the whole family. For more information, call NMB Library at 305-948-2970 or visit nmlib.com. Join us for the Breast Cancer Awareness Roundtable on Saturday, November 1st, at 10:30 AM at the NMB Discovery Library. Meet doctors and survivors, enjoy cooking samples, and visit the mammogram mobile unit and the NMB Police Breast Cancer Awareness Vehicle. Learn, connect, and support awareness in your community. For more information, call the NMB Discovery Library at 305-948-2970 or visit nmlib.com. Move, sweat, and have fun with Free Community Zumba, sponsored by Aetna. Join Wednesday, November 5th, from 6:00 PM to 7:00 PM at the Ulieta Park Community Center. It's open to all ages and experience levels and a great way to stay active and meet new people. Call 305-948-2957 or email nmbparks@citynmb.com. Need care but do not have insurance? The UMC Mobile Clinic will be at the NMB City Hall on Saturday, November 8th, from 11:00 AM to 2:30 PM. No cost, no insurance, and no appointment needed. Receive primary care, pediatrics, mental health support, blood pressure, diabetes checks, and more. Clinics run monthly through December. On Thursday, November 13th, join us for the State of the Education. Hear from Dr. Jose Dores, Superintendent of Miami-Dade County Public Schools, and explore local resources that support student success and family engagement. The resource fair begins at 4:30, followed by the keynote at 6:00 PM. Held at City Hall, this event is sponsored by Vice Mayor Daniela Jean. Share your ideas at the FIU North Campus TOD Plan Workshop Number Three. Join us Wednesday, November 19th, from 6:00 PM to 8:00 PM at the McDonald Center. Learn about the proposed 151st Street and Biscayne Boulevard Station and help shape the future of transportation in our city. For more details, contact the Community Development Department at 305-948-2966 or email planning@citynmb.com. There is something for everyone this October and November in North Miami Beach. Stay involved, stay connected, and learn more at citynmb.com.
Thank you, Communications. Before we go to our next item, we have Senator Daphne Campbell. In the honor, if you can come up, because we're supposed to do a proclamation, and her team, I believe, because if you can come up real quick. Commissioner Jean, if you can add additional thoughts.
Thank you so much, Senator Campbell, for being here tonight. As many of you may know, October is a month where we highlight domestic violence and out of tragedy. Our senator actually was able to start a foundation highlighting a personal tragedy. So tonight, myself and also Commissioner Shurnoff would like to honor, on behalf of
All right. I'm going to read the proclamation and then hand over for thoughts to our senator. Okay. The proclamation of the great city of North Miami Beach. Whereas Jason Dwayne Campbell was born on October 3rd, 1997, the youngest of Hubert and Daphne Campbell, R and B S N, growing up in a home filled with faith, music, sports, family traditions, and abiding in love for the community. And whereas Jason's life was tragically cut short at the age of 23 by an act of senseless gun violence on June 1st, 2021, Jason's life was a testament to resilience, creativity, vision distinguished as an athlete, an entrepreneur, a father, a poet, a songwriter, a rapper who shared his gifts to uplift those around him and inspire future generations. And whereas his greatest pride and joy were his children, Janaya, Carter, Harmony, for whom he worked tirelessly to build a secure and meaningful future. And whereas Jason's vibrant spirit, humor, and generosity of heart continue to echo through the words he lived by: "You have to love people for who they are. Life is about accepting and denying." And whereas out of the tragedy, the Jason Dwayne Campbell Foundation was established to honor Jason's legacy by working to end violence, empower youth, support families navigating grief, transforming pain into a beacon of hope, and in action for the community. And whereas on October 21st, 2025, the City of North Miami Beach joins with former Senator Daphne Campbell, family, friends, and the broader community in recognizing Jason's life, his legacy, and the continuing impact of the foundation created in his memory. Now therefore, we, the mayor and the commissioner of the great city of North Miami Beach, do hereby proclaim October 21st, 2025, as Jason Dwayne Campbell Day in the City of North Miami Beach, and commend the Jason Dwayne Campbell Foundation for its ongoing commitment to peace, youth empowerment, and community transformation. and community transformation. Signed by Mayor and Commissioner, Senator Campbell.
Well, I don't have no words. On behalf of my son, I lost. Go ahead. Four years ago, he was sleeping when that lady killed him and taking him away from us. The legacy I created on behalf of my son is to fight gun violence for people who don't understand how hard it is for a mother to bury your own child instead of the child to bury his own mother. We all standing here. We standing here on behalf of every parents going through what I'm going through every day. So I thank you guys for everything. I thank you, Mayor, Vice Mayor, for honoring the legacy of my son. Today is my turn, tomorrow you don't know. It will be your turn because gun violence, it's doing such a horrible, horrible, horrible things to everybody's life. You could be sitting in your house, you could be driving, you could even go into any event and you got killed by somebody who don't know who you are. Thank you. I don't know what to say again. I pass it to...
Well, you guys, my name is Sandra Love, and I just want to say we thank you for your support. And this community needs everyone to stick together and come against gun violence. Because somebody, I will note, multiple people in this room know somebody that has lost their life due to gun violence. It's rapid, and we need to stand together. We can't do it alone. And thank you to the City of North Miami Beach for honoring Senator Daphne Campbell and the foundation.
I just want to take the time to make sure that all of us take an active role in sharing the message of gun safety, and also ensuring that whether it's domestic violence or gun violence, that we all stand against it. Because any life lost in a tragedy such as this is a life too much. So we stand with you in solidarity for the movement, and anything that we can do to prevent gun violence, and also to encourage our youth and young adults to know how important it is to deal with circumstances in a positive way instead of choosing a violent option. So thank you for your presence tonight, and we stand with you.
Let's take a picture real quick.
Mr. Mayor, again, may I ask?
Yes, Commissioner Smith.
I think this is an appropriate time. I was given, microphone's on. I think this is appropriate time that I was given the thank you note that was sent to North Miami Beach from the family of one of our employees that we just lost to gun violence. Melvin Victor was so loved here in North Miami Beach that they had to have and bring in clergy to help his fellow employees accept that he wasn't here anymore. I want to read the thank you note. It's for all of North Miami Beach, and it's on behalf of the Victor family. On the behalf of my family, I want to extend our deepest thanks to the mayor, the city commissioners, and everyone who played a meaningful role in honoring my brother's life. Your presence, your words, and your support during his funeral meant more to us than words can express. Thank you for standing by us in our time of sorrow and for helping us celebrate his life with dignity, love, and respect. And like Senator Campbell, he was 21 years old. I believe he was 21 or 22. He was a very young man, just starting his life. With heartfelt gratitude, Melvin's brothers and sisters. And then there's a note from his mother. To the City of North Miami Beach, from the depth of our hearts, we thank you for standing by our family during this most difficult time of our lives. When my son passed away, your support and assistance with the funeral brought us comfort, strength, and a sense of community we will never forget. Your kindness, compassion, and generosity will always be remembered. Thank you for being there when we needed you the most with sincere gratitude. And this is the beautiful card. I just, I think it's too many. I didn't know you were coming tonight. I know your family. It's a tremendous loss for everybody. And you know, it's years, and you see a mother still grieving because the grief never goes away. It just never goes away. So I just wanted to bring that up, and thank you, Mr. Mayor, for allowing that family to be heard again how appreciative they are of North Miami Beach. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Commissioner Smith. I echo the same sentiments. Adam Clerk will move to announcements. Oh, that's Commissioner's report, sorry. Madam Clerk.
Commissioner Chernoff.
Good evening, everybody. I'd like to thank Jasmine for a wonderful kickoff event for our 100th anniversary. The logo is beautiful. You unveiled it, the way you unveiled it was very nice. I think everybody appreciated it. It was during the auditorium, for those of you didn't attend. But we're going to have many, many more, and thank you. I want to thank, which I haven't ever, but I want to thank the President of the United States for creating and working on a ceasefire for Israel. And that was a big, big deal, and we want to thank the President. Now to Hamas, please return all the bodies. That's all we need right now. Thank you. All right. Mr. Manager. I'd like to, and I think we've talked about it already, propose a kind of recognition of Mayor Jeffrey Mishcon. And I haven't heard anything more, but Challenger Park is in the name of Pat Mishcon. And to even, we have?
Voted on it, to him, yeah.
We're going to, we have a, it was Commissioner Smith's item. We're going to, we're going to update it. We have to do a whole ribbon coming?
Excuse me. Sorry about that. All right. And the manager did come up to me before the meeting and say that he's working on getting a meeting with all of us on the pickleball courts. Because this weekend, Fort Lauderdale announced just opened a stadium, pickleball stadium, with a whole stadium seating and everything. And we're missing the boat. You know, city after city is opening pickleball courts, and we have the facility, and we need to open it. All right. Breast cancer awareness. Again, I talked about it. It's so important for early detection. Ladies, 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 check your own. Be on, feel yourself. Sounds ridiculous, but do it. And that is going to be the difference. If you feel something that's not supposed to be there, go to your doctor, please, please. And on a sad note, Richard Burton, one of our community forever, big dedication to him. He was truly a person that cared about this community, and we're so sorry on his passing. Thank you.
I was going to ask the city attorney if you wanted, because you guys both attended the ceremony. I wasn't able to, but I echo the same sentiments of Mr. Burton, and the entire Burton family. If you know the history of this county, you know that family, so.
Commissioner Floramon.
Thank you. First of all, thank you so much to everyone who is here this evening and who have made themselves available to participate in our meeting. I also want to echo the sentiments of Commissioner Chernoff, and especially during this high holiday season, for there to be hope for families and reuniting of families. You know, that is a big deal. And so we are grateful for that. And we are wishing the entire Jewish community in North Miami Beach and beyond a safe and hopeful high holiday season. Also, we, as a city, came together. I know our police department was very involved in doing domestic violence awareness, so wanted to highlight their good work. And also, this month is Mental Health Awareness Month. And so please take some time for yourselves. That's very important. And, you know, make sure your mental health is priority. In addition to that, also what was already mentioned, the Centennial kickoff was amazing. So thank you so much to the entire team, to Jasmine, our city manager's office, everyone on the team for making it a special occasion. And the logo looks really good next to the letters NMB. So I think that's really a good way to highlight that Centennial logo moving forward, so. And I'm seeing it here, so it makes a lot of sense where it's positioned. So anyways, aside from that, looking forward to an expedient meeting, and let's get it started. Thank you.
Commissioner Smith. Thank you so much. I was not able, I was out of town and wasn't able to go to the kickoff of the Centennial. But I heard from many, many people, it's the first time that I never heard a negative thought. Everybody was so positive. They enjoyed it so much. They said it was elegant and beautiful and the right amount of time for each thing that was done. So I do appreciate all the hard work that went in it. I sat in most of those meetings, and there was a lot of hard work, a discussion to get that on the table. I want to thank everybody for their prayers and their beautiful, kind, best wishes. I'll take all that I can get, and I want to thank you. I'm doing well. I want to mention that if you came here tonight and you're sitting here, you went through that lobby, did you feel like you were in a different city? That is what I'm talking about. That's what I've been preaching about. I am so appreciative. It is amazing. It's amazing. Now let's take that as our lowest standard, and let's just go from there because it's magnificent. And if you have no reason to come to the city, now you have a reason. Come and see the lobby, your tax dollars paid for, and you'll go home and be proud. So I was very excited when I saw it. It was like a transition overnight. And you know what? It puts other cities for the first time to shame. We're shining. I also want to tell you, usually all of you spend my anniversary with me, but Halloween happens to be on Saturday, the 25th, so I will miss you on the 31st for me and my dear husband's 59th anniversary. Thank you. But I do expect you all to be to my 60th. I do. So I also, I want to say that, you know, this Friday night, and I know it's on a Friday, not reasonable for our Orthodox families, but we're having more than one. You have an opportunity to say what you want in the city. What's the next thing that you want to make look like the lobby? What do you want done? I've heard it, and I've badgered the manager. He thankfully still picks up the phone when he sees my number, about the cleanliness of the city. About the cleanliness, just the simple cleanliness of the city. So we've been badgered by it. And Mr. Manager, these young men that came before us tonight, they're just starting out. They could have families at home. They could be just, they could be dating. They could be helping their families. At $15 an hour to work in that sun, no wonder we can't get... Let's readjust. We have a budget there that maybe we can see what we're doing. We're always talking, the manager and I, about the salaries we're paying for the benefits we're getting. Not that the employees aren't good, but do they belong in a different position so that we can utilize their expertise to make the city a better place for everyone? And so now I want to end on a happy note, that be safe for Halloween with your children. Come to the Halloween functions at North Miami Beach. It's our favorite four-letter word. It's a four-letter F-word. It's free. To bring your children to bounce houses, to rides, to music. It does cost $2 to go through the haunted house. But I'll tell you something. It's $2 worth the best fright you ever had. And it's our employees that are doing the hard work to make sure you get your money's worth and more. So come and be safe on Halloween. Everybody have a safe month, and I look forward to our next meeting, as well as, as my fellow commissioners said, a beautiful, smooth meeting tonight. Thank you so much. Commissioner Smukler.
Thank you. Good evening. We do need to bring those bodies home. The families need to bury them. Thank you to President Trump for getting this accomplished. And thank you, Jay, for acknowledging that. I really do appreciate that. I had a great time in, at the Centennial. It was, it was fun. It was a good, it was a fun event for all the, all those that were there. I want to wish those who celebrate Diwali a happy Diwali. Did I say that right, Diwali? Okay, all right. And November 1st, there will be Mammogram Mobile at the library, and it's free for those women without insurance. We will also be having a roundtable about breast cancer awareness there at the library. I want to thank PD for taking care of our families, our residents, our businesses, our employees. And I would like everybody to save. I have two dates for them to save. Thursday, December 18th, we're going to be doing a menorah lighting. And February, Saturday, February 21st, will be the Heart Health Walk. So I hope to see you all there. Thank you.
Commissioner Sue.
Thank you. First of all, happy 59th anniversary in advance. That's quite an accomplishment. Well, you're still together, so that's what counts. I also want to acknowledge all the survivors for the breast cancer, you know, in this month of October. I actually acknowledge you every month, not just October, but in this special occasion, definitely. The inspiration of your survival actually allows anyone who's going through that to have the, to have the inspiration to fight through it. I also want to acknowledge President Trump for not just the ceasefire in the Middle East, also Thailand and Cambodia. The conflict there was also settled because of him. So that saved a lot of our people's lives in Asia as well. The, now, the last thing is, I'm not ending on a happy note, but the budget has passed, but the real work now begins. Because we do have to see where we can save so that we're not, or we could actually give back to that reserve that we had borrowed to balance our budget. So if we can tighten up our belt a little bit and spend where we really need to spend, most importantly, where transparency is, you know, is needed and wanted, accountability is needed and wanted, that is where the taxpayers' money will be. that is where the taxpayers' money will be well spent. So I'm going to be on the lookout for that, and this is now the beginning of the year, so let's, let's get to work. Thank you.
Vice Mayor Danielle Lejeune?
Thank you. Good evening, everyone. I'll start off by thanking our manager and the entire team for the budget process. We made it through. I want to also champion the beautification committee that came before us tonight, because we know that they're the backbone of what we're looking for as it relates to the vision for the city, but oftentimes they're forgotten. So I know there's a lot of employees who are looking to be made whole in one way or another, and we, we have to support our employees. We have to champion them, Mr. Manager. So I know it's a tough, tough task, a tall order, but, you know, we look to you to make sure that people who have invested in the city are respected in that way. So I wanted to put that out there. I did want to thank Public Works for the lobby. That job was done all in-house. So Public Works. Amazing. My only exception are the plants. The plants must go, Mr. Manager. The plants must go. Those are not, those are not conducive to government. I know we're tropical, but that's not it. That's not it. We have to take a look at those plants, because that's just not it. But I did want to also thank Jasmine, the Centennial Committee, every staff member that took part in an amazing celebration. I know with Jennifer leaving and transitioning, it was a tough, tall order as well. So thank you for making that celebration very special. I hear that we have a new CIP manager. Do we? Not yet? Well, the projects are still waiting to be done. So even with a new budget, without a CIP person, you know, we can't assure that these jobs are actually getting, that these projects are getting done. So I really want to see more progressive work done in that area. My mother had the battle with breast cancer all of last year and into this year, and so she just finished treatment about two months ago, so to all. Yes. So, you know, health is wealth. I'm always championing that and make sure that you take care of yourself. If you can't take care of yourself and your family, then we can't serve in the proper way. Also, want to thank PD for the amazing work that they're doing, and to all the families who are burying loved ones during this time. Our hearts and prayers go out to you. Because as we enter into the holiday season, you know, family is very important. So even though we try to, we drive you crazy from this part of the day, we want to make sure that our employees and their families are taken care of and that we all take care of ourselves. So thank you.
Mayor Michael Joseph?
Thank you. Madam Clerk, I'll be quick. It's succinct. You know, we've lost a couple of people, last few meetings, one being Antonio Ortega, as well as Larry Thompson, who was a volunteer and was on the P&amp;Z board, was the appointee of the vice mayor. It was a beautiful ceremony that was held over at Fulford. The commission was well represented and sent its condolences to that family and the fact of all the history that they go back, especially in the Washington Park area. Want to give my condolences and also say that we are here and will always be here in showing support and love, and they've continued to do so well after the fact. They said, whatever you need from us, Mr. Mayor, and from the commission, we'll always be here, because they are part of that DNA. And finally, I just want to wish you guys happy and safe Halloween. Stay safe, stay blessed. Looking for an expedient meeting. Madam Clerk, next item is?
Consent agenda.
Consent agenda.
Move to approve.
Move to introduce.
Second.
Move to introduce, excuse me.
City Attorney?
Yes, sir, Mr. Mayor. Item 9.1 is Commission Conference Minutes of September 8, 2025, sponsored by City Clerk. Item 9.2, regular commission meeting minutes of September 8, 2025, sponsored by the City Clerk. Item 9.3, public budget hearing minutes of September 9, 2025, sponsored by City Clerk. 9.4, public budget hearing minutes of September 29, 2025, sponsored by City Clerk. Item 9.5, Resolution Number R 2025-147, approval of agreement renewal with FIU for transfer station, sponsored by the interim Public Works Director. Resolution of the Mayor and City Commission in the City of North Miami Beach, Florida, approving and authorizing the city manager to execute the Third Amendment to the license agreement between the City of North Miami Beach and the Florida International University Board of Trustees for the purpose of extending the term of the agreement for the operation of the transfer station through November 30, 2026, providing the city management with authority to execute all documents necessary to effectuate this amendment, providing for conflicts, providing for scrivener's errors, providing for severability, and providing for an effective date. Item 9.6, Resolution Number R 2025-148, approving and authorizing the award of invitation to bid Number ITB 2025-042, Northeast 168th Street and Northeast 20th Avenue Roundabout Project, sponsored by the interim Public Works Director. Resolution of the Mayor and City Commission in the City of North Miami Beach, Florida, approving and authorizing the award of invitation to bid Number ITB 2025-042, Northeast 168th Street and Northeast 20th Avenue Roundabout Project, authorizing the city manager designated to execute an agreement with the lowest responsive and responsible bidder, authorizing the city manager designated to do all things necessary to effectuate this resolution and subject to the budget appropriation and availability of funds and providing for an effective date. Item 9.7, Resolution Number R 2025-149, approving the purchase of a 2025 Grady White Canyon boat, sponsored by the Chief Police. Resolution of the Mayor and City Commission in the City of North Miami Beach, Florida, approving and authorizing a purchase order with Marine Max East, Inc., for the sole source purchase of a 2025 Grady White Canyon boat in an amount not to exceed $412,000. Authorizing the city manager designated to do all things necessary to effectuate this resolution, subject to the budget appropriation and availability of funds, providing for conflicts, providing for scrivener's errors, providing for severability, and providing for an effective date. Item 9.8, Resolution Number R 2025-150, approving a purchase order for water meter fittings, sponsored by the Water Director. Resolution of the Mayor and City Commission of the City of North Miami Beach, Florida, approving purchase orders between the city and multiple vendors for the purchase of water meter fittings and water line accessories for an annual budgeted amount not to exceed $690,000. Authorizing the city manager designated to do all things necessary to effectuate this resolution, providing for conflicts, providing for scrivener's errors, providing for severability, and providing for an effective date. Item 9.9, Resolution Number R 2025-151, approving the sole source purchase of tank inspections and cleanings, sponsored by the Water Director. Resolution of the Mayor and City Commission in the City of North Miami Beach, Florida, approving and authorizing a purchase order with CROM LLC for the sole source purchase of tank inspections and cleanings in an amount not to exceed $121,780. Authorizing the city manager designated to do all things necessary to effectuate this resolution, subject to the budget appropriation and availability of funds, providing for conflicts, providing for scrivener's errors, providing for severability, and providing for an effective date. Item 9.10, Resolution Number R 2025-152, third-party claim services, sponsored by the HR Director. Resolution of the Mayor and City Commission of the City of North Miami Beach, Florida, approving a purchase order between the city and Preferred Government Claim Solutions, Inc., for third-party claim services for a budget amount not to exceed $120,450 for two years of service. Authorizing the city manager designated to do all things necessary to effectuate this resolution, providing for conflicts, providing for scrivener's errors, providing for severability, and providing for an effective date. Item 911, Resolution Number R 2025-153, approval for the purchase and installation of audiovisual equipment for the McDonald Center, sponsored by the interim Parks and Recreation Director. Resolution of the Mayor and City Commission in the City of North Miami Beach, Florida, approving a purchase order between the city and AVI-SBC LLC for the purchase and installation of audiovisual equipment in a budgeted amount not to exceed $117,070. Authorizing the city manager designated to do all things necessary to effectuate this resolution, providing for conflicts, providing for scrivener's errors, providing severability, and providing for an effective date. Item 9.12, Resolution Number R 2025-154, approval of strategic plan, sponsored by the interim city manager. Resolution of the City Commission in the City of North Miami Beach, Florida, approving, excuse me, adopting strategic plan, providing for scrivener's errors, providing for severability, providing for an effective date. Item 9.13, Resolution Number R 2025-155, approval of the Economic Development Strategic Plan, sponsored by the interim assistant city manager. Resolution of the City Commission of the City of North Miami Beach, Florida, adopting Economic Development Strategic Plan, providing for scrivener's errors, providing severability, providing for an effective date. Item 9.14, Resolution Number R 2025-156, Memorandum of Understanding with Barry University, sponsored by the interim assistant city manager. Resolution of the Mayor and City Commission in the City of North Miami Beach, Florida, authorizing the city to enter into a Memorandum of Understanding, MOU, with Barry University to provide advanced education opportunities to North Miami Beach residents. Authorizing the city manager to negotiate the terms of the MOU for approval by the city commission. Authorizing the city manager designated to do all things necessary to effectuate this resolution, providing for conflicts, providing for scrivener's errors, providing for severability, and providing for an effective date. Item 9.15, Resolution Number R 2025-157, approval to apply for FDOT beautification grant Phase 1, sponsored by the interim Public Works Director. Resolution of the Mayor and City Commission in the City of North Miami Beach, Florida, authorizing the city manager to apply for grant assistance under the Florida Department of Transportation Highway Beautification Grant and to further execute any subsequent agreements or documents associated with the grant and reimbursement of projects from the FDOT to the city, providing for incorporation of recitals, providing for an effective date. Resolution Number 9.16, Resolution Number R 2025-158, approval to apply for FDOT beautification grant Phase 2, sponsored by the interim Public Works Director. Resolution of the Mayor and City Commission in the City of North Miami Beach, Florida, authorizing the city manager to apply for grant assistance under the Florida Department of Transportation Highway Beautification Grant and to further execute any subsequent agreements or documents associated with the grant and reimbursement of projects from the FDOT to the city, providing for incorporation of recitals and providing for an effective date. Item 9.17, Resolution Number R 2025-159, recognizing Florida City Week, sponsored by the interim assistant city manager. Resolution of the Mayor and City Commission.
Excuse me, Joe. Sorry, Mr. Attorney. That should read Mayor and Commission, not interim assistant city manager.
It should, I'm sorry. It should read, say it again.
So it should be sponsored by Mayor and Commission, the Florida City Week.
Oh, the sponsorship?
Yes, thank you.
Oh, okay. For the record, I'll reread that with the correct sponsorship. Thank you, Madam Interim Assistant City Manager. So that's item 9.17, Resolution Number R 2025-159, recognizing Florida City Week, sponsored by the Mayor and Commission, as corrected. Resolution of the Mayor and City Commission in the City of North Miami Beach, Florida, recognizing Florida City Week, October 20th to 24th, 2025, and encouraging all citizens to support the celebration corresponding activities. I believe that 918 has been pulled and moved to legislation. Item 919, Resolution Number R 2025-161, investigation evaluation of feasibility of participation in Florida retirement system, sponsored by the Mayor and Commissioner Smucker. Resolution of the Mayor and City Commission in the City of North Miami Beach, Florida, providing for investigation and evaluation of the feasibility of participation in the Florida Retirement System, FRS, for the City of North Miami Beach employees, providing for conflicts, providing for scrivener's errors, providing for severability, and providing for an effective date. Item 9.20, Resolution Number R 2025-164, establishment of, establishment of the Employee Assistance Trust Fund, sponsored by the Mayor. Resolution of the Mayor and City Commission in the City of North Miami Beach, Florida, authorizing the city manager designated to do all things necessary to establish the City of North Miami Beach Employees Assistant Trust Fund Corporation, providing for implementation and providing for an effective date. That is your consent agenda.
Move to approve.
All favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
It passes unanimously.
Move to introduce, ordinance number 2025.
He's under the weather. That's what it was. But, oh, second. We're on ordinances, right?
Yes, sir. So I'll read the next item. We are on the, section 11 legislation, there being no quasi judicial matter. Item 11.1, Ordinance Number 2025-02, second reading, Water and Sewer Accounts, sponsored by the Water Director. An ordinance of the Mayor and City Commission in the City of North Miami Beach, amending Charter 19 entitled Water and Sewers of the City Code of Ordinances, specifically amending Section 19-4 entitled Water and Sewer Deposits, Section 19-9 entitled Definitions, Section 19-10.1 entitled Application Terms, Change of Ownership, Turn-On Requests, Section 19-11.3 entitled Consumer Rates Metered, Section 19-16 entitled Turn-On and Shut-Off, curb cock to be used by city, Section 19-17 entitled Leaks and Waste, Section 19-20 entitled Miscellaneous Provisions, Section 19-31 entitled Rates and Charges, providing for property owner water accounts and billing continuity, providing for conflicts, severability, and codification, and providing for an effective date. This is second reading, and let me note there are a few changes, but we itemize those, but nothing so substantial that would require first reading. They're mostly minor items.
All right. Can you give us a quick summary before we go?
Sure. Good evening, Mr. Mayor, Commissioner, Stefan Meier. As City Attorney mentioned, we've been through detailed review with the City Attorney Office with minor changes. We finalized the ordinance, and it's before you with minimal change for adoption. And any new account for owner is required to open the account moving forward. This way, we can address some of our delinquency in the future.
Thank you, Water Director and Commissioner Chernoff.
Move to adopt.
I second.
Okay, well, I'm fine, but Commissioner Smith, do you have a comment? Go ahead, please.
I'm sorry, I have a few questions on some of these.
Oh, no, I did get a second.
She's seconded.
I'm sorry, I didn't get to spend time with the manager, and I have a few questions. I'll take, I'll do them very quickly. Number one, when, if you go to 19-4, and it says the owner shall, I mean, the person, et cetera. I wanted to add "as" to the tax rolls. I think the ownership should be proven, and it shouldn't be just bringing in, it should be as per to the tax rolls. And then on the next page, when you go in the same thing, where it says, it's underlined, and then number one at the second line up, where it says property, I want to add "per tax rolls." And then I want to say if the property's in the name of a corporation, they must prove, bring in proofs of who's responsible for that corporation. I'm sure those in real estate know that we have to do that all the time.
City Attorney?
Commissioner, the only thing I'd add is, though,[1759.20]
Commissioner, the only thing I'd add is, though, there are instances, we know, where the tax rolls are not updated, they're out of date, or occasionally incorrect. Is it your intent that if that's the case, that they're not able to open a water account?
Well, somehow they have to prove ownership, and whether, are they going to bring in a deed, whatever?
Well, I mean, they could. If the tax roll is wrong, and you have a deed showing that the name that's on the tax roll is not been updated, so we say proof of ownership-
Right.
And it's intended that it not be just, well, I say so, proof has a legal meaning, but the tax rolls are not the only way.
However, we want to handle it, but I also want to make sure we have the person that's responsible, or the business that's responsible, is the one that the water is going to be signed up in.
And I had no comment on that one.
Commissioner Smith, our practice is the same, we require to get the deed or property appraisal when, as a proof of ownership.
Okay, and-
But your other comment is certainly very appropriate, Commissioner.
Okay.
If it's an LLC or a corporation or something, they can't just say, oh, that's me, they have to bring some evidence of that, you're correct.
Of course, of course. Okay, so there was a couple of questions real fast right here, it says, and my notes are from over the weekend, this is under 19-7 Leaks and Waste, it says the owner or his agent, on C, it says the owner or, satisfying insurance shall have been given by the owner or his agent, which, again, who's the owner pointing as his agent to the city that the condition causing the shut-off will not happen again? How, what guarantee do we have that it won't happen again? Are we going to put money in escrow that it won't happen again? When they come and say it won't happen again, what's the insurance? How are they going to guarantee that?
So if they don't pay, we put the lien against the property that is listed?
No, but that's what it says, it says that, it says that they will guarantee that they won't do it again.
And possibility is increasing the deposit to, you know, we do have-
Maybe, I mean-
We have a deposit, we have the right to increase it.
So you want to double, you want to double-
Maybe that's the answer, maybe we should add that the first time it shut off, or if there's, that they should increase the deposit. We've had that-
For how much, what do you want to suggest?
I didn't have a number in mind, because I thought that was a good suggestion. I know, living in my house for many, many years, we've had, where our water bill got, of course, much, much higher, and they, they did say, your deposit from 54 years ago is not enough, so, I mean-
I believe the section on deposits gives us that right, but one of the things that we rewrote here is, sometimes a water shut-off is inadvertent, people are traveling, or they don't get the notice, or there's some reason, so depending on what the issue is, and whether the city is secure, maybe it's already a big deposit, but if it's not, I think if you look at the section on deposits, we do have the right to, to take remedial action if someone has not been sufficiently diligent with meeting their obligations.
Okay, and if they need to have notice, we're going to do it with many different ways, but one of the ways was, or advertised at least once in one of the daily newspapers. I was wondering how often does that happen? Are we still advertising in the newspaper?
We're moving, everybody's going online.
Digital, yeah.
I'm just saying, what I'm reading is advertised in the daily newspaper.
Yeah, we may need to update that section as well, because-
Right now-
Everybody's moving to this website, which is a bad idea, some of us fought that until I have to keep up the law.
That was under 1920.
And we do have a portal as well.
Rates and-
The, the, okay, so just so we can be on the same page, so I want to align the planes, so the suggestions, as amended, does it change the full body of the ordinance, or can we move it?
I don't think it does.
Okay, it doesn't, right? So, so just to be clear, can we just list out the changes that you recommended?
If I may, Mr. Mayor, point of clarification, the section 19-17 leak and waste that you were referring, Commissioner Smith, we're talking about on this section, if we identify any leak, we get authorization to shut off and restore the, you know, service. That section is referring to that.
Okay, so that makes a lot of sense, I'm sure the owners will have, many people own rentals and be in their name, but they have people that handle it.
Yes.
Okay, I'm just bringing up some of the things as I read, like, you know, rules and rates and rules, where it says all the foregoing rates, I'm just reading what I, what I see as I read it, and I usually go over every bit of this, every page with the manager, much to his share in, but I had appointments today and reading gets to do it.
So you find with just the way it's listed?
Yeah, you know, you heard what I'm saying, and it needs to be a grimace there somewhere.
So we're just going to pass the way it currently, okay? Madam Clerk, can you do it?
Well, we will, as a Scrivener's error, the part about if it's still, if that's one of the places where it still says newspaper, we have to go back and harmonize that to the website, but that's a Scrivener's error.
Okay. Madam Clerk, can you please do a roll call?
Okay. Motion made by Commissioner Chernoff, secondly by Commissioner Sue, roll call. Commissioner Chernoff?
Yes.
Commissioner Flori-Mon?
Yes.
Commissioner Smith?
Yes.
Commissioner Schmuckler?
Yes.
Commissioner Sue?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Jean?
Yes.
Mayor Michael Joseph?
Yes.
Passed at 7:00.
All right, next item is 11.2.
Move to introduce, Ordinance Number 2025-05, Second and final reading.
City Attorney?
There was a second. Oh, I'm sorry, Danielle.
Commissioner Smith, Commissioner Smith with the second.
Okay. 11.2, Ordinance Number 2025-05, Second Reading, Public Arts Introduced by Vice Mayor Jean. An ordinance of the Mayor and City Commission of the City of North Miami Beach, Florida, Amending Chapter 24, Entitled Zoning and Land Development of the City's Code of Ordinances, to create a new Article 20, Entitled Public Arts, Requiring Private Developments and City Capital Improvement Projects, To Dedicate 0.5% of Total Project Cost to Public Art, Establishing a Fee-in-Lie Fund, Public Art Selection Committee, Adoption of a Citywide Public Arts Plan, Providing for Codification, Conflicts, Scrivener's Errors, Severability, and Providing for an Effective Date.
Mr. Director.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the commission, City Attorney, and the manager. This is a revised Art in Public Places ordinance, we had previously come in here with the very preliminary in June, when it was approved, but with a lot of comments, so we went back and did a revamp, the new public art ordinance basically provides for a city public arts fund, it basically establishes a public arts selection committee, previously we had alluded to the beautification committee as the selection committee, but now there's going to be specialized public arts selection committee, composed of artists and people with that professional background, to replace the beautification committee. Then there's going to be a call to artist process under this guideline, so we can have competitive submittals for art process and commission-sponsored projects. We also updated the audio art regulation, so now we can have art with sound, but there's limits to the sound ordinance, so it has to end by a certain time for the day. So another requirement is that the participants would be, have the choice to fund in lieu of placing an art, so that funding will go into the proposed line item budget. So that allows the city to have a line item budget with, from those donations and from the contributions to the art fund. So, and following the approval of the ordinance, if today it is approved, there's a process by which we will have the FIU or other entities develop a master public art plan. So that plan basically would set the guidelines on how and where and what type of art, this thing according to an overall master plan for the public arts program. That's in summary, I mean, I can go in more in detail with the PowerPoint presentation, but that's the changes we brought back.
Thank you so very much, we'll bring it back to the commission, I'll start from my right. Commissioner Smith?
Okay, well, here I have a couple of questions. If somebody's on the art committee that you're going to create, can they still qualify to submit for artwork? When you do the bylaws, I don't want to, I don't want somebody on that committee to be excluded, because hopefully we'll get artists.
I would defer to the City Attorney, I think there's a conflict of interest by them, so I'm not-
I'm not sure that it's a conflict, and I hear your point, Commissioner. I would say to you that, you know, once, as soon as this ordinance is passed, as I presume it will be, we'll work with the department, try and prepare those bylaws, we'll submit those and circulate them, ultimately it's up to you to adopt them, and I hear your point, and I will try to be sure that when we do the drafting, that we take that point into account, and set up some mechanism whereby somebody can recuse themselves from the item
That, that's what I want to, I want to make sure. And I also, you know, there's penalties, there was a penalty about the noise, but some of it has to come back for the commission, which could take 30 days to get back to us, could be, so I just wanted to work that out. Can I just ask you, the back, that I read all the back, the eight pages, there was actually nine on this, I just got a blank page on page nine, is that exactly, that how you want to change it? These are the new changes?
The change, yes, that we identified.
Then we have to correct, in other words, one of them had said 5,000, we changed that to 10,000 in the ordinance, so on page three at the top, it says 5,000, but it's 10,000 now? We have to change the times, because we changed the time-
Actually, it's 500,000.
It's 5,000 or 10?
500,000 projects of a value of 500,000 would qualify for this.
But there was amounts, numbers, that were 5,000, that was $10,000. Okay.
That may be a Scrivener's error, but, you know-
Here, the valuation, with a total project valuation of 10 million.
Yeah, so it's 500,000.
5,000, 10 million.
Yeah.
It's only numbers.
Yeah. Some capital, because capital improvement is part of the, also the program, so those could be more capital-intensive projects, that's why that was.
Okay. Look, I just, you know, all of it's good, I love the fact, the noise ordinance, I was so against it, because we have neighborhoods and communities, and I imagine that what if the art was right next to you, was, and it was playing over and over and over, but then I also recognize, when you go to other cities, or when you go past some things and museums, all of a sudden they'll come on and talk to you. So I don't really know what you were thinking with audio art in public places, but you have changed the hours, instead of it being until 11 o'clock, it's till 10 o'clock, instead of starting at seven, it starts at eight, but I think we really have to monitor that, because I don't, I don't really know what-
We concur with that, staff concurs with that, we will have to identify what kind of art it is, maybe it could be specific to each art, because usually there are musical fountains, that, you know, with every wave, it plays a music, but there could be other that may require specific commission, we could add some language to make sure that it is by each, when there's an audio art, it will be specific commission approval for that, we could do that as a suggestion.
Okay, and, and one of the questions I had also was, when, if a developer doesn't give a piece of art, and they give the money, which they have the right to do, or is there going to be a separate fund, that that fund is going to be strictly for art in a city where we decide to do it?
The proposal is that it will be, it will be a line item budget in the city budget, and so the donation would go to that line item.
Okay, because I had asked the clerk to bring back the ordinance in reference to moving money, transferring transparency with money moving within the budget, I thought we, I wanted it to bring back, Lynn Sue's been on this, and Vice Mayor Jean, I would like to be added, as I have been pushing to bring this back every single month since, I understand the reason it's not back tonight under my direction is because they're working on making it better, and that's okay, let them make it as good as they can, because we need to have transparency, and that's why I was concerned about the dollars, these are big dollars if a builder gives you money, and I don't want it to go anyplace but a piece of art. It was interesting, in the description, they, they even said that especially east of Biscayne Boulevard, no, especially everywhere in North Miami Beach, so-
Understood.
I mean, really and truly, this is something that will change our city. Today on the Beacon Council, real quick, I made them stop and look at the flamingos. That was a name, that was a real changer, the dog in the front, the flamingos, people stop and take pictures, they take wedding pictures by their birthday pictures, I just think this is so important. I've made some other notes, nothing that will change really the ordinance, more for some understanding, so I did understand under the executive summary, it has nothing to do with the ordinance that we're voting on itself, so maybe I can get with you later just for some more understanding.
Be happy to answer your questions.
Thank you, Commissioner Smith, Commissioner Flori-Mon?
No questions, thank you.
Commissioner Schmuckler?
No questions.
Vice Mayor?
Thank you so much, yes, I wanted to thank the staff, Director, DCM, for really helping us fine tune. We also had Miami-Dade County Arts in Public Places Specialist come, and also FIU School of Architecture help as well, kind of further shape the legislation, so thank you for being flexible in that way.
It's my pleasure.
The question that I had was in reference to the vision process, obviously with the branding of the city and us creating a curated team, we still have to be able to tell the team what kind of vision we're looking for in the city.
That'll be part of the public arts plan.
Right, so I would want, because I know there's not, there's not a line item right now designated towards that, so obviously if we're going to move forward a plan, we need some kind of funding attached to it, and that hasn't been identified, so though we want to move forward with the committee, I really want to see the steps that we'll take, because we don't have funds. However, I know there have been developers that have gotten approval with the promises of Arts in Public Places, and also due to CRA, that there have been some approvals contingent on our, on our approval.
Yes.
So I don't know if you guys can also do a deeper dive into some of the projects that were already approved, that there are funds, that were funds promised to the city, but not delivered, because that would help us with the, the start-off kit of having something designated for the design. So I think providing the commission with a clear direction of how we're moving forward would be great, because we can approve it tonight and nothing can happen if we don't have a clear-
Of course, under the direction of the manager and consultation with the City Attorney, we'll come back with a revised, with the plan for, you know, the next steps.
Thank you, that's all from me.
Commissioner Sue?
No comment, thank you very much, and thank you for acknowledging the branding, that we, I think we need to find that way, but I think that we might be able to incorporate that in some way into the, you know, into the funds that, that the developers are going to put in for the public art.
Understood. Mr. Chernoff?
Yeah, thank you, Vice Mayor, this is a wonderful thing to put in writing, because it takes away the awkwardness of what we had a couple of months ago, and thank you.
Thank you. Motion to approve?
Second, Madam Clerk, can you do a roll call?
Commissioner Flori-Mon?
Yes.
Commissioner Smith?
Yes.
Commissioner Schmuckler?
Yes.
Commissioner Sue?
Yes.
Commissioner Chernoff?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Jean?
Yes.
Mayor Michael Joseph?
Yes.
Passed at 7:00.
Next item, 11.3.
Move to introduce, number, ordinance number 2025-08.
Second.
Second reading.
Who's second? Commissioner Sue, all right.
Item 11.3, ordinance number 2025-08, Second Reading, Public Arts Introduced by Vice Mayor Jean. An ordinance of the Mayor and City Commission of the City of North Miami Beach, Florida, Amending Code of Ordinances, Chapter 24, Entitled Zoning and Land Development, Section 24-22 Definitions, Modify the existing definition term Retail Uses, General Retail, Create a new definition term Retail Smoke Shop, Create a new definition term Distance Separation Measurement, Amending Article 5, Rounding Use Districts, To Add Retail Smoke Shop As Conditional Use To The permitted-
And conditional use is listed in the B3 Intensive Business District, B4 Distribution Business District, B5 Distribution Business and Medium Industrial District, Fulford Mixed Juice Town Center District, MU/TC, Mixed Juice Employment Center District, MU/EC, and International Boulevard District, MU-IB, Providing for codification, conflict, Scrivener's Errors, Severability, and Providing for an Effective Date, this is second reading there.
Good evening, I'll try to be brief, I just wanted to mention at the front end that this is a complete revamp of the original smoke shop ordinance, and so there are, you know, a lot of new provisions, so I just want to be able to bring it to you, so that, you know, we can put the point across. The, first of all, the state does not have any regulation about smoke shop, so as far as the state's requirement is, there's, there's zero buffering or distance requirements. However, the city had previously a distance requirement, but it was limited to 500 feet from some critical and, you know, special uses. What we've, we've listened to what you had asked us to do, and we've gone back and redid an analysis, the new ordinance basically- The new ordinance basically tries to avoid clustering of smoke shops in, within a certain distance. So we have taken that 500 feet previous distance to 1,000 feet from previously existing smoke shop. So, so no smoke shop, newly a smoke shop will be established that will be less than 1,000 feet from each other. So the, so, so it creates a distinct definition for, for the, the smoke shops. Now previously, the, according to the state guidelines, it was just a part of a retail use. So there was no specific requirement for smoke shop. So it's just any, like any other retail, anybody could open anywhere. At that, in that criteria, smoke shops could exist next to each other. So like, for example, on 167, according to our analysis, we could have at least 24 shops right next to each other and there would be no restriction on it. But with the distance requirement, we've reduced by about 20, the number of shops that could have gone there will no longer be there because of the increased distance requirements. So, so now we have, instead of being a regular retail, we have a new definition for, for retail smoke shop. Retail smoke shop is a commercial retail or a wholesale establishment, fully enclosed, primarily engaged in selling tobacco, tobacco products and accessories for such products as smoke shop accessories and may include but not be limited to e-cigarettes, vaporizers, hookahs, bongs, cigarette papers or wrappers, rolling machines and other similar paraphernalia. So those are some of the distincting. And we also compared ourselves to adjoining municipalities and see how they've distincting. So we find ourselves to be incompatible or more strict to, to them as compared to, you So the sensitive uses, so, so to prevent clustering, we've kept a thousand dollar distance. And then, you know, the, the sensitive uses would be a schools, elementary, middle or secondary, and parks or government facilities and residential and zoning districts. For sensitive uses, for like hospitals, the distance would be 1,000 feet. For a school, elementary, middle or secondary, it's again a 1,000 feet. From, from a park or a government facility, it would be 500 feet. Distance separation from sensitive uses like the, now along the 167 because of the narrow depth of the mixed use districts. So we've kept the distance at 250 feet from the residences because of the fact that it doesn't, it gets out of the district in which it is normally allowed. So within that district, that's, it is. So that's the, the changes and that's the new ordinance.
Do, Commissioner Chernoff?
Does this catch marijuana shops also?
No, marijuana shops is governed by a different set of state regulations and this does not cover marijuana shops.
Can we do the same thing for a marijuana shop?
There would be a separate ordinance.
Would you please look into that, please?
We can't do it. It's, it's, it's the state law.
Preempt, we're preempted.
Yeah.
Sue?
We already had something for marijuana.
Yes.
So I understand that we have 20 smoke shops right now in our five square mile city, right?
Yeah, along that distance at, at present.
And I think I had asked you, you owe me an answer. How much more space can we, and can we add another smoke shop?
So, so as I mentioned, if, if we had not done this, this thing, we would have had 20 to 25 additional shops in there.
22?
25 additional shops.
35?
Because they were regular retail shops. But with this thousand feet separation, we would have less than 20.
Less than 20. So that means we can potentially have 40 smoke shops?
Yeah, because we could just have one next to another and there would be no control because that's what the state regulations had.
No, meaning like with this new ordinance, how many more can we add?
Yeah, we, we may not be able to add more than four or five.
Okay. Great. Um, the other question is, the other question is, I know that there are some smoke shops that, that like there have been crimes committed and the police have done their, their duties. Do we have anything in there that will reprimand, have them shut down?
This, under the current ordinance, which is already there, actually, we will be bringing items before the commission about those smoke shops and marijuana shops that had been cited by the police because our ordinance basically asked to cancel those BTRs and we'll be bringing that before the commission.
Wonderful. The deputy chief looks like he's about to say something. Did you want to make a comment?
Nope.
All right, I'm complete. Thank you.
All right. Vice Mayor?
Just motion to approve. Um.
We all want to say that.
We got a motion in a second and then let you finish your talk.
I mean, I didn't have much thoughts. I think that, you know, when we're shaping the vision of the city, there's just certain things that are logical, right?
Yes.
You coming down the, the road, you're seeing smoke shop after smoke shop. And like I said, this was something that six, seven months ago, eight months ago, I was, you know, advocating for. So thank you for, for bringing it forward. And I think even any types of businesses that might not, might lower the quality of the city, you guys have to have a, a fine tooth comb, not to discriminate against any business, but to really think about what the image of the city is and kind of buy into that because it's important.
To, to all the commission members and, you know, as you know that we are in the process of updating a comprehensive plan, there are charrettes going on and that's going to reshape the redevelopment process. Many of these smoke shops will go away because of the redevelopment that is going to take place as a result of the new vision. These will, it'll, it'll be just a organic process of elimination that will happen because of redevelopment.
And let me tell you a quick story too, that even near JFK, there was a corner store that was selling vapes to some of the kids there. And that was a huge issue for that principal. So things like that, because when, when teens are walking the streets, they venture in, if they have money, the store owner might just sell it to them, right? So those are things that I'm also aware of that prompts certain decisions and, and policies like this. But thank you for the work that you're doing.
It's my pleasure.
Thank you, Commissioner Smuckler?
Commissioner Sean, sorry, just a little comment on what she said. I believe that, that vape has an age restriction. So if the store owner is selling it to teenagers, I think 21 is the age for vaping, right? So I think that if that's a violation of that, I don't know if it's.
Because you're, you're.
18, you can smoke, right? No, actually it's 21 for vaping.
Well, the, the police are here.
Hey, where's the, yeah. I thought it was 18 you can smoke because I, I mean it.
Yeah, you can smoke cigarettes. It's really weird. But for vaping, it requires that you are 21.
Yeah.
No, I, I, so I, I have to show my ID that I'm over 21, so.
Commissioner Smuckler?
I'm, no.
Commissioner Florimont?
No questions.
Commissioner Smith?
I, I had one question, but thanks to my Vice Mayor and my Commissioner, it opened a thought to me. You know, if anybody's ever taken the auto train, you have to be there early in the morning and you leave your house and you ride through these little towns and there're nothing, everything. That's what my city county reminds me of sometimes. So maybe we have to revamp a lot of it. If it's a smoke shop, there's a certain requirement of how the advertising is and how the front is beyond what our normal advertising is, to upgrade what they're looking at. I mean, remember when they opened this place over here on Biscayne Boulevard and 171st, the name of it was Cookies? And everybody, every kid screaming at their mother going down the street, stop and get me cookies. So, and it was for, you know, for some drugs. So the only thing I say is, my question was, somebody voted no again. I love the clerk, but I have asked over and over again, I need to see what was the questions a person asked. And now, I wasn't going to mention it because they know personally that I've asked for this. It was my neighbor. I was in the street with him last night. I just found out before the meeting started who it was. But I can't stop and call him now and find out why he voted no. Maybe there's something we're not thinking of. I'd like to include on this because I want to pass it. But maybe somebody voted no. That's why I always called them. Saul pointed out that I always called people that said no on the planning and zoning. Could you fill me in why he said no?
I'll have to come back to you. I don't have that information with me at this time.
I got, I got an answer.
Okay.
How you doing, Commissioner Smith?
Thank you.
You guys hear me?
Yeah.
All right. Daniel Lozander, Senior Planner, Community Development Department.
Okay.
Mr. Kreisberg from the Planning and Zoning Board denied the ordinance. It was only a one account vote against it due to the fact that he, from his point of view, he, he seen that the ordinance just wouldn't justify it because it's a retail type use. And he see that, from his point of view, that the, the draft ordinance just wouldn't make a difference. And that was his answer, pretty much.
Well, we're hoping it'll make a difference. I heard Commissioner Lynn Sue right now say what? She didn't say it like that because that's the way I talk. But she said, what? Five more? I mean, four more? I mean, what are we doing? And so I heard it loud and clear and, and I just think that we need to put teeth on what we're doing to make our city again Beacon Council. We want them to come. If we keep, if we're going to have more that could be added, we have to fix how the front of the store looks so that you don't drive down the street and see smoke shop after smoke shop. Thank you, I'm sorry. I'm going to get a lot of calls how much time I'm taking tonight. I apologize to everybody.
All right. We got a motion in a second. Madam Clerk, can you do a roll call?
Commissioner Smith?
Yes.
Commissioner Smuckler?
Yes.
Commissioner Sue?
Yes.
Commissioner Chernoff?
Yes.
Commissioner Florimont?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Jean?
Yes.
Mayor Michael Joseph?
Yes.
Mr. Mayor, may I?
Passes.
Something about the corner in, in JFK?
You want to have a, a, yes.
I just wanted to, I just wanted to reiterate what I was searching online. It is 21 to be able to purchase a vape. So if there are any, any smoke shops that are selling to minors under 21, I don't know if the, our law enforcement team or NMBPD is on like that, so.
Okay.
Yeah. Could, would you like to comment, Mr.? Mr. DC?
If you want to be, Deputy Chief Nichols, if you want to be quick.
Real quick, Mayor. Good evening, Commissioner, Mayor, Manager, Deputy Chief Nichols, Police Department. Yes, we have, we are enforcing it. We, we have gone into these smoke shops, enforced the underage selling of narcotics. It is 21 for vapor, vapes that have nicotine and without nicotine, it's 18. So yes, we have done it, we're aware of it and we have taken enforcement.
Thank, thank you, DC.
Thank you so much.
Move to introduce, ordinance number 2025. Next one's pulled.
The one?
We, we, discussion, that's item 11.4 is pulled for discussion. So the next.
Shopping cart.
Move to discussion, I think.
Yeah. No, 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 we, we, no, it was going to be, we left it in there.
Left it in.
Left it in there, so it moved.
Okay.
Okay.
Then 11.4. Move to approve, move to introduce, ordinance number 2025-10.
Second.
Item 11.4 ordinance.
And this is first reading.
11.5.
11.4. 11.4. Go ahead.
2025-9.
If it's in, it's 11.4.
Yes. Okay. Yes.
Is that, was that your motion, Commissioner? No, move to introduce ordinance number 2025-09.
Exactly.
Item 11.4 ordinance number 2025-09, first reading. Establishing the Housing and Economic Development Department, sponsored by interim assistant city manager, an ordinance to the mayor and city commissioner of the city of North Miami Beach, Florida, creating the Department of Housing and Economic Development in the city of North Miami Beach, providing for the establishment of the department and appointment of the director, providing for codification, conflict, scrivener's errors, severability, and providing for an effective date.
This is the first, first reading. Madame Clerk, can you open up for public comment?
Open up for public comment?
Mubarak Azan, good evening, everyone. Mr. Mayor?
The clock, just to make sure, we're going to start the clock, sorry. Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, you had the privilege of your entire staff to go over this ordinance, explain it to you, to each and every commissioner and the mayor. We are at handicap. When you just read this here and think that, oh, open up for public comment, don't you think staff should have explained this initially? I heard a big powwow going in pulling this, that we're, we don't even have the money. We had 18 and a half million dollars in unrestricted reserves, but when we actually looked in, we have less than $5 million. This here to me, I just think in some of your school friends or friends of friends are going to get these jobs. And the city is going nowhere. With that type of thinking that I'm seeing up there, where you have to like, you know, connections and so forth and, and wheeling and dealing, this here is not going to help you. What is going to help you is if you have a clean mind. That is what's going to help you. I saw some projects came before this mayor, this council in the past. And only when a lobbyist friend get onto that project, then everybody understand the culprits, they understand very well. And the project had to be delayed like about three times before the gentleman actually hired a lobbyist of some people liking before the project moved forward. So you have to clean your mind. It matters not how much economic development and, and this and that and tara. This to me need to be shelved and we, Commissioner Smith, you're behind this, but you voted against the budget because you did not appreciate their spending habits. And now you're like, spend more, spend, we need to save more, not spend more. And look what businesses you're attracting, marijuana shops, smoke shops, strip clubs, liquor bars. This is a type of business. I'm sick of you people, you like Times Square, back in the seventies, peephole, video shows and so forth. You're not, you're not being, you're not attracting good business. You're attracting waste. And some of you, you're going to have to go. We're not going to bring you back. I'm telling you, come this election time, you're going to have to go. Thank you very much for having me.
Ms. Harold?
Karen Harold, North Miami Beach. Regarding establishing a new department, when we're, huh? Karen Harold, North Miami Beach, I guess I wouldn't say loud enough. Okay. As far as establishing a new department, when we've just come through so many concerns with what happened within the city management office before, with having oversight of all the different heads underneath city manager, and I don't know if it's lack of communication, how we miss deadlines, but let's get a city manager in. Let's get the city manager's office running smoothly and then let them be involved in a new department and new employees. Because we added a lot of employees with our shrinking citizenship here, I mean residents. And to put more employees and a new department, look out for us. Let the city manager be involved. Let them get their department in line. We have to get everything in order before you put, you know, more cargo on the boat. We don't want it to sink. Thank you.
Thank you. Any more speakers? Seeing none, please. This is a interim assistant city manager, Ms. Monastine.
Thank you, Mayor. Good evening, Mayor Commission, Marlene Monastine, interim assistant city manager in the city manager's office, obviously. This item is read into the record by the city attorney is a proposal, a proposal to adopt an ordinance to establish the Housing and Economic Development Department in the city. I strongly believe that this is something that we need, including the fact that we have our economic development strategic plan that was just adopted by you all tonight and has been something that we want to serve as the guiding force for how economic stipulation, stimulation and growth happens in the city. The Economic Development Department would have two divisions. One would be housing, that is to continue the program that you all have funded this fiscal year, the home rehab allocation program at $250,000. um, at $250,000. In addition to that, we do have some initiatives that would focus on home, first time home buyer and financial literacy within the city. That would be the component of the housing, uh, division. In addition to that, the Economic Development Division would, um, support implementing the strategic plan. As I mentioned, it would also focus on business attraction, retention and expansion, and identifying partnership opportunities, um, throughout the city. I just quite frankly don't know how else to explain it. If you, um, are interested in seeing real growth in the city, if you don't wanna see businesses that you, um, the community complains about, um, I think it's time that the city really does, um, put our feet to the fire in establishing some robust department that can address the concerns, um, that you all consistently share on the dais. Um, so with that, this is at the will of the commission. If you have any questions, I'm available to answer.
Thank you. This is first reading. And let's keep that in perspective. This can, um, and can possibly be updated. But I'll start off with my, the two economic liaisons. Commissioner Smith?
Thank you. I'm one of them. And I just wanna say again, under number two of the ordinance itself, I, I said, I put in my parenthesis as my notes, it says it all. When I didn't vote on the budget, it's not that I didn't agree with a lot of the budget. I just didn't agree with 20, 30% of the budget, so of course I voted no. Um, this, this economic development is the most important, I think, of all of the votes. And why do I feel so strongly about it? Because without money, without leadership, we have an opportunity right now to get a leader that changed, really changed an entire city. Many years of hard work and knowledge. And this is what this can do if we have the power to do it. And the power comes with money, with hiring the right people with the money and making it happen. But if you just read these sentences where it includes housing, economic development, and if you go down and where it tells you really the meat of it, that it will develop and support comprehensive human service policies and plans, and act as an advocate and liaison for social needs and concerns of the city's population. Furthermore, the director shall also oversee the issuance of business tax receipts and promote programs, policies and initiatives for support for workforce training and development, tourism, marketing and branding, small businesses and entrepreneurship support, business attractions, retention, expansion and identify partnership opportunities that stimulate economic growth. That's what this is about, right there. Tell us why we need it. Why we need it. So I am a yes vote on first reading and a yes vote on second reading. Thank you so much.
Commissioner Florhman?
Uh, thank you. Um, I think Commissioner Smith said it very well. Um, the, the department is definitely needed. But what I'm hearing from the community is, I, I don't think we're, we're too far apart from, from, from what I'm hearing as far as the requests to have, um, the new, um, whatever direction we head in with management, to have, uh, their influence and impact on the, um, the department and how it's rolled out. So, um, to Madam, uh, ACM, what do you think as far as second reading coming in 90 days? Is that something that'll allow you time to fine tune, get everything together, and then second reading comes in 90 days? Is that something that makes sense to you or?
Um, if you can share specific changes that you'd like reflected, we can incorporate.
Well, this is mainly about having the, the, um, new city manager participate. So my question to you is, is the, is 90 days delaying you significantly?
You've been delayed for a couple of years. You have one body doing all the things with commission consistently asking for, um, support on their events and initiatives that would be economic development related.
Okay.
Um, staff's overwhelmed, especially in that, uh, division. So I would say the sooner the better.
When were you planning on coming back for second reading on this?
Next month.
Next month. All right. So that's the, that's, I guess, the question for now. Thank you.
All right, Commissioner Smuckler. Same here, I'm good. Um, because it is first reading. Like I said, I'm looking forward to see what happens next month. Commissioner, Vice Mayor?
Thank you. Uh, I love economic development. It's something that is important to me. Especially living here, I, I do see the potential to what we can be if it's done the right way. Rushing it for next month. I just saw the packet, the strategic plan yesterday, right? So I, like I said, had this conversation with our manager. There has to be respect for the commissioners. Tossing the thing to us 24 hours before and expecting us to just say, okay, eight positions, $1 million, it's a good investment. I know it's a good investment, but you guys are doing a poor job showing it to us, okay? So with that being said, I'm gonna second what Commissioner Florhman said about the 90 days. This is not something that we need to rush. We don't need to rush this process. When you talk about eight positions, when we are actively trying to seek a city manager, this is not a priority. Having a city manager is a priority. So when you have these eight positions out there, you need to have a strong helm who's gonna actually be able to steer the vision in place. Not just us putting these eight positions out, hey, who wants to come? Come, come. No.
Just for the record, it'd be four because four are already filled.
Well, that, again, for the record, you guys provided this to us. So there's, needs to be clarity with that. So if you're saying it's four, this shows eight.
No, I, I think.
Positions exist in other departments, so some would move.
Right.
Minus this.
Again, this is not the time for us to be having this back and forth. You guys should have properly briefed us.
Sure.
Right? So whether you're taking it from different departments, going back and forth with me now, it's not the right thing to do. You should have already briefed us. So that's the point I'm making. You guys are gonna basically ram this down our throat and saying 30 days, 30 days, 30 days. And I get it, we need to have this. However, once the commission is respected enough for us to have enough time to actually digest it, then I can support it full-heartedly.
Thank you. Vice Mayor, Commissioner Sue?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um, okay, so we had some, I'm, I'm gonna branch out to beautification today that we were paying $15 and whatnot. And then all of a sudden, we wanna create a new department. We are already pay, underpaying three directors in our city below the level of payment compared to other cities, right? One of them is the library director, the other is our procurement director, and the other is our water plant director. So now we wanna add another high-paying position because we think it's going to drive. Now, we have a very experienced community development director sitting right there. And, you know, we have a team. We can create an economic development housing division, and let's see how it goes from there. After we do that, then when we have a city, a new city manager, he can come in and hire his big gun if he really feels that, he or she, excuse me, really feels that that is in demand and it's really wanted and needed. But I don't think that exactly rushing it in 30 days or even 90, I think that we should allow the city manager to come in and, you know, feel around and get to know his directors and see the capacity and the ability of each director before he decides, he or she decides to add anybody else. So I am, I'm in the, I'm in the camp of waiting. I don't think this is a rush. I think we can still continue. We already have a contract with the Beacon Council. We're all geared towards making business or creating more business in the city. We have two commissioners on that economic development.
Which is.
That's how important, that's how important it is to us, to us all, actually. So I'm not dismissing it. I'm not saying it's impossible. I'm just saying, can we start off with a division? Let's kick it off and let's see what we can do with it. And let's wait for our new city manager and let that person come in and dictate whether it is wanted or needed.
Thank you, Commissioner Sue. I just wanted, I wanted to, but we can, like I said, the two economic liaisons, and that's how important I felt that particular board deserved. And that's why, you know, I'm, I'm following their lead because at the end of the day, it is first reading.
I should note, by the way, Mayor, if there are two commissioners serving on that body, that they need to be extra careful to respect sunshine in any discussions or conversations.
If, and it has to be noticed in that sense, and they, and it has been, those meetings have been noticed. Let's be very clear.
Long as that people have that in front of their mind, it's.
Oh, we don't want any problems.
Nothing wrong with it.
Commissioner Chernoff?
First reading by title only. I would say that we leave most of these comments for the next time.
All right. Matt, and. Wait, well, Commissioner Smith, do you, you have?
Uh, well, I, you know something, um, thank you, Vice Mayor. I didn't get that paper at all. So the fact that you, you said you got something today. I said it was in my packet over the weekend, but, okay. So we're, I'm getting, so therefore, you know, I, I would concur that, you know, we should start it. And thank you, Commissioner Lin Su, for bringing that to our attention. And of course, I hear what the public's saying, 100%. But waiting for the new manager, I have to tell you, that's a, to me, a little bit of a pipe dream. Uh, 90 days to get a new manager and get him settled in and let him know where the building is and where does he park? And what's everybody's name? And then he's gonna start in economic development? We have an experienced economic development leader right here that has seen the need, has brought this forward. We all agreed. And I have to tell you something. When a city flourishes, it flourishes based on economic development, not just bringing people in, but sustaining them, keeping them there. And that can't be done without somebody that knows what they're doing. So.
You have a motion?
I, I have to tell you, I think, I think it makes sense and I would support that too.
Wait, before, I just wanna make sure, are you motioning to?
I'll, I'll make a motion that we vote on this first reading next month while we all get more details.
Okay, so now, Commissioner Florhman, your thoughts?
Um, and, um, thank you, Mr. Mayor. So the, you know, there's been some sentiments about sitting down and having conversations. So, uh, Madam ACM, I know how hard you've been working on this. And with respect to the staff, let's just put 60 days before it comes back to the commission for second reading. Give everyone, everyone enough time to have those conversations so that it can be much more well-received. Because I wanna make sure that you guys have the full support that you need. So I wanna add that as a, um, as part of the vote.
So would you like me to amend my, would you like me to amend my motion to say that we vote on it tonight, first reading, and then we don't bring the second reading back for 60 days? Because I'm happy to amend it, whoever seconded it.
Yes, that's what I'm asking.
I second it.
All right, uh, Madam Clerk, can you do a, a roll call, please? Oh, as amended.
This motion to amend, this voice.
Okay, voice, uh, motion to amend. Do I have a motion and second? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Now, uh, the orders, as amended, Madam Clerk, can?
To restate it, the motion is to proceed with the vote now. You're gonna vote on it first reading, but with the stipulation that second reading will not occur prior to second commission meeting.
In December.
Months from now.
This, in December. So basically, it's gonna happen in December.
December meeting.
Cool.
Second reading will be December.
There's some push to move it to January.
We don't.
It's not before two months, but it's.
No, but there, we've already taken one month off.
December.
December.
December, December. So we're, we're putting it on the record. Madam Clerk, can you do a roll call?
Commissioner Smuckler?
Yes.
Commissioner Sue?
Yes.
Commissioner Chernoff?
Yes.
Commissioner Florhman?
Yes.
Commissioner Smith?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Jean?
No.
Mayor Michael Joseph?
Yes.
6-1.
All right, next item is 11.5.
5. Ordinance number, 2000, move to introduce ordinance number 2025-10, first reading.
Second.
Shopping cart nuisance.
Item 11.5 ordinance number 2025-10, first reading. Shopping cart nuisance ordinance, sponsored by Commissioner Smuckler and the interim Public Works Director, An Ordinance to the Mayor and City Commissioners of the City of North Miami Beach, Florida. Amending chapter nine entitled offenses miscellaneous provisions. With the city code of ordinance specifically amended section 9-39.11 entitled penalties for failing to submit or implement a prevention plan, providing for conflict, excuse me, severability and codification, and providing for an effective date, first reading.
Now, we, um, first reading, um, please, Madam Clerk, can you open up for a public comment?
Good evening. The floor is open for public comment. There is a three-minute time limit for each speaker. Please state your name when you're at the podium. Coming forward, Mr. Kazan.
Good evening, everyone. Mabarakazan. Um, thank you, Commissioner Jean and Commissioner Lin Su for those comments that you made on the economic development. I, um, I heard the words rushed and, um, poor job. And that's exactly, you can transcend those words to many other departments. Um, the mayor says that we have two commissioners on an economic board. It's so important. But yet he does not come to any of the water, water board, the PUC board, never. He doesn't come because you know why? He does not find that important. And here he is, behaving like a king. Well, you know what the country, um, is about kings, right? You're gonna have to go. And this, um, and this, um, this ordinance, long overdue. I do not know what the, um, Madam Director is gonna say. But I remember bringing this thing away when Chief Loiso was here. I discovered, I knew that there was a nuisance. It encourages vacancy. People pick up carts from off the, the pavement, pack their belongings in and travel around the, the roads. And then there, there was like a momentum break and it cleaned up a bit. But then, um, not much of the stores had locks on the, on the shopping carts. And so ironic that the person who opposed this here initially, way back then, is now bringing it up for, um, an ordinance. Thank you very much for having me.
I just wanna clarify that, not only did I, did I not clarify it, but I actually sponsored this, uh, this ordinance in 2022, I think it was. And it passed unanimously. And we're just bringing it back to fix it up a little bit. Thank you.
Okay.
When I wasn't a commissioner.
No, I'm glad that you clarified that because people could, um, would, you know, the assumption could be made otherwise. Um, Madam Clerk.
Any other speakers for this item? No one's come forward, ma'am.
Seeing none, Public Works Director.
Carleen McHenry, interim director of Public Works. Um, good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, Commission, um, the city attorney, city manager's office. This item is sponsored by, uh, our Commissioner Smuckler. Um, it's, it's not necessarily changing the ordinance. It's really just asking for an amendment to add a little bit more teeth to it. Um, part of the ordinance language required that there was, um, every business had a shopping cart retention plan. Um, and Department of Public Works, uh, to date have not received that. Um, City of Miami, City of, uh, North Miami, all have, um, you know, civil violations, fines, fees for where those things aren't, um, aren't done by the businesses. Um, we've also seen a very high increase in shopping carts, um, in terms of nuisance in our right of way. Presentation's not up, but there's some graphics. Our operations center is inundated with shopping carts and our beautification team are chasing after carts day in, day out. And we really need them to be focused on the beautification aspects of the city. So we're just asking to amend the, the ordinance to include the civil violation fee.
Mr. Smith?
Okay, so, um, there's three things I saw here. I'd like to just quickly ask you. How are the city notifying the owners? Or what are you doing to notify them that they're not following the ordinance? Because I do remember passing the ordinance. And, um, what, what are we doing to notify them?
We have not, we have not, um, sent any notices out to the, to the businesses. Um, this was a 2022 ordinance.
So how would they know, how would they know that they have a fee, a fine if we don't notify them?
Well, they have to send it out.
There is no fine today in the, in the ordinance. There is no, there is none. We're asking to amend the ordinance, um, to include. So the ordinance provides language that gives them, I believe it's three months to submit a plan to the Department of Public Works. But that was in 2022. So what we're asking today is to kinda work with them, so we would revisit that.
But when you say you have so many, um, of the carts in storage, how do they know that they had, could not leave their carts off of the premises?
Oh, no, they're notified. I, I, okay, I thought you meant about the fines. There's no fines today, so yeah.
No, no.
So we, we are in conversations with them. They are aware.
So, so the fine is.
Because they have to come collect them, but.
The fine, that was the two questions I had about the fine. Number one, the first five days, we pick up the cart and they can come get them for free for five days.
They can come get them, but they don't.
But they what?
They don't.
Okay.
Yeah.
But they don't now. But if they find out it's free, why are we picking up carts the first day for free? Why are we doing that? If we pick up the cart, they have to pay the man that picked up the cart.
We pick up the carts because they're sitting in the, on the sidewalks or in the streets and we just, we can't have it there.
By who owns them. So if they, and they can't help it, but if they find their carts are being gone, if you see what it says in here, then they're gonna be forced to put regulations that don't allow the carts to go outside the parking lot. They have to identify on the card who owns it. No matter who put it on the sidewalk, it was a responsibility to the owner not to allow that to happen. So, and it says that there's a $25 fine, but. So, and it says that there's a $25 fine, but it doesn't, per cart, but it doesn't say, is that per day? Is it $25? So, if you, if you have to hire somebody to go collect carts, it's forces it to you to pay $25.
So, Commissioner Smucker was right. According to state statute, we cannot fine businesses for a specific cart and say you had four carts and here's a $100.
I'm sorry, I didn't hear that, Commissioner.
Yeah, there's a state statute that says you can't do that. However, what we are asking, what we are asking is that we add the civil violation where a retention plan isn't, so that they're not submitting a retention plan to the city, and they're not abiding by that retention plan. That's what most municipalities are doing, like the City of Miami and North Miami.
Good idea.
And that's a $250 fee per violation.
Good idea. I'm a yes. Thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
Ms. Florham.
No questions, thank you.
Commissioner Smucker.
Okay, thank you. So, I just wanted to, I'm not sure if this is something we can add to this ordinance, or maybe we can make it a separate ordinance. I would like to see in the future, whenever something comes up to us, any new construction or any new permits, that anything that involves a shopping cart, that it has to have those shopping cart locks. Can we add this to this ordinance, or do...
It has to have, I'm sorry.
Those locks where you can't go past a certain distance?
Oh, to block them from...
Leaving the premises.
Yeah.
She wants to add something to any development or any type of...
Any new perm, any development, new permitting.
That has a shopping cart would have that particular...
Well, let me, for any, you mean any business?
Business, yeah.
Okay. So, I don't know the answer to that off the top of my head as to whether that's permissible under the state law. I would defer if someone...
It is permissible. Actually, I'm looking at an actual ordinance right now that has it.
But in any event, we're on first reading. And I would say to you that if that's your desire, and we can look at it, you don't need to amend it tonight. I think you could if it looks like it's permissible, but, you know, I haven't looked at that statute. But if we wanted to simply make it a second reading amendment, I don't believe that that so fundamentally changes the character of the ordinance as to say, no, we would have to go back to a first reading. It's simply a different additional enforcement mechanism. And, you know, if you're concerned about what the shopping cart ordinance might say, then you're unnoticed, you need to come out and discuss it. So, if you want to do that, and we look at it, and it's not a problem, which...
It's not.
It can certainly be a second reading amendment.
Okay, so, I would like to, any new development or anyone that pulls any permitting now has to get those...
If they have a shopping cart component.
If they have a shopping cart component, they have to...
You guys keep saying development.
Or retail, have a retail, from a business standpoint, it could be a development that has, like, retail on the bottom or whatever.
A mixed-use, a shopping center.
But, I mean, we're still talking about a retail business.
Right, but I'm just going to give an example, like, also, like, there's the Costco, the old Costco.
Yeah.
I think, I think the ordinance, I'm not, I'm, excuse me, I'm interrupting, but I think it says that under five shopping carts does not count.
Yeah, it has to be, I think, five or more. You're correct.
Five or more. Right, I just want to, like, for example...
What we're talking about, I'm just, we're not talking about anything that has anything to do with residential.
No, no residential.
Because development, we're talking about...
There shouldn't be shopping, there should not be shopping carts in residential. But it could be a mixed-use.
That's true.
It could be a mixed-use. In a mixed-use, we don't want, we wanted to apply also that they also have to have those locks on the shopping.
So, if it has a retail component to it, she wants to have that restriction tied to that. So, that's what she said.
When you say you're using the word locks, and the reason I'm hesitating...
There are the locks that they put on the, on the bottom of the...
It doesn't allow it to go...
It has, the carts have restrictions that can't...
If you've been to CVS, they have a new thing where the shopping carts themselves are locked into...
You're talking about the Aldi's or what?
You're talking about with the quarter, no, not that, the one where you, it can't...
You're talking about making sure they can't leave the premise.
Right. So, it could be called wheel lock. Wheel lock in the ordinance.
Well, in any case.
It doesn't change.
We understand what you'd like.
Okay.
Unless there's some reason, assuming you pass it on first reading, unless there's some reason we find, in which case we'll come to you.
Okay.
We're happy to amend the ordinance on second reading and bring it back with that as a second reading amendment.
Please amend it like that.
Which is perfectly fine. The nature of this does not...
Right, and then...
Disqualify it.
And then, the other thing I wanted to mention is that at the Jefferson Plaza, when that came to us, we, it was, I suggested it, and we voted, and we included it in the, in, um, we included it when we passed it, that the whole shopping center had to have those wheel locks. And I know the Publix has it.
For each business or the whole shop?
For each business that has shopping carts, yes. But only, to my understanding, only the Publix does. So, and it was, we voted on that here, that it had to be the whole Jefferson Plaza. So, if we can, please...
Lowe's doesn't have it, but does, right?
Lowe's, I believe, does.
But she, that's, isn't that the creation of this ordinance right now? That she is going to make sure that they know, and that there's penalties to the owner that didn't sign it?
Right, but, but...
They have to submit it to us, they have to submit it to us. We review the plan, and we have to approve the plan.
Anybody that has more than five carts.
But they have to submit it to the city for review, to the Department of Public Works.
Anybody has more than five carts.
But Jefferson Plaza definitely had that component in there that they needed to have.
We need to pass this first reading, second reading.
It should cover every business in there, because every business with five shopping carts has to do it. So, it may have been specific to that one, but because of your ordinance, it would now apply to all those businesses.
Okay, maybe, maybe I misunderstood. I'm, I, Jefferson Plaza is already there. I said any new businesses. So, now we're going to make the old businesses, the existing businesses, install those wheel locks?
So, the ordinance that you introduced in 2022 has many different options.
Okay.
They can hire a person that just kind of just monitors to ensure shopping carts doesn't leave the premises. They can ensure that there's lock wheels at a certain distance, the wheels get locked, so they can't move any further. They can fence in the carts where, if you've gone to Dollar Tree, you see that big, long pole, and you can't even leave the store. There's so many different ways to do that. So, the ordinance actually lays a few options out. And so, they, it's up to them to kind of decide what shopping retention plan.
For existing businesses.
They propose it to us, and we...
For existing businesses.
Existing, or any business that comes into our city.
For the new businesses, I want mandatory that they put those locks on.
Gotcha.
For, for Jefferson Plaza, it is mandatory that they put it, that's how we voted on it.
And if they're, if they're not following whatever was voted, then they're subject to enforcement now.
So, I remember when the Publix opened up, half of the carts had it and half didn't. I was there at the, at the opening. And the manager then, I said something to the manager, the manager said something, and next day, they were, they were all done.
Yep.
So, the other ones should do it as well.
I remember how tough that water feature aspect that Commissioner Florham was pushing, how tough he fought for that. Commissioner Vice, Vice Mayor Jean.
Thank you. So, I wanted to kind of piggyback off something Commissioner Smith was saying at the beginning. So, like, when you look at the BTRs, you have a whole bunch of businesses, right? How is that outreach process going to look? So, are you going to hope that they're responsive to this new thing? Are you guys going to be doing outreach or any sort? Or is it going to be like more so for repeated offenders? That there'll be more of a targeted outreach to them to see that it can be an agreement?
So, I want to... Well, definitely a generalized outreach. However, we have been collecting data for about a year and a half now. So, we know, to Commissioner Smith and Commissioner Smucker's point, we know who the repeat offenders are, and we know what the large, vast, which businesses to really target to get that retention plan. So, the part of putting this is obviously not to find the businesses so much, but to really remove this nuisance out of the city, because it's in the roads. It's creating a really, a big safety hazard at this point, and it's requiring a lot of manpower. So, so we'll work with those, that 20% that's really causing 80% of the issues, because we know who they are. But at a certain point, we, of course, have to enforce if they're not providing a retention plan within the window that the ordinance...
I would also suggest to reach out to the regional reps. So, not just the store managers, but the regional rep for that particular franchise. And they might be a little bit more responsive than the manager themselves.
Yeah, yeah, very good idea.
Commissioner Chernoff.
Just my question is, can we put in there somehow that they go to the process of charging for the cart to begin with, instead of putting the locks on? Because the locks don't seem to be deterring so many people. So, can we make sure if somebody lays out $2 to get the cart, and you get $2 back when you put the cart back?
Like Aldis, you put a quarter and you get a cart.
I mean, make it a dollar, make it $2.
I'm kind of hesitant on that, because that... You can still, well, here's my thing, I'm just thinking about, as, 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 you know, we, dealing with kids going to the store and then have to have all the quarter. I'm just thinking how crazy that can get. I just say, can we, I don't want to put that additional...
Just look into it.
If you can look into it, but I'm not, I'm not looking for it.
It could be an option, it could be an option.
It could be an option, but I, I mean, I just think that it'll be, it'll be less conducive to people feeling like they can, you know, move around with a cart and stuff. That's one of the reasons I don't like going to Aldi, because you have to put a quarter in there and what have you, and I have to, yeah, but, yeah.
And some people don't, don't have money with them.
Exactly, I'm using a card and stuff, that's, that's the reason I stay away from there. That's, that's just, but do I have a motion to...
Oh, I make a motion.
All right, motion second, Madam Clerk, can you do a roll call?
Commissioner Su.
Yes.
Commissioner Chernoff.
Yes.
Commissioner Florhman.
Yes.
Commissioner Smith.
Yes.
Commissioner Smucker.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Jean.
Yes.
Mayor Michael Joseph.
Yes.
It passed a 7-0.
All right, 11.7. Moves to introduce ordinance number 2025-11, first reading, reduction of development costs for previously approved projects.
Second.
Item 11.6, ordinance number 2025-11, first reading, reduction of development costs for previously approved projects impacted by economic conditions, sponsored by Commissioner Chernoff. An ordinance of the mayor and city commissioners in the city of North Miami Beach, Florida, amending the code of ordinance that's created a new section entitled reduction of development costs for previously approved projects impacted by economic conditions, providing criteria and procedures for reasonable reduction of development fees where construction costs have increased dramatically, providing for administrative review, consistency with impact fee and permit fee studies, and developer education to leverage funding programs, providing for severability, codification, and effective date, first reading.
Mr. Director, wait. No, this is not an ordinance, this is a resolution. Please...
It is an ordinance.
Is it is? Oh, yes, this is...
If adopted, there will be an implementing resolution.
Okay, because I didn't, I'm sorry, it says, it says resolution. So, since it is, Madam Clerk, can you please open it up for a public comment?
Good evening, the floor is open for a public comment at this time. There is a three-minute time limit. They come forward.
Karen Harold, North Miami Beach resident. It's very hard on the little bit we get to even understand what a lot of these are about. Like, I didn't know what the shopping cart was about. But the only thing I would say here is, if any delays with the development are due to their own changing plans, not having the employees they need, or is it due to us holding them up because of permits and stuff? That's the only thing I would suggest, because we shouldn't be responsible if they're not getting it together themselves. I don't know what it's really about. Thank you.
My barra Kazan. This ordinance, it's 11.6, not 11.7. And they, you know, you have to be careful with these things, like, like what Commissioner Barbara Cramer said. Commissioner Barbara Cramer said they want to cut in the, in the impact fees, but are they cutting their lawyer fees, their attorney fees? Or they still have to pay the attorney full, full cost? Now, I've been here so long that I realize that sometimes staff does not read everything of what an ordinance really is, of what is in the ordinance. I do not want, when you guys vote for this, then we get to find out, oh, yes, they're now entitled to 10 to 20 years waiver of property taxes, and we do not have to pay property taxes. They do not have to pay property taxes for the next 10 to 20 years, because this is a reduction as well. When many of you stayed away, some of you carried the city to court in 2006, 2007 to prevent development, we, Impact NMB, started a movement, or helped to push the movement of building, bringing buildings into this community so that we can keep up with the expenses of, of pensions and salaries. Tonight, the, the, the union leader came talking about our staff is not being paid enough. And if we're going to be given breaks, you have to remember, when staff comes and they cry for, for raising salaries and pensions, and pensions are underfunded, $2 million and $8 million underfunded with a police pension, remember how you were given the breaks? Because many of you, you did not come for the fight. You stayed away, you kept quiet. You did not see anything in support. As a matter of fact, some of you tore us down with lies. How if, when these high rises, they go up, and the air is going to block out eastern shores, they're going to get a shadow cast on eastern shores. People are in these high rises, they're going to see when their daughters are bathed in, in the bathrooms, and all sorts of foolish things we heard, foolish. Now, tonight, they come looking like saints, angels. But remember your path that you took, when you, before you came here. What was your stance? And to me, if this is going to be given 10, 10 years and 20 years, tax breaks, I do not know, because the presentation was not there. But as I said, staff do not tell you everything, everything that you need to know. But when you vote for it, then we get surprises after. Thank you very much for having me.
Public comment? Seeing none, public comment is cool, Mr. Director.
Good evening, Ms. Mayor and members of the commission. This is, you know, at the request of Commissioner Chernoff, we put together this ordinance, which basically looks at revisiting the development proposal and reducing the cost with respect, reducing the cost in accordance with the footprint of the development project. So, if the, if they are reducing the size of the project, the fees will be reduced. But mandatory fees will not be reduced otherwise. Now, one of the ways that affordability can be introduced into the project is pointing towards state and federal funds that can be leveraged into the project. Traditionally, developers rely on their own financing, and that sometimes leads them into hardship. And now, staff is here to provide that additional support for state and federal. Many people do not understand those programs, and we're here to provide that educational component of that and to introduce layering into the funding so that they can benefit from that additional...
Thank you, Commissioner Chernoff.
All right, the intent of this was that we have developers, six or seven of them right now, that aren't building their projects of large scale. The intent was to give them the opportunity to reduce that footprint, come in with an eight-story building versus a 30-story building, and not charge them again for the fees. Not, not to, not have them pay fees, not to reduce their, just not have them be recharged for fees if they've already paid. That's the idea.
I'm for it. Commissioner, Commissioner Su.
Yeah, I was wondering, so, let's say 30 stories down to eight. What kind of time do you have to expend into the approval of that application, or that has nothing to do with you?
No, because those are previously approved projects, so we will basically proportionally grow back and revisit, just like any redevelopment project, and then reassess the fees to, on a reduced...
So, do you have to review, take the same amount of time to review the application, or no?
It will have to be reviewed to be able to provide the level of reduction that...
So, we do have to expend staff time?
But not from the beginning, though, not from the full beginning.
Well, I mean, like, if the project is changed from 30 to, 30 stories to eight, I think that there is, no?
Yeah, see, because normally, when we do have a development that is reducing its footprint, that goes through an administrative review process.
Excuse me, there's what?
It's not a commission review, it's not a... It's not a commission review, it's not a public health review, it's just an administrative review, because we're basically scaling back. And that also takes us to giving the credits when they have been overpaid based on the new footprint of the project. So this is how the mechanics of the project will work. But we're also, as an additional component, introduce the educational component of that, which is not mandatory, but we will point them towards that direction, because we want to have as feasible a project as possible. And so staff is here with our expertise to provide that additional support. Not that it was required, but it is just optional, and we will point to that direction. But more importantly, it's based on the reduced footprint and the reduced size of the building project, the fee will be less.
Okay.
Commissioner, I mean Vice Mayor?
Thank you. So this is a very technical policy, right? And I, I guess, I wish I had more time to...
It's first reading.
It's first reading. So when you said that the, when you say the footprint, you're going to analyze the decrease of the footprint, right? What fee schedules come from that?
No, you know, normally, whenever a, a development project is reducing its size, we, you know, and is not increasing, we do administratively review those. That's part of our review process, and we do that. So we will use that same process and, but we will reassess the fee as would normally be done for a new project based on the reduced height, the reduced number of units, the reduced footprint. So, so that revised fee will be the delta difference that will be assessed.
So what I mean is, we're talking DERM again? We're talking that whole entire...
No, the DERM and all that are already done. So it's not going to, this thing, but, you know, it's, it's impact fee and other regulatory fees that are paid would be, based on the square footage of the building would be reduced.
So do you have a clear line item of some of the typical things that would be assessed based on that decreased footprint?
Well, you know, the, the impact fee, the, the parks fee, for example, the, you know, based on the number of units, for example. A park, you know, parks, you know, impact fees assessed based on the number of units, per housing unit. So if the, if the housing units are less, automatically the park fee would be less. So that's one impact fee. Police impact fee, if they've previously paid police impact fee, they cannot be charged twice for additional, because police impact fee is something that is just like a blanket fee. So when it is reduced, they cannot be overcharged, or they cannot, you know. So these are the, some of the fees. So road fees and things like that, the impact fees, will all be reduced proportionately.
I think for, for the second reading, it would be better if we had a list of, of things. Even though it's administrative, it would be good for us to know what those fees are in addition to impact fees, what else is affected by their decreasing...
We'd be happy to do that, yes.
Okay, thank you. Commissioner Smuckler?
Yes, so Commissioner Sean brought up DERM. So DERM is not through the city of North Miami Beach, those fees. It goes directly to, it's paid directly to DERM. But, so, so if any changes are made in reduction, they also have to go through DERM as well?
No.
No?
If a project has previously been approved by DERM and is not having any, any additional impact on the environment or other services, then it doesn't have to go back.
They don't get a refund either.
Right.
They don't get a refund either, yes.
You know, this, this is, this is like a little iffy here, because like, I, I understand, okay, so they're, they're changing the project, they're reducing it, and I, they're... So when, when they pay the original amount, so then they're going to pay, so when they reduce it, they pay a second, they pay another fee, is what...
That's paid directly to Miami Dade County DERM, so...
No, 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 not, not the DERM, now, now we're, now we're at the city.
Yes.
So, okay, so what are, what are we reducing? We're, we're reducing the fact that they, that they...
Just as I give an example, let's say they were...
Wait, wait, wait. What you're technically, what you're technically reducing is you're not charging them again the same, because normally, you'd have to bring them back and charge them everything all over again. That's what we're, we're saying to them, stay, build your unit.
Yeah, but at the same time, it's not fair to staff. It's not staff's fault that they want to reduce the size.
I'm not saying fair, but not fair to staff.
Just one quick clar, I think this needs to be pointed out. You can correct me if I'm wrong. But based on my previous zoning review experience, if the project is changing just by reduction and not so much overall or anything new coming before you, then it's just a reduction in the units and how they calculate the impact fees, that's it.
Yeah.
Yeah, it's just administrative.
Exactly. Like, for parks and recreation fees, based on the number of housing units. So if, if there is 200 units now, there are 100, the parks, that's one example of a fee that will be impacted, will be reduced.
But I, I would like to see, like, a typical, yeah, like a typical building...
We'll be happy to, when we come back, we'll provide more detail.
Before we come back.
When we have second reading...
Yes.
There will be also, at the same time, an implementing resolution with the details. But we couldn't pass that resolution until, in other words, at the next meeting, first we'll have second read, or if it's the next meeting, we'll have second reading on the ordinance. If you approve second reading, then at the same meeting, we'll present the resolution to implement it with all the details. You just can't adopt the resolution for the details until the ordinance itself passes. But you could change the resolution if there's something in there that you're not comfortable with.
And staff will bring back some examples for...
Thank you. Commissioner Florimont?
Thank you, Mayor. Tell us more about the 36-month sunset review.
Well, it's, since this is a new program, this is based on a hardship requirement. So at 36 months, there would be a review as to how successful the program is. So I just wanted to provide that assurance that this is not an indefinite program, that we are basically starting a program to assist businesses that are in hardship. It's not something that is through a charter that we want to take it all the way through. We're taking it as a, as a hardship. But in three years, if that, if program turns out to be something more feasible that can benefit the developers on a long term, at that three years, sunset review could basically say, well, this can be extended, or for another three years, or for another 10 years, or indefinitely. That's the time to, so at least three years is a good time to, at least know that we are not going to indefinitely be stuck with a program that is not successful, but at least we, we would be able to go into a sunset review.
Commissioner Smith?
I'm not sure this should be called reduction of fees. I mean, what it should be called is no additional fees will be added. They've, what we're establishing, thanks to Commissioner's explanation, is that they have already paid a fee, and now there will be no additional fees. We're not reducing the fees they paid.
Correct.
Okay, so that makes you understand it much more. How many projects are there? I'd like you to bring a list of how many projects. I'd also like you to tell me where they are in the process and the, the developers that have it. Maybe we could even reach out in the next month and find out how many would be interested in doing this, and how much is it... And I, I'm not realizing what it was, thinking it was a reduction. I was going to ask for no greater than 10% of the project and give a limit on it, but it's not a reduction. It's not, we're not going to charge additional fees. They've already paid. So my next question is, on the whereas clause, where the commission finds that approved projects that will scale down, that they will, with modified designs, then they'll reduce, well, actually, we won't charge more of impact fees. Okay, but by what guidelines? If you had a 15-story building and you went down to 14, do you qualify? If you went down from 20 to 18, do you qualify? Or do you have a basis of what you're thinking? Somebody went from 20 to 10 stories?
Non-residential would be by the square footage.
Okay.
And residential would be a number of units.
Okay.
And, you know, like, as I gave the example of parks and recreation fee is based on number of units, because, you know, that, that's how it is calculated. The police impact fee, that's also based on the number of units. So the, non-residential is based on commercial square footage. So if it is reduced, the, the impact fee and other costs will be reduced accordingly.
So, in reality, we're not giving any money back. You, you gave us fees for a 25-story building, and you're building an eight-story building. The only thing is, we want you to build it, and we do not want to charge you more fees. No, no, what I want to do is amend this to say that there will be no additional fees. I make the, I make the motion to amend it, that the wording is there be no...
You have a motion in a second. And Commissioner Vice Mayor Jean has one final question.
I was, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I was looking at some things online. So even though it's administrative, Director?
Director?
Sir?
Even though it's administrative, if there is a revised, it's saying if it's a revised site plan approval, you guys will handle that administratively?
Yes, under the guidelines that we have presently, if there's a reduced scope, the site plan, as well as the review, will be done administratively.
So at what point does the commission chime in? Because if we previously approved something that's 30 feet, 30 stories, and then now there's a change to the site plan, technically, we have the autonomy to, to, to approve that. So now you're saying it's going to be administrative? Some, these are some of the, because I'm, I'm just reading it right now, right? So building permits. So if they pulled permits for certain things and then they reduced the footprint, they're not going to have to pull more permits? That's basically the nuance here?
No, the permitting would be required for everything, you know. Nothing can be done without permitting. It's just, in the development review stage, it's just the size of the building reduction. So all the fee and everything would proportionally be reduced, and that's the way it is. It's not something that we're giving in addition out of our own administrative costs back to the, to the developers.
I do think that those nuances need to be addressed, because in even case of reduction, it might be that they change a lot of the floor plan and so different things that might alter the design altogether.
We'll come back with some scenarios for you to consider and we'll put forward.
Let me just ask the attorney. So instead of saying reduction, saying no additional fees of development cost, would that cover what Vice Mayor just said? That if they, if they have permitting fees, they still have to pay the permitting? We don't want to say there's no additional cost. We just want to say no additional cost of development cost. Is that correct? You would know that.
Well, yeah, but let me just say that there's, there's nothing in this ordinance that's going to touch permitting.
Okay.
It has nothing, it doesn't affect it. I'm thinking, you know, how we implement your amendment, and I'll get with the director for revised language, assuming that you take a voice vote and adopt your amendment.
Thank you for that.
The word waiver of additional fees is kind of bouncing around in my head. What we're doing is not, I see why you say reduction is misleading. So if we say we're going to waive additional fees when fees have already been paid, then that's, I'm looking that, but we'll, we'll come up with final language. But I think that might be clearer than, well, that's what we're doing. We're waiving the payment of additional fees because you've already paid more than we would be charging if we came in with it. And that also goes to the Vice Mayor's question. The, the theory here is that if the commission approved, you know, 500 units in a 30-story building, if somebody came back and said, well, now I want 550 in a 31-story, you might say, whoa, that was as far as I wanted to go. But if somebody really is coming back and saying, I can't afford to build the 30-story building. If I do 10, and it's only 250 units, the theory is that if you were willing to have it be that big thing, and they're going to do us, that you guys are okay with it.
And then it will come back, the new design to us, correct?
Absolutely, yes.
Okay, that's all. Make a motion.
So now we got to do a voice vote on the amended... All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Now, we're going to vote on the ordinance as amended. Madam Clerk, can you do a roll call?
Commissioner Chernoff?
Yes.
Commissioner Florimont?
Yes.
Commissioner Smith?
Yes.
Commissioner Smuckler?
Yes.
Commissioner Sue?
No.
Vice Mayor Jean?
Yes.
Mayor Michael Joseph?
Yes.
6-1.
Next item, 11.7.
Move to introduce Resolution Number R 2025-162, Palm Air. For the record, on the previous ordinance, I did read that it was 11.6, even if there was some other confusion. Item 11.7, reduction, give me, Resolution Number R, not reduction on the brain here. R 2025-162, Palm Air, Declaration of Restrictive Covenants from the Community Development Director. Resolution of the Mayor and City Commission of the City of North Miami Beach, Florida, authorizing the city manager to sign the release of Declaration of Restrictive Covenants attached as Exhibit C for the property located at 1699, 1750, and 1775 Northeast 167th Street, attached as Exhibit D, previously occupied by Nova Southeastern University, subject to declaration of restrictions recorded in Official Records Book 15029, Page 786 of the Public Records of Miami Dade County, Florida, attached as Exhibit A, which received site plan approval by City of North Miami Beach, Resolution R 2023-105 on October 17, 2023, attached as Exhibit B for a 728 dwelling unit mixed-use development, providing for findings of fact, confirming expiration and limitation of approval, providing for conflicts, and providing for an effective date. And this is a resolution, so it's, it's...
Mr. Director, please go ahead.
Yeah, this is a, a project that was previously approved for, with certain restrictive covenants and, you know, restrictions on the development. But in 2023, redevelopment was approved, and these restrictions are no longer valid. And so they have requested a release of those restrictions, because now it's going to be a different use, and it's a different building parameter, so, and that's what we are recommending.
Commissioner Smith?
Thank you, everybody, for your patience tonight. I have no question.
Commissioner Florimont?
No questions.
Commissioner Smuckler?
No question.
Vice Mayor? Commissioner Jean, um, Sue, sorry.
No question.
Commissioner Chernoff?
No questions.
Do I have a motion in a second?
No motion.
Make them second.
I have a motion in a second by Commissioner Chernoff and Commissioner Smith, second. Commissioner Smith, all in favor, say aye? Aye. Any opposed? None opposed, next item. Move to, I can't do both.
Move to introduce resolution number R two thousand twenty-five dash one sixty-three.
One sixty-three.
Approving the purchase of sulfuric acid.
Public, uh, public, is that second?
Second.
Second, yeah. And N B Water Director, that's you. Introduce eleven point, well, let me read it. Eleven point eight, resolution number R two thousand twenty-five dash one sixty-three, approving the purchase of sulfuric acid from the water director. A resolution, the mayor and city commission in the city of North Miami Beach, Florida, approving purchase orders between the city and multiple vendors for the supply and delivery of sulfuric acid, nine point ninety-three percent for an annual budgeted amount not to exceed seven hundred seventy-five thousand. Authorizing the city manager designated all things necessary to effectuate this resolution, providing for conflicts, providing for governance errors, providing for severability, and providing for an effective date. Director, brief.
Good evening. Yes, sir. The item before you is the chemical consumption at water treatment plant for pre-treatment. That water treatment plant were utilizing piggyback contract from lead agency, City of Deerfield Beach. They awarded to two service provider and we do have them both available for us as a backup. And that's the item before you. The adopted budget is eight hundred twenty-five thousand dollar. We're going based off our need at this time.
Okay, move to adopt. Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor say aye?
Aye.
All right, passes. Now we're going to business tax receipts, twelve point one. This is my first, now, this is, we, we only do this once a year. I'm going to allow public comment on this.
Oh, hang on. We moved item nineteen point eight to-
It's in discussion.
Oh, no, 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 it's in legislation.
We moved it to discussion.
It was, it was a resolution.
It's gonna, we have, we have to get to it, but we will, we'll get to it.
Are we going to vote on something on that?
Yes, we will vote on it. It's in discussion. So let me move forward. So now we're in business, we're in the business tax receipt, twelve point one. Madam, madam, I need move to introduce that. Do we have to move to introduce that or? Do I have a motion?
It's a business tax receipt.
Do I have to move to introduce it or?
It's here at first and then-
Is there somebody here representing them?
No, but I just, I want to open up for G five.
Yeah, this is their once a year.
It's once a year, so.
Right.
So, but I, I want to open up for public comment because we've, we've done this in the past.
I think Commissioner Sue is correct. We, we did move nine eighteen to legislation.
I moved it to, oh.
Yeah.
So wait, 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 hang on. Because I don't-
I definitely wrote that on my notes.
Because I thought I moved it to the, to the discussion because- Go through the business tax receipt.
Okay.
Business tax receipt. So now I'm going to move, can I have, can we move to introduce it so I can?
Don't move.
I have, I have a motion in a second. I'm going to open up for public comment. This is the first, this is the first time I've actually done this as mayor. I know this happens once a year, so I'm going to allow public comment for these items. So, Madam Clerk, please open up for public comment.
Good evening. The floor is open for public comment. If you wish to speak, Ms. Harold, come forward. You have three minutes to do so. Please state your name for the record.
Karen Harold, North Miami Beach resident. I already spoke on this on public comment, but I think it's so important to bring up again that what we're known for, our city, has been talked about so much tonight. You talk about the smoke shops and things like that and have a strip club that allows eighteen-year-old in is not saying a good example. Most of the clubs, somebody say something? Most of the clubs I was reading about were twenty-one admitting because of the alcohol. I don't know. Whatever, it's not my business what they do, but it did say that eighteen-year-olds, and I think that's a bad, bad example. And also extending the hours, I think it's a bad, bad example. There are still people, again, on the roads, coming home from work, going to work. You have different, people that work different shifts, and I think we have to be careful because this plays into the image of our city. And this goes against everything you've talked about tonight. Thank you so much.
Okay.
Good evening, Mayor and Commissioners. My name is Mabarakazan. Yes, I'm, I sent each, each and every one of you emails and texts. I do not know if anybody read it, but I guess that's why the mayor changed his mind tonight. Because I sent, I sent it to him as well. Right. Yeah, I know you're a great supporter and an advocate for this, Mr. Mayor, but that, not a problem. That's your democratic right. Just hope it does not come back and bite you. These, we have the code in our city, the code of our city. And it stated that businesses like these encourages human trafficking. It encourages sex trafficking and it encourages narco trafficking. I do not know if you understand what it is, right? That is why our president, POTUS, he's sending warships now. He, he's not sending little gunboats. He's sending warships to take care of narco trafficking, which is associated with human trafficking and sex trafficking. And he's bombing the hell out of them in the Caribbean Sea. He does not have, the, the missiles alone is more expensive than what he's destroying. But he can also make raids on these strip clubs, smoke shops. You would see how much, if they really abide in with the rules, not one owner of a strip club came and he sat in there. And then when he was to speak, he says, the, the police department, they make raids on us, they call us, they tell us when they're coming. And we say, come along, come, no, don't call anybody. Go and make those raids and see actually if, if the, you know, it, there's so much to say about these strip clubs. It's a nuisance to society. You have people being, and I'm not saying specifically it's that particular strip club, but the code that we're saying, it's associated with those businesses. It did not say public supermarket is, that is associated, no. It says those specific strip clubs associated with the worst of the worst. People kidnapped and the girls might be smiling, but they're, they're on the duress. The passports are taken away whilst they do their performance on the stages. And as I said, not saying specifically that club, but what I'm saying, it's related specifically to those site type of businesses. And thank you very much for having me.
Any more speakers? Seeing none, public works, um, community developments director.
Good evening, Mayor and Commission. This is an application for extended hours by Taboo Miami by, by G five. They already have a state license and they already have a license up to two o'clock. This application basically would, they're asking a license from four AM, extend from four AM to six AM. And it's a non-refundable business tax that is valid for one year and they have to come back every year for, for renewal of that. And that's what this is, and staff is recommending approval for that.
Mr. Mayor. D C.
This was when we recognized the police.
That's what I, 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 no, yes, sir.
Sorry.
D C, I was, I was about to do it. Thank, thank you, Deputy Chief.
I just told him I was calling him up too.
Good evening, Mayor and Commission. Choosing this side so I don't hit the TV on the way out. The police department doesn't have any objection for G five to have a license from four to six. So.
Kind of incidents have been between the last license and this license in those hours?
Well, I'm not sure the hours, Commissioner. I have to get back to you on that. However, I do have eleven reports within the year that were consisted of a robbery, strong arm, two simple batteries, a criminal mischief, which is vandalism, a battery on a police officer, property loss stolen, an information report, a property damage report, a simple battery, property damage and a property loss or stolen.
Now, is that more than last year or less than last year?
I believe it's actually less than last year, but I have to get you that.
Believe it's what?
I believe it's less, so I'd have to get you that number. I don't have the year before's report.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah.
Commissioner Smith?
What, what prompted somebody to attack an officer?
Commissioner, without reading the police report in front of me, you know, it's a nightclub. Things happen out in the parking lot. Maybe a patron's intoxicated, stated something towards an officer, tried to fight him. You know, I don't want to say it's normal activities for, for a nightclub, but things happen at nightclubs, and that's why we're there. And the officer made the arrest and moved forward.
How long ago the year was that?
This was on April twenty-third.
Very much.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. If you experience a, one of the patrons coming out completely intoxicated and cannot drive, are you inclined to stop them from getting in the vehicle and driving or is that outside of your jurisdiction?
It's not outside our jurisdiction. If an officer does, does observe that, they can approach them, but in reality, Commissioner, most likely, an officer's not going to observe that coming out. We're there for the security and we're not looking at the patrons leaving the, leaving the nightclub.
I see. Okay, thank you.
I mean, if someone's clearly stumbling out of the club, then obviously we would say something and not let them drive.
Commissioner Chernoff?
The club owner's been very responsible to be here and has been here before, and we do appreciate that, and they did-
Oh, if she wants to come up?
As I think that, that they reduced their fee, their incidences from last year, if I remember correctly. We were not, we were not happy with what was going on and they put instrument, you know, in things to control that and do a better job. And I think they have, so I'm going to vote for it. I appreciate them.
Commissioner Smucker?
Yes, and, and for next year, they're going to reduce it even more, right?
That's the goal, yeah, yes.
Because next year you have to come up again and we're going to say it's been reduced, so we'll approve it then.
Just like, just like Dean's goal, we'll be back, back here soon enough, yes. Commissioner Smith?
I, I just want to say I have taken a few people around the city and most people don't even know that we do have that industrial area under the expressway, abutting Miami Gardens. It's only a few blocks. If you ride that area, we don't have many buildings as well-kept as what they're doing with this establishment. That G five is like a brand-new building, fully lighted, beautiful paved driveway, plenty of parking. It's not my kind of place. I've always voted against the four to six because the buses pick the children up on Biscayne and on one hundred and sixty-third. But this is in the industrial area out of the way and it's so well-maintained that it, it really, I have to tell you, it would be a hard thing for me to have to vote no for that because what I've seen is responsible ownership in the city. And, and I agree with Commissioner Smucker. Next year, let's just get the incidents down quite substantially, even though they're low, that's not low enough. I make a motion.
Do I have a second?
To approve.
All right. All in favor say aye?
Aye.
Any no's? One no. Next item, we're going to go-
I said no.
All right, Madam Clerk, we're going to go to that legislation regarding the, the calendar because I want to, we're at nine thirty-three, so we're moving pretty good.
Okay.
It was pulled by Commissioner Sue, that we're going, we're going to that one particular item, the, the calendar. If you can read that?
Sure.
I move to introduce, or if I can, or, okay.
Well, who, was there a motion second?
Second.
Okay.
Who made the motion?
I make a motion.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, he motioned to introduce.
No, no.
The ma, the mayor?
Oh, I can't, oh, I can't do that. I thought I could, I said, I thought I-
I'll make the motion.
I'll second it.
Okay.
There we go.
Item nine eighteen, resolution number, it's pulled from the consent calendar. Resolution number R two thousand twenty-five dash one six oh, approve city commission meeting dates for the two thousand twenty-six calendar year, sponsored by the city clerk, a resolution of the mayor and city commission of the city of North Miami Beach, Florida, setting dates for the city commission meetings for the two thousand twenty-six calendar year, providing for an effective date.
Motion to approve.
Second. Got a motion and a second to approve as, as approved. Do we have any discussion on that item? Commissioner Sue, your thoughts?
Thank you so much. So I, I know I've heard my fellow commissioners speak about having two meetings a month and I think this is the opportunity to do that because we already have alternate date, meet, dates, meeting dates here established. My proposal is very simple and what I want to see is that we have our regular commission meeting on every Tuesday, third Tuesday of the month. Now, if we don't finish our meeting, let's say we have manager reports left, attorney reports or any other reports left, we could also bring this to the next meeting, which is the following Thursday, and the alternate meeting date. Now, on the alternate meeting date, I would like to give the priority to quasi-judicial items. So that way, any developers that come in, they would have first dibs and be the priority on the second meeting. If we don't have any quasi-judicial, then we go straight into finishing up the agenda and we may end early. So my proposal for Tuesday is that we start at six, we end at ten. My proposal for that is because we have staff that have been working all day since nine or eight AM and we have them stay till midnight. They're driving back home. I mean, like, this is basically intoxication after a strip club.
What? Wait, wait, wait.
I'm, I'm just, I'm just, I'm making a joke. No, what I'm saying is it's serious. It is serious. What I'm saying is it's, listen, people have been working all day. It's more than a twelve-hour day. And they, then after the meeting, they have to drive back home. Not only that, like, I mean, I think Commissioner Smucker and I share the same, the same tension. Like, after the meeting, we, we go back home wired. We, we can't go back to sleep right away.
Well.
So, so I just wanted to, sorry, Mr. Mayor, let me finish. So six to ten, then if it doesn't end, then next time, and then following Thursday, we complete the rest of the agenda. And then after that is also six to ten. And then if anything else, any special meetings that, or executive sessions or any of that sort can also follow in that day if the agenda is short. So this way, we have these dates set in our calendars. The clerk doesn't have to send emails back and forth, waiting for our response to find our availability for developers, for any, any other special meetings, any executive sessions, anything that we need. We will use those two days and block it off on our calendar and work systematically. This way, we can expedite and move things forward quickly. So usually, we have our meetings from six to midnight. That's six hours. If we, if we distribute that over two days, we do four hours each, right? We're all sane, we're all, you know, conscientious of our vote. We're not rushing anything. We're not trying to get home or trying to adjourn. So that way, we could really make a decision, like very sound decisions in very sane times. So that's my proposal. I, I hope to get your support because I really do think that we, our city is, is quite behind for various reasons, right? And I think that if we can get our legislation and our, you know, resolutions and our, our activity in the city moving quickly, I think that would actually really help our city to move forward as well. Thank you.
Okay, so let me chime in because, you know, since I run the meeting and I've been doing very well, trying to wrap us up. A lot of times, the reason why we have a lot of rollovers is because we, we don't have a preclusion of how many discussion items we have. I think we should work on that, to be quite frank, because like, to your point, Commissioner Sue, you've had discussion items because there's, you've had, well, how many of them are in here that are yours? Like, four or five? And the thing is, like, I don't know if we should limit that because I think that's, that should be number one. We should limit how many discussion items one commissioner can add on there, not to like belabor or have meetings run off. I think if you are serious about a particular item, you should focus on that one and move forward on it and be respectful of everybody's time in getting to that particular issue. I just, that's, that's my take on it. We have been doing pretty well. I think probably like for the, almost a year that, you know, I've been chairing this and it'll be a year starting up in December, I think we went over maybe twice. We've had, I know there's meetings, to, to Commissioner Chernoff's point, that we're trying to schedule in regards to the, to that, that special development. Understand, it gets weird because of the, the third, that, that follow-up meeting in, in November because of Thanksgiving. And then we have another one in Chris, that other month in Christmas that, because of Christmas, might change issues. I want to have it sooner. I'm going to work to have it sooner because that's my job, because I want to make sure that we can get to every item. And I think we've been doing a pretty doggone good job in doing so. So I, I don't see anything broken here. It's just that we have to be, and I've never, I haven't passed any type of, um, legislation to limit, because I'm trusting everybody's like, you know, honor system or just their ability to respect their colleagues and their time because you can't just bog down a bunch of discussion items. It's just, I would hope that people-
Mister, Mister Mayor, just-
No, no, I'm, I'm, I'm just saying, I'm, just like-
Oh, wait, no, 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 I, I feel like, I, I feel like, I don't want you to feel that I'm disrespecting my colleagues by adding so many discussion items. Remember that my discussion item had piled on since July. So because we never get to it and therefore, time, month after month after month, I add on a different discussion item because we need-
It was available last, it was available last month?
No, it wasn't available last time. I put this on in July.
No, no, I'm talking about the last meeting we had.
Yeah, we finished early.
We finished early. Your discussion items were here, were there because of, because of-
Right, and because my mother was ill.
I'm not saying, I'm not, I'm not debating the, the reason why. I'm just saying that because you, they were there, but, and they were rolled over.
Correct.
So that's what-
So they were rolled over since July and then August, we didn't have a meeting. And then it was in September. I intended to attend, but I couldn't, right? So now it's October. So that, these discussion items have happened over and over again and sometimes, and the nine point two, that was the, that was the consent agenda, could have easily been resolved with a legislative item, not having to have, not having to have been a discussion item. It could have easily been revoted because the vote count was a mistake.
Commissioner Smucker?
Thank you. So this, this item is just to vote for the dates. So that's what we're doing.
No, I'm adding on. This is the reason why I'm bringing that up for-
So I think we should, maybe nobody's going to agree with me, but I think that should be a separate item. This, because we, we need to vote on the calendar.
Okay, can I, can I add something really quickly? Just, just-
But I didn't finish. So, so I, I mean, last month, we, we finished like ten o'clock and we're not going to do that today, but I think we'll definitely finish before midnight if, if we can continue on this momentum. And if we, I think we're all learning to, to, to figure this out and maybe it took us a year to do this, but I think we're, we're trying to figure this out. And I think that if we don't talk so much, I'm going to try to even talk less, that we can, we can do this. We can finish before midnight. We can finish before eleven, like we did last month. But I'm not completely, and I don't want the, the, I don't want the employees to be here past midnight. But I'm not completely, and I don't want the, I don't want the employees to be here past midnight. And, but at the same time, I'm not convinced that they wanna come twice, either. So, that's...
Because...
Well, I, I just wanna say two things about this real quick. Number one is, if we limit it till 10:00, I don't wanna be rushed in the discussion, which I can foresee happening. Because we have a 10:00 deadline, and we have very important legislation that must pass now because of deadlines. I don't wanna see it rushed, number one. Number two, I, I have to say, you know, first place, we've all been up from morning till midnight, not just staff. But, we always wanted a second meeting. But here's the big thing, I don't wanna limit discussion items, because something can come up, and we need to discuss it, it can't wait another week, another month. So, I don't wanna limit, those are my two comments.
I don't wanna, I don't wanna add, I didn't, that's why I never did it, because I understand how important it is. I just want us to be cognizant of the fact that of people's time, like, to, to have a bunch in there, sometimes it's like, that's all I'm saying. I might, I might, I didn't, I've never proposed any legislation, I just said, I just want people to be cognizant of how many pieces of discussion items that we have, and just to be cognizant.
I don't wanna say anything, because I'm not gonna mention names, how guilty you're all making me feel about...
Oh, no, Commissioner Smith, I'm not saying...
I apologize again.
So we, we, okay, so we have a motion and a second.
I would need to, I, I would like to discuss something regarding what Commissioner Smucker just said.
Okay.
I understand that, yes, we are voting on the dates, I'm not refuting that. The reason why I had to pull this and add this discussion item is because, in September 3rd, I actually made a request to the, to our charter officers, to add an item about a second meeting. On October 10th, I sent another email, and I had had no responses, except for what the clerk had sent to me, saying that this is going to be on the agenda. So, I, this is why I brought these emails that I printed out for myself, to show everybody that I had tried to put in legislation separate from what the clerk had put in, but I have not met with any positive responses, or any responses at all from our charter officers. And that is a problem for me.
Excuse me.
The, the commissioner is, there is an item that the clerk is required to introduce. The commissioner is privileged to make a proposed amendment to do what she's suggesting, and then it's up to the commission whether you wish to do that.
Well, that wasn't accepted, so that's why we're gonna vote...
Well, it's, it's not accepted, but she's allowed to...
I understand.
Move to amend.
And for the record, I did respond to the email.
You did.
Okay, so now we're voting on the motion currently presented.
What's the motion?
Mayor, you have a motion, which is basically what the clerk is proposing.
Yes.
But Commissioner Sue, and that's the clerk answered, if she wants to try to amend that motion, she can move to amend, and then if the commission adopts it, or the commission can vote the amendment down. But she does, that's, that was why I didn't say...
Because I had a motion, a motion, a motion and a second, she motioned...
There's a motion on the floor.
And I said...
There's a motion on the floor, but there's a request to amend it to do something different.
So it would go with the person that made the motion, accepted or not?
If it's accepted by the maker and the second, it's a friendly amendment. But if it's not, there's a motion to amend, it has to be seconded. If the commission votes for it, then that becomes the amended motion. If the commission says, no, but we vote down the amendment, then you go to the vote on the original motion.
And to be clear, we're voting for commission meetings on this third Tuesday of the month, and an optional fourth Thursday of the month.
It says if necessary.
So we already had that.
Which, which, by the way, is in my calendar.
Right. The, the amendment says, as opposed to if necessary, it would make the second meeting a month on the following Thursday mandatory instead of if necessary. That's the effect of the proposed amendment, which, I mean, maybe it's not seconded, Mayor, but if it is, then you discuss it.
Okay.
So Mr. Attorney, just one second, just now, the attorney said that it's mandatory, it's actually not mandatory. If we're able to complete the, the meeting by whatever reasonable time, or if the mayor decides that, if we extend it to 11:00 and we can complete, then we complete. And then the next mayor, and then the mayor can determine whether the next meeting is needed or not.
I stand corrected.
But thank you very much. I, I wanted to say that, I just wanted to make it easy for quasi judicials, or any multifamilies that are coming before us. And I don't want them, even though it's a small, easy project, I don't want them to sit there and wait for two hours after our pledge of allegiance, and our comments, and our everything else in between, and they're sitting there for two hours waiting for a quasi judicial after we do our consent agenda.
We, we have been doing the quasi judicial on the, on the third...
No, we also have been doing the smaller quasi judicials during our regular commission meeting. We've done that twice. So what I'm trying to say is just that, is that like, let's, let's respect the developers that we want to bring in, right? Make, expedite their process, so that they're not paying $1,200 an hour for an attorney to sit there and wait for us to finish our consent agenda. So my proposal is that, I'm up to any other ideas, if you all agree to do something, you know, on the second meeting, or whatever it is. But I believe that we need, our city, our size, and our complexity and issues. Now, listen, we haven't even started talking about the issues that the attorney wants to talk about today in his report. So there's like a whole load of other things that we need to talk about, and I don't want to like rush everything in six hours and not make sound decisions.
Okay.
So, I'm, I'm up for the amendment to be amended on top of that, I'm open to that, too.
All right, I'm, I'm fine the way it is, we've been doing a very good job the way it is. We have not disparaged or put developers in any type of, you know, precarious situation where they're expounding. We understand that it takes a lot of resources to bring these items before us. I just, like I said, I think we've been doing a pretty good job, Commissioner Florimond?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. No, what I was gonna point out to was, the quasi judicial component of what we have before us was as a result of some of the conversations that were already brought up months ago, to have these two meetings. I think that this is where we kinda came to a, um, an agreement that, okay, you know, we would have these two meetings, but with major quasi judicial items, so I think that was a response to it.
On the Thursday one.
Right. Although I did, I did also ask for the 10:00 p.m., but that didn't, you know, didn't work out, which is, which is fine. But I just think that we need to, if we're gonna bring up the way the meeting is supposed to go, and how it's supposed to function as far as that is concerned, we should probably bring it up in a separate legislation. And then also, I'm going back to the staff, because one of the things that we've been asking for is how the meeting is structured, to help us move these meetings much faster, we need to take a look at that. So, that's very...
Okay.
So, is a motion?
I have, okay, you have a motion, I have a second. There was... No, she...
Someone asked acceptance.
She, she proposed it, she, there's a motion to amend. Does she have a second? She does not have a second.
I don't have a second?
Now, can we vote? Okay, let, let's, let's vote on the motion as amended.
The motion to amend.
That she's...
To amend to have a second meeting.
Right.
That's the motion.
Yes.
A mandatory?
Yes, that's what she's saying.
That's what you just...
No, well, the, the attorney said mandatory, but remember that I corrected the mandatory to be at the judgment of the mayor.
No, it's, my understanding, if I'm...
Whoa, I don't want that.
Commissioner, I did say it wrong the first time, is it would be mandatory if the agenda was not completed, or there was a quasi judicial item.
Perfect, yes.
In that case, it would be mandatory to have a second meeting. But only if the agenda is not completed, or there's a quasi judicial item, but that's the whole agenda, that's not...
I, I, I wouldn't be for it, because it, that's more cumbersome and complicated to, Mr. City Attorney, very com...
That's the motion.
I understand, so you have a motion and a second, all in favor say aye?
The motion to amend is to require...
We're amending the current motion to accept.
Commissioner Smucker has a motion to...
Not Smucker, can...
The schedule.
No, can I...
Okay, let me try it one more time, please, to be clear. Commissioner Smucker has a motion to approve the schedule that was submitted.
As it is.
And that's seconded. Commissioner Sue would like to amend that to require a second meeting if the entire agenda is not completed, or there is any quasi judicial item to be heard.
Me, I have to clarify, because we have to vote for the amendment first. But does that also include the amendment, that the first meeting's gonna stop at 10:00?
That was the motion that was made.
It does include that, okay, I understand, because I don't think that's feasible. Most of our meetings start at 6:00, and they really get to meet about a quarter till 7:00, with people coming up and, that have come as guests, or whether it's the prayer, or whether it's the...
You are, you are correct, Commissioner Smith, that was part of it as well.
Okay, well, that's part of it, I...
End it, the first meeting at 10:00, if the entire agenda is not completed, or if there's any quasi judicial, the second meeting...
Well, that, that I would vote on, because I think that that's true. If it's not, a meeting's not finished, and if, and if there's quasi judicial projects, then it should be mandatory, we have a second meeting. So I agree to that, but to stop our first meeting at 10:00, I'm not agreeing. So I don't know if you wanna break that up into two, the person that made the motion?
No, okay, so...
What, what time, Commissioner Smith, what time do you think would be, would be suitable?
When the meeting's finished, when we're all ready to call it quits?
Ooh.
So, can we, okay, so, right, vote on the amendment. So we'll vote on amendment, all in favor say aye?
What, why are we voting on?
On the amendment, on the amendment that...
That includes till 10:00.
The motion, no, yeah.
It includes till 10:00, okay.
All in favor say aye?
Aye.
Doesn't, all, all opposed, aye?
Opposed.
It failed.
Okay.
So now, now you vote on the main motion.
Okay.
Order, order, order.
Mr. Kazan, Mr. Kazan, with all due respect, please, civility, Madam Clerk, Madam Clerk, Madam Clerk, so we can just be on the same page, we're gonna vote on the, on, on the legislation as presented.
Could I, could I, could I ask this sunshine?
Wait.
Because we're in the sunshine now, I'd like to, I'd like to ask why. I know Commissioner Smith has mentioned this multiple times about having two...
No, no, Commissioner, wait, with all due respect, Commissioner, I just want, because like, we, I, I just wanna, if you, if you want to point a personal privilege after the vote, then you can do that, I'll allow that, but I just wanna land this plane. So, Madam Clerk, can you, just so we can have clarity, and that we all say, can you do a roll call, real quick, please?
We're voting on the original item.
Seconded by the, the mayor.
Commissioner Florimond?
Yes.
Commissioner Smith?
Yes.
Commissioner Smucker?
Yes.
Commissioner Sue?
Yes.
Commissioner Chernoff?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Jean?
Yes.
Mayor Michael Joseph?
Yes, point of personal privilege, Commissioner Smith.
Thank you. Now, I know that a lot of, like, even Commissioner Chernoff, Commissioner Smith, and Commissioner Smucker, I've heard multiple times saying that we should have more than one meeting a month. And, and so, when I asked, when I asked to put in an amendment, that was my initial proposal, I was willing to, I was willing to accommodate anything else that the other commissioners, that you think that we, we should have a second meeting, would like, whether it's like another workshop, or something else, or one thing or another, that requires all seven of us to be in the sunshine and to discuss things, so that we can come to an agreement. So I'm a little dumbfounded when I realize that like, nobody seconded my motion to amend.
Wait, 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 Ms. Mayor.
And we had a discussion.
I seconded it, we had a... No, you did second it, but what I'm saying is, at the end of the day, you, you decided not to...
Because I wanted to take out, since the first meeting would stop at 10:00. I don't wanna be in the middle of a major discussion, and it's five minutes till 10:00, good night, everybody. I don't wanna do that, I've been here too many times when something very important needs an extra 25 minutes to clarify that the, and it's 10:00 to me, and I agree also that maybe the staff wouldn't wanna give up two nights a month, they would, for something that wasn't finished. If we could finish it by 11:00, which the mayor's doing a great job of trying...
Right, and, and, and just, and for...
To get it to be done. For clarifications, I've never said I want two meetings a month. What I have said is, I have in my calendar for always, since I've been a commissioner, I have that second date in my calendar, so I know not to plan something for that second.
Okay, now you, you had a point, Madam...
One, one last...
No, I mean...
Oh, oh, you go ahead.
Not, not supporting you is the reason was, that we do have the second date in the calendar already. Yes. And, and we haven't needed it, because the meetings have ended since Michael's been here.
But we haven't had a lot of the discussion items being made. We had skipped over a lot of items.
But then we have the ability to, to require that second meeting.
If we continue this conversation, we're not gonna get to the other items, so, yeah, let's...
Appointments, Madam Clerk?
Item 13.1, reappointing Mark Stainville to the planning and zoning...
Can we do all the appointments that we have, like, in a...
So moved.
I, I second, Madam, Madam Clerk.
All in favor?
There's one that the clerk's...
Yes, 13.4.
13.4, yes.
All in favor?
Aye.
Now, wait a minute, I have a question.
Wait, wait, I'm sorry, Commissioner, Commissioner Smith, sorry.
Uh, did we, one of them was pulled, Franciska, was she pulled Taylor, Franciska Taylor? 13.4 was pulled.
Commissioner...
Okay, thank you, because I have no background, we're gonna get background, correct? Okay, I'm an aye.
All, all in favor say aye?
Aye.
All right, passing that, now we're going into...
Discussion.
Items, 15.1, Commissioner Sue.
Okay, so...
Excuse me, after her, I, after this, can we get to the, to the recruitment, please? Thank you.
Okay. All right, so, I'm gonna read this, because it's a little lengthy. So this is regarding the City Attorney's Office, Greenspoon Martyr, LLP. Before this commission approved the CAO's contract, I gave the benefit of the doubt, understanding that leadership transitions take time. But it has now been over, it's been over a year and a half, and by this point, I trust that he had every opportunity to fully settle into his role. I wanted to raise several concerns based on my review from the April 16th, 2016, I mean, sorry, 2024. I wanna also distribute this, so that you could have a copy of it as well. This was the, this was the interview that was done by most of the commissioners in this, please take one, pass it down.
To clarify, you said you were part of that discussion when you hired the CEO, you were not on the commission?
I was not on the commission.
But you said, you stated that, when you talked about the contract, you stated...
No, I said, raise several concerns based on my review of April 16th, yes. Okay. All right, so, if you see, there are certain highlights there, that spoke about the commitment of being here. I believe Commissioner Smucker, I mean Commissioner Smith, mentioned that she would like to see him here five days. He did mention that he could be here seven days, although Saturdays and Sundays, nobody's gonna be here. So, that's exhibit one, the requirements. I know Commissioner Smith, I had it transcribed, you can reference back to that meeting for accuracy. My second portion is the actual, now, because this was actually scheduled to have, to be, to be, you know, to be heard on a different date, but I have this also. Here are the FOBs entering and exiting the building for Attorney Johnson and Attorney Geller for May to mid-August, please pass that down for me. Oh, sorry, you, you know what, you take one of this and one of that. So you could see the actual frequency of the attorney being present in our city. So, so, commitment on the job. There are growing concerns about the CAO's presence, responsiveness, follow-through on city matters. Presence and accessibility during the meeting, a commissioner asked, is there somebody there, how many days, referring to the City Attorney's Office presence in City Hall. I've also heard from staff and residents that their emails and calls have gone unanswered for months. For a position of this importance, that level of unresponsiveness is unacceptable. On-site support, the city attorney or a representative from the firm should be consistently available to support staff and departments. Now, if you read in that transcript, the city attorney said that he has, or Greenspoon Martyr has 250 attorneys... or Greenspoon Martyr has 250 attorneys, and double that for support staff. Now, we've seen one attorney recently, which is Mr. Armon Johnson. Prior to this, we saw a young gentleman who would attend meetings, but never able to answer any questions without consulting the attorney himself. I don't remember his name, but anyway, the timeliness of contracts and resolutions. Several items have faced delays over six months or more. Such, such things as water rates, spray point, or even the ordinance that we have all voted on today for the owner-tenant, which was approved in the first reading in April, but has yet to, like, it just came to a second reading today, which is October. That is literally six months. Blockage of administrative delays. Staff have expressed its frustration over what appears to be internal blockage, legal bottlenecks that uphold, that hold up otherwise routine administrative sections, actions, and vendor approvals. The slow operations increase costs negatively impact service deliveries to residents. Sound legal advice, I'm just going to briefly go over this. I think that during the ProKel bidding that we did the five-year, we did the 90-day extension into the five-year, I believe that the attorney could have given us better advice by saying that we should have done a bid waiver prior to agreeing to the five-year versus doing the reverse. I think that, like, professional conduct. I have had other attorneys that have been doing business with us from developers mention to me personally that it is so unprofessional to see him fall asleep. And I said that, well, you know, he did fall asleep because he is not well. And they said, well, you know, that's something that we should also address. Politically charged remarks is what I personally find a little bit worrisome. I remember in the March meeting when we were talking about homelessness and getting rid of homelessness that the state statute passed. The attorney mentioned that the governor was draconian. I think like, that is not appropriate for a city attorney to mention about the governor of the state of Florida in our commission meeting. There have been multiple requests. Also, if you notice, every single, this is the first month that I've seen the city attorney report have an item in it, usually it's always none. I personally have requested a report of what the attorney had settled on, what cases and what deal, what settlements and what cases have the attorney has been working on or have completed. I'd like to see what has been settled on, what was, you know, in litigation, et cetera, et cetera. I had requested that in May. I asked for a 30-day turnaround time, he said, no, I can't do it in that time. Two months later, still nothing, and now it has been five months and I still don't have that report. Legislative backlog, oversight and influence. There have been repeated issues of timeliness and organization of agenda materials. Key items often face month-long delays. Departments submitting them well in advance. This legislative backlog slowed down city operations and creates unnecessary frustration for staff and vendors. This is also something that I, the reason why I'm proposing the two-month, I mean twice-a-month meeting is also having to do with, I think staff would appreciate us moving legislation forward because there's so much backlog that they really want to have us like, you know, be a little, really support him. So what I'm trying to do as a body, as a commission, is to see how can we hold him accountable and have him be attentive to our city business. I have had, I've heard staff having to chase the attorney around to find him whenever he attends a meeting to get him to sign, to sign things, so that their, you know, their legal paperwork could move forward. So this is, to me, it's not acceptable, so I'd like to, I'd like to propose preliminarily, if anybody would like to add anything, and I'm, it's up for discussion. I think we like to revise the contract to see that a reappointment is required annually. Ensure that the city has the, has an attorney physically on-site to support staff and departments. I think, conduct a formal performance review, establishing clear benchmarks and deliverables for Greenspoon Martyr to meet. That's, those are my three preliminary proposals for the attorney. I'm, I'm willing to discuss anything you have any questions on in the documents I support, I sent over.
As a lawyer-
By the way, Mr. Johnson told me to second.
Yes, and I've seen Mr. Johnson and as well as yourself here, to the attorney. As a, you know, as an attorney myself, and the fact of that, you know, this job is really a 24-hour job and I, and I have my own practice or whatever, but I wouldn't do your job to save my life, to be quite frank, because you deal with not just the seven of us, but staff in that sense. Yes, Greenspoon Martyr, because I've talked to other people at Greenspoon Martyr as well, and that ability is there because, you know, we're, there's a lot of issues and we have to get a couple, to a couple of them this evening, by the way. One big one, we have to get two. But I know the work product that we have received, and there's been plenty of times I've called my city attorney and I said, I need this issue, and to the point that I'm, I'm trying to make this a point and point, where he clarifies, even though I'm as, I wouldn't say as knowledgeable as he is with the law because he's like 50 years in it, it's, he brings a lot of clarity. And he's been able to assist us on a lot of big issues, one being what happened with that veto on various aspects that I can't go into, would like to go into detail now. But I understand what he represents as well as Greenspoon Martyr. If I can't read, if I'm unable to reach him, which is not that often, I do reach out to Ahmad and, and-
Mr. Mayor, are you saying that the veto had to do with the-
No, what I'm saying is that he assisted in that, because I was part of that. Because I've, I've gone to Tallahassee several times. I've gone to the county commission. No, I have to make a mistake on it, especially how sensitive of a time we are in. We're getting hit by not just the state, but also the county, because the state has a lot of preemptive issues that could affect us as well, that's been creeping. Taxes, and not, not just that, stuff that deals with our own residents, as it slowly creeps, creeps up. Understand, there's a lot of things out there that are being put at bay, and I've seen them. And I, and it's not just my legislation not moving forward or whatever, because there's a couple pieces of legislation that I've wanted, but because of the timeliness of what's pertinent, it hasn't gotten to this, it hasn't gotten the priority, because other things had to. So from my experience, I, like, I respect the time, I respect his, his background, I respect the connections that he does have, and I just wanted to give him that, give him that confidence that I know he's doing the best job he can. Now, at the end of the day, like, our resources are costing the taxpayer resources, and I understand the reservation he has and not giving a full-blown no. Because I've seen how other attorneys, and we've had bad attorneys that have been here, that have, you know, put us on some precarious situations just because they wanted a piece. I just want us to understand that, and I will go with the vice mayor, then you Commissioner Chernoff, and then you Commissioner Flor-
Just want to clarify something really quickly. This calendar that I created, this is from every single door, okay, in the city, including the city attorney's office door, the back door, the elevator, both elevators, all of that compiled into this calendar. So it's not one particular door or that I am focusing on and they entered another door. This is it, like, all of it. I had asked IT for this, and they only have a record of three months. So these are the three months that I got, and this is what we have. So I am not, I, I believe that this is the complete version. We could also do another one, which is the camera in the back that shows the cars that are parked in the parking lot. But I, I'm pretty, I'm pretty sure, even if we add another 25%, we are nowhere near five days a week, okay? And I get it, the job is hard, and guess what? He, with all that experience, is going through, you know, what he, what he knows, we need to know. And we have staff depending on that to move forward. Okay, now, before I do my last one, I'm going to let the-
Vice, no, it's Vice, Vice Mayor, and then Commissioner Trump.
And then Commissioner Flor, Floramon, Smackler, and then Smith.
Thank you so much, Mr. Mayor. I think that from my seat, I can see both sides of the coin, and my comments is going, are going to be geared towards all charter officers. Anyone that's working for the city of North Miami Beach, we all have to give more. We're cutting corners, every, every corner. We're cutting corners, and it shows, and it shows. And that's the disappointing part, and I can attest that whenever I've called the attorney, if he hasn't been able to call me back, he, he always finds a way to call me back. But I've also worked in the city where there's an in-house attorney, and there's associates there, and there's always someone there. So we've made the decision to have a contract, and so that yields to, there are going to be variations to that. But what I do understand is that we need more, and, and we need more from everyone, all across the board, so that the city can actually move forward, because legal, you, you touch every department, from police to water, city manager's office, there's a lot of pressing issues, and they're compounding at a very rapid rate. Now, to the mayor's point, we don't see all the behind-the-scenes of what you do. But that doesn't, that doesn't merit the fact that when we do need someone present, sometimes that person isn't there. So that's why there needs to be some adjustments made. And, you know, we can't agree to a contract and there's variations. Even though life happens, you know, there were promises made when we approved the contract. So in our fairness, you know, we have to have an objective approach to how we look at this contract, and still subjective in saying, okay, there's going to be fires. But if, if any individual here is unsatisfied, it's valid reason to actually look at it and say, how can we improve? And I think that's what we're all looking for. And even to the mayor's point, there's, I didn't go to Tallahassee, because I didn't want to go into that fire. But, you know, the mayor went into the fire, right?
That's the job.
And so what I'm saying is, each of us individually does our part. And others, I'm just speaking to your point, I'm just speaking to you. But it was also referenced that you don't speak for the entire commission. So even in you showing up, I might have something to say that you don't take into consideration because you don't know, and we have sunshine, you know, sunshine restrictions. So in our individual opportunity autonomy to do our work, it still has to be a collective approach. You know, and I think that's, that's going to be my message tonight, because, yeah, there has been levels of unsatisfaction, but then there's been times where I understand that I don't have the legal mind to make certain decisions, so I have to yield to you. But we have, everyone has to do more. It's just unfair to the bottom line of this city, and every, every department has to do more. City manager's office, finance, clerk's office, we all have to step it up. So I do support what Commissioner Sue is saying. I don't want to be on surveillance, Commissioner Sue.
Hey, she, she might.
Because, you know, next month might be my, my calendar. But in all fairness, this is a very stressful job, so we need more, we need more.
Commissioner Chernoff.
Thank you. Lynn, I appreciate you bringing this forward. Anybody on our commission that feels that they're not getting what they should out of the attorney should bring it forward, and we should have a mechanism where we assess the attorney, we assess the clerk, we assess the manager, and we don't have that anywhere. So I think we need to think about that, how are we going to do that in the future? But I personally, when I call him, he answers. When I call him on the weekend, he answers. When I call him at night, he answers. So, you know, it may be three hours later that he answers, but he, you know, he always gets back to me. So from my seat, I get answers from when I need the attorney, but if you're not, then that's a problem. And we need to address how we can make it better.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So, you know, in listening to Commissioner Sue, I think that there are some valid points that she has made as far as key performance indicators that we need in the attorney's office, in any, in any office, right? I, I respect Mr. Geller and his team. I respect the number of years and expertise that they bring to the table. He's always responsive when I, when I make a phone call, so I really appreciate that. And, you know, but I understand that we're, we don't all have the same demands, we don't all have the same, you know, legislation pending and those types of things. So it's important that we all, you know, get heard. So in, in that sense, I think that there needs to be some KPIs that are put in place in addition to whatever's already listed in your contract that can kind of, you know, put us in a position to see our successes and also look at places that we can improve. So, and as Commissioner Chernoff said, I don't think it's just the city attorney office. I think it's, it's, it's the, it's just the entirety of how we manage here that, that we need to take a look at. And so I'm looking to see what we can do to, to, to fix that. Thank you.
All right, thank you. So when I came in today, which was through the employee elevator, I believe, Jay, Jade scanned his, his key fob. Then when I went up to the fourth floor to go to the commissioners' offices, Commissioner Suzay Nicholas scanned the key fob, so I'm not even here today, like- Yeah, I'm not here, so I'm leaving, I'm leaving. And when I leave today, there's no, I'm, I'm, probably go down the stairs or go down the elevator, there's no, you know, of course, I'm here, but there's no exit showing that I've left. So coming and going, sometimes that's, that's a hard one with the key fob, especially when you're piggybacking on, on someone else's entrance. The other thing is, I, when, when Commissioner, Mayor Joseph, Commissioner Smith and I went to the county last month to speak on a Monday morning, that Sunday evening, I spent at least an hour speaking to you and to Kendall Coffee on the phone. And I'm, I'm okay with that, I really don't need to, the phone works for me perfectly. I can, last week, we spoke on the phone, I think there was another 30 minutes. That's, I'm, I'm okay with that, you know, I, I don't have a problem reaching you. And, and another thing I wanted to say was just talking to someone who got a job, I believe it's an international law firm, they're, they're definitely national, I believe they're, they're everywhere. And I'm, I'm like, okay, where's your office? And he's like, I'm working out of the house. I'm like, okay, that's cool, like, you know, do you know anybody, like, have you seen them? Like, where's the office? He's like, I have no idea where the office is. There is no office. They, yeah, he, he is literally working out of the house. There is no office, and this is a, a super, super big company. So it's, it's a thing now, so, you know, just because someone is not in their, on their desk 24/7 doesn't mean that they're not at home working or on the phone talking or, or somewhere emailing, you know, I can be somewhere and, and I'm business at the same time. And, and that's really all I just wanted to say, thank you.
You know, I want to say a few things. Number one, it makes sense to have an annual review, but thinking about hiring a manager, and especially when your desire was to go out of state, how many people would want to move their family here knowing that they may only have a one-year job? I mean, I, I don't know if it's feasible. I feel, I feel heartsick, to tell you the truth, Commissioner Sue, that there hasn't been a relationship that should be as good as it should be when you're a commissioner with any one of the charter officers. But I think Vice Mayor said it the best. We have to do better. If the contract calls for five days a week that you're going to be here, then five days a week, you have a huge 250, I just read, 250 employees. So five days a week, I don't happen to agree with Commissioner Smackler. Not that people don't work out of their home, they certainly work out of their home. But a city attorney, I feel, has a big, 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 two, 450 employees, an agenda, legal counsel, how could that be? First place, I'm spoiled. I've been here 17 years and I'll bet just 12 of them, he's shaking his head, the attorney, if you don't see him. I'm spoiled, 12 of them, 14 of them, we had in-house attorneys. We didn't have a in-house attorney, we had seven at one time. We had three, no, three attorneys and the paralegal and the assistant, and I'm very spoiled. But I don't have to be spoiled anymore, but I do have to have responsibility in that department. I think it's wise to have this discussion, and I thank you for bringing it up, because we're in the process of hiring a new manager, and we need the ship to be heading in the right direction, for sure. We don't need a manager coming in without responsibility, not only to the charter offices, but to the department- but to the department heads. So I think that this discussion is important, and I think we need to get back to the contract and back to what we consider to be the most viable part of the city, to have good legal counsel, which the brain of the attorney that we have now, personality, whether you feel that he could be a good friend or whether you feel that you only want to see him at the meetings, has nothing to do with his capabilities as an attorney. When he was hired, I heard from the state league of cities, I heard from the city league of cities, I heard from competitors of the kind of legal knowledge we have just hired. So I just think that we have to do better. And I agree wholeheartedly. Well said, Vice Mayor. Every department has to do better. And then I'll get my clean city.
So I can finish up? Because we have Jacob here, and then we have a legal matter that we have to get to. To your point, Vice Mayor, everybody has to do better on, from the charter officer standpoint. But also, I want us to also understand, because, you know, these individuals do have lives. They take a lot of brunt from each one of us through phone calls, text messages, emails. And we just have to be cognizant of those facts. They don't live in a vacuum. And I just want us to know that. Like, a lot of times, you know, one of the reasons, and he said it, that we, you know, the former manager left was because there was a lot of stuff going on. And it affected his family, his kids. And I understand that. I respect that. And a lot of people, it's hard, it's hard to try to comprehend that. But like, we're not, you know, robots. People are not robots. People are live, and they, and when we have, like, you know, bad days, and we just want to push our legislation, yeah, we're passionate, we want to do stuff for our community. At the end of the day, that communicating, communicating that desire can come off as very demeaning. And put people in a certain way that it reduces their, I wouldn't say their incentive, but their spirit. And that goes, and I've heard it through a bunch of department heads, that they want to please us so badly, but they are not miracle workers. And those messages that we get, that they get through emails or through the conversation that they have verbally, they don't go away after we walk away. We might feel good that we released it, but they take it home. Just like I take home the comments that particularly people come here, and they think I just, it just rolls off of me. I go home. I go home. It bothers me. But at the same time, I'm here for a job. I signed up for that job. I'm not saying that he didn't sign up, or any one of these charter officers didn't sign up for that job. But also, I'm not, I'm cognizant of the fact that they're people. And if we want to hire good people, depending on how we move forward on this next legislation, we have to communicate to whoever we hire that we're going to give them a fair shot. And not just put a gun to their heads when they like, when they loot, when they mess up on one item or two items or whatever. Because, I mean, it just creates that same type of insanity ploy that this city, for a long time, has had. Because like, a lot of our projects that we want to have or want to move forward, a lot of the times, they don't go into fruition because people leave. You know, we've had a lot of people leave that are subordinate because they just feel the uncertainty. And we have to have some type of stability for people. We want them to feel that they want to be a part of us. I was, I never, I was...
No, I'm not talking to you.
I know, no, he knows I love him, that guy. Look, we have 10:31. We have another item. I know Jacob's here, we got to move on that. City Attorney, if you can wrap it up so we can go to Jacob. Please, be brief, because we need to go to Jacob. Thank you.
Yes, sir.
We need to go to Jacob.
I do want to say a couple of things. When I took this job, I made a commitment. And I'm looking right now, especially at Commissioner Smith. I said that this was going to be my number one priority. And I've made it that. I have put this city above all else professionally. Excuse me, sir. Thank you. But that's rude.
I'm reading here.
Civility, Mr. Speaker. I'm going.
I'm reading here. I'm reading here. I didn't look at them. I'm reading.
All right, continue, City Attorney.
I've kept that commitment. And I don't think there's a member of this commission that can say that they've tried to reach me, and I've not responded to them. And that's not business hours. I don't have a concept of business hours. When I say I've made it number one, I want to be clear. I mean professionally, no, it does not rank above my family. But professionally, I put this ahead of everything else. And I know that there's at least one member of the commission that's not fond of me. But I want to be very clear that I have professional respect for the office. And I have professional respect for the actions of the voters of this city. And they've chosen to place each of you there. And professionalism is extremely important to me. And I have attempted, I understand that there's some times, you've raised some stuff in writing. I know what you sent recently. I referred to what the clerk's duties were, and I was sure, I was certainly aware of that response and consulted on it. But there is no member of this commission that I do not respect professionally. I respect the offices that you hold. And I've always made it my business, nights or weekends or whenever, to respond. And by the way, not just phone calls, Teams meetings, Zoom meetings.
Lunch meetings.
I do have to say one other thing. And that's, I am not a perfect person, and I do not run a perfect organization. And I don't pretend that we're perfect. And are there things that we can do better? As was said by the Vice Mayor, yes. I think that's true of everyone. I've stepped into some gaps, a lot of the things I do, you don't know or don't see, because I don't make it my business to campaign about that. I will tell you that this fob thing is just not accurate. It's just not. But I'm happy to see what we can do to do better. We certainly respect that. I have to say, though, on one particular item, I've made it my business to give this commission the best possible legal advice. And I think I've done so. And the ProKell issue, as it turned out, my advice was correct. We got an inquiry, we responded. In fact, when something happened very unexpected from the DAIS, that was not what we were expecting or planning when we went back, although I know it didn't make everyone on the DAIS happy, we went back and insisted that there was another vote to be sure that we had complied with our own code and with the law. And as was developed in several meetings, the mayor was in on, but maybe not the rest of the commission, that advice, I'm confident, was the correct legal advice and saved us from what could have been a problem. So I stand on the fact that we give you good advice. We do it constantly. We do it all the time. I'm certainly happy to be held accountable, PKI, or KPI.
KPI.
And with that said, we're happy to try to up our game. But I am proud of the work that we have done for this city. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Jacob, please come up. We got to do this, please. No.
I need to, I would like to speak, because...
You haven't been recognized.
I would like to be recognized, Mr. Mayor.
Not now. Jacob, please, come on up. Thank you.
Rude business is when you don't come to work to do your work. That's rude. Taking money that you don't work.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor and Commissioner. Jacob Newman, interim HR Director. So we recently reposted...
I believe my...
Oh, yes, yes, Commissioner.
I'm sorry, I'm sorry that I interrupted you, but I believe we have to vote.
Commissioner, you indicated that you wanted to move to reconsider.
Yes, I did.
The headhunter...
Thank you.
So let her do that first, and then we'll get...
So what's your motion? Well, you want to reconsider.
I want to reconsider the vote. There was a majority vote to go on a nationwide search, which...
With an executive search.
Executive search with a headhunter. And a professional. And I have done a lot of research on that. I remembered when I read my packet of the top few people, that there are quite a few from out of state. So I asked, I met with Human Resource, and I asked questions that gave me answers. We had 92 applications. 25 were out of state. 27% were, over a quarter, were from out of state, without a headhunter. A headhunter, from what I've questioned a few people that have used them, doesn't do more than what we've done. We have now spent an extra $600. And from that, that is the main source, talking to three different municipalities, that's the main source anybody looking to be a manager goes to. We opened it up again for a term. And in doing that, we got 19 responses. Eight of them from out of state. We haven't hired a headhunter yet. When you look at the numbers that's going to be presented tonight, when you talk about $28,002, $34,000, without paying for their travel, without paying for their expenses, and 12 weeks to 14 weeks minimum, one is 12, the other two are 14 weeks. Think about what we're doing. We have national exposure with the only one, the number one, that everybody that's looking for a job as a manager goes to. We have, no, we have an interim manager with a budget that needs correction, with the holidays coming up, with an election year coming up. And we're talking about four months. When you think about it, you're talking three months for them to work. Probably five months. After they work, we have to review it. We have to interview. We have to get a contract signed. We have to negotiate it. Oh, wait, Commissioner Chernoff. You're listening while you're talking? That's so perfect. I'm going to learn how to do that myself. Just saying. This is so important. This is $34,000 that makes up for the money that you want to give instead of $250 to $300. This makes up, makes such sense to me. Number one, it's not what you know, it's who you know. We all know that. I mean, it's really who you know. We have a CRA that needs county attention to get it passed. We have a state that may be coming down on us to check our budget and how we're spending the money. We have a water issue that I'm not discussing further, but we need the support of Dade County. We're going to bring somebody from out of state. If that's the best candidate of the 92 people, let's bring them in and interview them. But do you really think a headhunter is going to find a better candidate when they don't know us? They don't even know us. They don't know our city. They're going to spend months learning us? They're going to find out about the department heads? They're going to bring in their own people and our people that have worked so hard are in jeopardy of losing their job? What are we doing? I want to bring this back for a vote. I make a motion that we revote and we take away from going to a headhunter.
Commissioner Smith, you would have to be the prevailing party in order to bring back the vote. But I believe you voted against it.
No, I asked the clerk. It was a 50, I said 50/50 vote.
Was it? No.
I want, no, I said I wanted to give a 50 yes and 50 no, and I think I voted yes to support you.
I think you voted no.
I asked the clerk if I voted on the winning side.
Yeah, you voted no. She voted no. And Commissioner Smucker voted no. Only four of us voted yes.
From my understanding, I mean, it doesn't, well, just to be clear, it doesn't change, whatever Jacob presents.
But I would like clarification from the clerk. But I would like clarification from the clerk. How did Commissioner Smith vote?
Commissioner Smith was on the prevailing side. The minutes have not been finalized yet.
On the prevailing side.
But she was.
But I'm saying, like, it doesn't change.
But if she's on the prevailing side, then she's able to do it.
And, and, listen, I'm happy to listen to his, you want to hear how it's going to be $34,000 and $30,000? You want to hear how it takes 12 months before? I made a very brief, what it took me a couple of days.
Well, I second her motion.
Happy to hear it.
I'm seconding your motion.
You're seconding my motion to bring it back?
Yes.
So, sir, those efforts to redouble our recruitment efforts, to cast a wider net at a potentially, up to a higher salary of $300,000, have resulted already in additional 19 candidates. We've utilized in-state resources like the Florida City and County Managers Association, Florida League of Cities. And then we also extended those to the ICMA, which is the premier municipal organization for city and county managers, including targeted advertising, social media, and additional professional groups within their reach. We also sought proposals from some firms that work here in the state of Florida for professional search services. Reached out to them and directly discussed what our efforts have been, what we are looking for, you know, through the DAIS, and sought proposals. We had three that submitted, one that declined to do so, and one that was unresponsive. So those three firms, Colin Beisinger, Strategic Government Resources, and MGT, have all provided their proposals, varying in length of approximately 12 to 14 weeks, and fees ranging from $28,000 to $34,000 in the ballpark of our discussion of approximately $30,000 for these services. What, we were unable to see is much shrinking in that timeline, where we've already recruited candidates, accepting them through our government jobs portal, which again is also an advertising source for the posting. So, you know, if the desire is to have as quick of a process as possible, it's a little difficult to do so without them providing their full breadth of services, that is engagement with stakeholders, specifically the elected officials.
So they would meet with each one of us and to...
Yes, sir. So they would look to meet with you individually, privately, share any of your preferences for what the city needs, what the residents, what you as leaders are looking for regarding, you know, personality, you know, fit, culture, vision, prior experiences, so that they can provide a more customized service and deliver you, you know, a slate of candidates that are, you know, competitive. As it is now, you know, through an internal process, you know, we attempt to not filter that information, but organize it. So there are services that they would provide that are more specialized, more experienced, and perhaps, from some perspectives, neutral in their efforts to, you know, ensure that we get the best leader for the city for the long term that is to the body's liking.
Mr. Mayor? Jacob, do you give them our numbers?
I have not. But they would be reaching out to you directly if we engage with one of these firms, you know, at the direction of the commission or through the city manager. They would be contacting, working with you directly.
Okay.
All along the way, from initial development of that candidate profile to, you know, one-on-one interviews, scheduling. You know, it is a very personalized process. This is what they do day in and day out. They have networks of individuals that may not be actively seeking. You know, so they have a deep rolodex of candidates. There are certainly things that they can do that through in-house recruitment we cannot. But, you know, it comes at a cost and a timeframe.
Thank you. Commissioner?
Okay, so what kind of things can they do at a cost? And when you say $28,000, $34,000, does that include their expenses?
In most instances, they're fairly comprehensive in the total costs, where we do bring in candidates, and we are to sponsor them. It's some suggestion to bring in spouses, to make sure that the individuals that are looking to relocate to the area are desiring of, you know, the community and relocation. So there can be costs that are borne by us for sponsoring travel, lodging. In terms of the firm's costs, they're typically inclusive of a set amount of advertisement. And it may include their travel if that is, the proposals varied, whether it included onsite visits, whether it was voluntary... visits, whether it was voluntary or discretionary.
Who determines that? Who determines if they want to travel to, to go see a candidate in California?
They, they would not be traveling to the candidate, it would be whether you sought to have that recruiter come here to facilitate, you know, in-person interviews.
So the recruiters are not local, the three recruiters?
They are, are not, they, they may have resources here in the state, but these are firms that operate throughout the country.
And what did you do that was new, that gave the wide web over this whole process?
The, the ICMA outreach.
Commissioner Sue, I said half no and half yes on that vote, because I, my yes was because I wanted to support your four months of talking about this, so if you wouldn't mind not talking while I'm trying to get all my details, I would appreciate it back from you, thank you.
So in our initial efforts, there was a stated desire for a candidate with state of Florida experience, so our recruitment was focused on getting that message here within the state through the, the re-advertising through ICMA. It ensures that we do broadly get that message out across the country and internationally for the opportunity. So it does have a very wide reach, and again, with, within their advertisement, we selected a couple additional sources to make sure that we were using every opportunity to...
So that we've already done.
Social media.
We've already done all that?
Yes, ma'am.
Wide web. And, and I'm just trying to think with a headhunter, with the 92 candidates, how many additional candidates can they find that haven't applied? That, that's my question, because I don't want to reel the fishing rod out and try to just bring somebody in to have a new name, a new, new personality. These are people that applied because they wanted to be, have a management position. A headhunter needs to bring you people. So are, are they gonna recruit? This is a big question, and I, when you're voting, I want to also remind everybody the time element here. You know, our manager, we know is doing the best job he can do, but his hands are tied. How much can he move forward when we're gonna have a new manager in a couple of months? We mentioned it tonight on some of the things we were voting for, that a new manager's gonna come in and we're gonna set up programs that's gonna be changed. I just see, I see now, having done the study, getting the numbers, going to his office, speaking to other people that have used headhunters, I think we're far past that process. We have done what we did, and then we widened it to where everybody said that you are now in the majority of everybody that's looking for a job would be in. I just find that we need to take a vote about spending this money on something that doesn't... What's the result? What do you think, you're gonna get a, a personality here that we all like the personality? He's gung ho, but is he gonna do the legislation locally with the people and fit into the, to the establishment that we need here in North Miami Beach? I find it to be something, the more I studied, I gave the support, the more I recognized it needed to be brought back, and I hope it'll give the support of four votes to say no, let's not spend the money on something, let's not take five more months to find a, a manager to run our city. That's my hope.
All right.
And one more thing, Commissioner, before you start, we had a process and four of you didn't even answer the process. How discern, how discerning is that?
Yep.
As a fellow commissioner on vacation, stopping everything to reread that to get my deadline, how discerning is that? If you really cared about a headhunter, 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 why didn't you just give your three names and say, these are the three best out of the lot, but we need more? Just to start the process. I mean, that's my, I have a lot of issues with that as well, thank you very much.
I agree with you, Commissioner Smith, 100%. You know, they, they want a headhunter, but they couldn't, they couldn't even provide because they didn't know, did they know that it was gonna pass, that we were going to get a headhunter? Without knowing that it was gonna pass, they still did not provide the three names. But, you know what, I was, I became a popular girl recently when we all decide, well, not me, by the way, decided to raise the, the manager's salary up to $300,000. I became so popular, I started getting phone calls from people. And, listen, instead of getting a, a headhunter and paying the $30,000, let's, let's raise their salary another 5,000, and in 10 years, we'll, we'll make up that 30,000. At least it'll be put to good use. You know, we, Commissioner Jay spoke of this interim, Chernoff, excuse me, spoke of this, this title, the interim. Well, you know, I don't, I don't agree that it's for the interim manager to, for any interim manager, to be giving, you know, giving them the job. They should stay interim until we have a permanent manager. But here's the thing, what are we looking at now, February? So, I'm, I'm, you know, you all want to, you're all like so concerned, but have you spoken to the manager, to Andy, to our manager Plaken? Is, is he staying till February in this position? I don't think so. So what are we gonna have, an interim interim manager? Oh, that looks really good, that looks great. People are really gonna want to run and, 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 and come and, and work here because we have an interim interim manager. You know, we, we, we need to settle down, we need to just hire someone, we don't need to spend the 30,000, let's put it towards their salary, let's raise it 5,000, not that I'm agreeing with myself, but raise it $5,000 more, and in 10 years, you've paid up those $30,000 instead of giving it to somebody who's not gonna bring anybody much better than what we already have here, because trust me, now that it went up to $300,000, people are applying. And I know that it's up to $300,000, but once you say up to $300,000, it means $300,000. And you know what? We can pick someone, we can negotiate with them, and then, you know what they can say to us? Oh, I changed my mind, I don't want this job. So maybe it won't be February, well, maybe it'll be February 2027, who knows? That's it.
Commissioner Sue?
Oh. Okay, so, caught me off guard. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I know we're complaining about this whole 34, $35,000. We just awarded a former city manager $75,000 as a contractor who hasn't showed up to the city, and so basically, we paid him $300,000.
He did work for that.
So, I'm sorry, I'm speaking. Thank you. So, so what I'm saying is like us, you know, we're, we're complaining about this, and I think the major point about this whole getting a headhunter is to have an unbiased opinion. Somebody who is, who knows enough about Miami-Dade County, who knows enough about Florida to know what candidate would be good, filter out the candidate to a final three, and then come to the, come to us with the final three that we can choose. Versus us handpicking who we want, not considering that person to have the credentials and the ability to do what is wanted and needed in our city, because we like that person, because we know them. Now, I mean, I don't know, I don't know about all these connections, right? But I mean, I'd like to ask the city attorney, why is it that he didn't represent us and we had to go to another law firm to have them represent us at the county for the ordinance? There is no reason why he couldn't do that, and he has so much of his mouth and, why are we bothering to like have that person know all these people and be this and that? And then when they have a conflict of interest perhaps, then they would back out and we wouldn't have, we wouldn't use their abilities anyway. So that's my, that's my take on it, and I think like, if we're looking at this as a transparency issue, right? We can choose a couple of candidates that we can put in the mix, have them, excuse me, have them finalize their, their, you know, top three out of our pool. Now, Commissioner Smith, you made it sound like, like all of a sudden 92 candidates were here, right? Actually, there were 70, what was the initial number, 78?
Um, I thought there's 74, I thought.
74, right? And then after we advertised and we increased the amount of money, you know, all that, like Commissioner Smucker said, we became more popular, more people applied, right? I had some former city man, deputy city manager give me a call as well. So this is, you know, it's all, it all adds up together, right? Like people would see that the stress level in the city requires certain things, so, you know, they felt like maybe this is worth it for them.
Vice Mayor?
But my point is, sorry, just to conclude, my point is, we need an unbiased opinion who will bring something, something to the table that we have not seen. I think that this is, none of us own a company that has a budget, I, I assume, none of us own a company that has a budget of 220 million, okay? We don't have a company with a budget of 220 million, so with that said, we don't know what kind of qualities that, that position really needs. So anyway, okay, I'm done, thank you.
Vice Mayor?
Thank you. So I, I know I had a conversation with the manager and Jacob at one point about what options do we have if we want to reopen it, and I was told, hey, it has to be a decision that everyone has to make together, that no one commissioner can say, okay, they're not satisfied with the, with the pool. So that was a conversation that I had, right? To be fully transparent, a few weeks back. In addition to that, I'm looking at our social media, I'm looking at LinkedIn, I don't see anything about the job posting.
Yes, ma'am, it was, I shared through the city's LinkedIn page.
I was just looking at it, I don't see it, maybe I'm not looking in the right place, but most cities don't have their own water plant, and you're expecting somebody to come in at 200,000 to do that, to do that type of work? You know, we have to be reasonable. And that even led me to think, how much does our chief get paid? You know, because when you think about safety and security, now I'm thinking if the, if the manager gets paid up to 300,000, other positions are very viable, and they put a lot on the line to actually produce an outcome. So let's, let's be flexible in, in our thinking, I know most of us don't work a nine to five, but 13 departments? Let's be real, let's be real, folks. So I, I just want to put that out there, I'm not stuck to the idea of having a headhunter, but if we're saying that we're using all the methods and platforms, let's actually prove that, right? And, and, because I'm looking at the page, I don't see it, I'm looking at the Instagram, it's, it's far down, so, you know, that's my two cents.
Commissioner Chernoff, then, Commissioner Forman. I was against it a week ago, whenever we both discussed it, and the reason being is I'm so impressed with the number that we've received, okay? I was, two years ago, when we put an ad out there, we only got three applications. Now we got 74 and 90.
92.
Huh?
92.
Not, well, no, now.
Nine, well, okay.
Okay, well, I'm, I'm just saying now. Okay, so before three, now we have 92. I think that's a pretty broad spectrum of people that are in there, considering 12 or however many you said was out of state already, what, what more are we gonna get by opening it up? And we voted for it, and we opened it up.
It's opened up to the 21st.
Yeah, it's opened up till the 21st, and we discussed that evening, that, that evening we did discuss that hiring a headhunter wouldn't be able to work within our timeframe. We said it last meeting, so we already said that, because they're gonna want to do more groundwork, meeting us, knowing what we want, so on and so forth. So I think that going out and spending money on something that we already have great applicants, I think we need to not pay for a headhunter.
I just have a question before I go to Commissioner Forman. Is there, we gave a parameter for them to work under, right? Are you saying they can't work under those parameters? Like we said, hey, we want it to be done by the 21st, and we want to make a decision relatively sooner rather than later, like it's about, is it about making ourselves available for them to do the job?
Certainly times, you know, the holidays, the process that they need to take.
I mean, it's, it's a priority for all of us.
Take, so, you know, I, I stressed in my discussions with them, the, the consideration for whatever they could do to provide a, an abbreviated completion to this process, that it was, you know, we were desiring to end and, and have someone in place as soon as possible, and if there were any aspects of their full-service recruitment that could be shortened or, or removed, we were interested in that. You know, there was certainly appreciation of it, but the proposals are, are a little more to their stock services, and I didn't get any engagement in, you know, what they would be willing to forego. I believe that that's due to their professionalism, the, the standard that they wish to provide, and that's, some of these are integral. The, the intake of candidates and screening, the, the work with the commission here to ensure that they know what kind of candidates are to be presented. There's only so much that they can do to, to reduce that, even where they already have a candidate pool, you know, they still need to evaluate. I, I think there's limits to where they're willing to go shorter than that 90 days, essentially.
Commissioner Forman?
I still think there's value in the 45-day window and keeping it a national, keeping it open for national candidates to apply. I did have a conversation with you about how, how that looks as far as this 90 days and why it's important. I, I think that, you know, just speaking to staff and, you know, their job is, it takes a lot to do what they do, to give, to give you the best quality, and, you know, not doing it within 90 days will really, really kind of mess with that process. And it's a really good process, it's just that the 90 days is not something that this commission, I, I don't see that happening. So, but I do value the, the national search, so I still want to keep that in the 45-day window.
Can I, can I add something, Mr. Mayor? What's interesting about this whole discussion is if we wanted to have a national search, that should have been a discussion five months ago. We made a process, for whatever reason, the council, majority of the council decided the process you made five months ago doesn't work. Now, hearing that, our human resource director said there's one more avenue I can reach on a national level, and I researched to find out that's the premium national level to find a manager. If we stick to what we decided, November 20th or 21st, whatever date it was, if we stick to that, maybe by the first of the year, starting the new year, we can start it with a new manager, and we get down to work, the holidays will be over, the manager will be hired. If you bring somebody in to speak to Commissioner Chernoff, to speak to Commissioner Sue, to speak to Vice Mayor Jean, and each one of us have a different idea of what we want for the manager, where does that get us? How's he gonna find a single man or woman that's gonna have exactly what all seven of us want, when all seven of us wanted something different? We're far better off to take the 92 candidates, research each one of us in the next 21 days till other candidates come in, and research everyone yourself. It's very simple to eliminate who never had a water plant, or to eliminate somebody that every eight months they changed jobs, or to eliminate somebody that wanted 400,000 instead of 300. You can start to eliminate yourself, take all 92, and let's get to the process of the dates you picked, and let's get to that, because we already had a process. Once we hire the headhunter, I'm laughing to myself, because once we hire the headhunter and we get down to that, are then the majority of the commission gonna say, okay, now, that doesn't seem to be working, I think what we have to do is put everybody's name in a hat, and we'll pick a name every, every day, there's 75 names, it'll only take us 75 days. I mean, what are we doing here? I just think that we need to really focus on the date we picked, and I'd like to call for a vote that we...
Is there a motion?
Making a motion right now that we reconsider and eliminate...
The headhunter.
And eliminate the headhunter, and I appreciate those that will support that, and make sure we do the process properly, as we already said it's underway.
Okay, so I, I know she called for the vote... Okay, so, I, I know she called for the vote, I'm going to respect that. I, I want to add some additional thoughts, maybe we could find something, depending if it fails, but Madam Clerk, if you can, I mean, we're going to go back, so we're going to go off, no, no, hang on, I want to go off of this one first. So, Madam Clerk, can you, yeah, do the roll call, please.
Commissioner Smith?
Yes.
Commissioner Smuckler?
Yes.
Commissioner Sue?
No.
Commissioner Chernoff?
Yes.
Commissioner Flormon?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Jean?
No.
Mayor Michael Joseph?
Yes.
Passes.
All right, so, now we cut off the headhunter.
My, oh.
My issue is this, this is my issue.
He turned it off.
This is my issue. I think the issue that Commissioner Sue has, and a lot of people that have expressed to us through various means, is the unbiased and very, like, a clean-hand approach on what, how things are being vetted, right? I, I want to respect that, because I, I get it, I get it, you know? There are certain people, the reason, I'm going to be a little bit more transparent. No, I'm going to be fully transparent, because that's what I'm supposed to do. The poll that I got, there were, and the reason why I didn't submit names, or what have you, is because when I looked at those names and I saw, and this, I want to put you on the spot, Jacob, you brought up three names that were always being, I'm like, this is not it. This, this can't be it. This can't be it. And it was this, three individuals that had various, a lot of issues. And the moment we had a discussion, just on those issues, those three were presented to us. No, what I'm saying, no, no, what I'm, no, what I'm saying, this, this, I'm just taking my perspective, so I want you to.
But how did you know the names?
No, no, what I'm saying, like, I, they gave us the names, they gave us the names that day. That was the craziest thing, like, what the heck is this? Because when I, this is what I'm saying, when I asked for the meeting, it was us to talk about how to move, like, where the process was at the time, because we're supposed to have a meeting on that issue the following week. But I said, hey, because of the Jewish holiday, let's try to meet up that morning to have more clarity, because there are certain people that weren't there, but the Vice Mayor, Commissioner Sue wasn't there, to provide clarity. I, when I got there, I got a folder with three names. Let me, hang on, hang on, Commissioner, I'm sorry, Manager, sorry, Manager.
Given out titles.
No, no, I'm not giving out titles. But what I'm saying is that.
It's a folder with 10 names.
No, it was, no, it was a folder with three names.
You're talking about the three names, if only three people submitted?
Well, what I'm saying, what I'm saying, well, I just want to clarify something, because what I'm saying is that when I called that meeting, right, it was only just to clarify. That was all, that, that's all I was trying to do, to clarify for the people that were not in attendance, and to get more clarity, right? When those names were presented that way, which was crazy to me or whatever, I'm like, what the heck is this? Right?
Okay, when I get, yes, Commissioner Flormon.
I feel that there's this perception that there's a hand on the scale, and I need to alleviate some of that perception. I'm not saying that's going to be alleviated by what we do now, moving forward, but it needs to be, at least be, I don't want to say respected, but to, you know, to, like I said, that day when I, when I, when I was talking about the issue where I moved, when I moved for the headhunter, because, you know, there's a lot of individuals that, that live in certain silos that just see certain things one way. And I didn't, and I didn't want to come off like I was righteous to the fact that I knew the answers, like, I'm like totally, like, omnipotent, this is my best decision. I understand how sensitive this job is, and how powerful this job is, and I want to at least show the people, as I said before, the ones that don't even like me, that I'm trying. And I'm trying to work with everybody in this commission, not to say that I don't respect what you guys put into it by submitting the names that you have, or what have you, right? But I just saw it as disingenuous when I got a folder with three names on them. That really bothered me. Like, no.
Mr. Mayor, why didn't you then say to him, oh, here's my three names?
Well, what, can I?
Yeah.
Okay, so, like, like I said, because I was taken aback, that, that day, I was really taken aback, when I saw that, I'm like, whoa, what's going on here? But I didn't.
Three names that, that were due a week before.
No, okay, 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 but, but just so we can get, because I don't want to, and one thing I, I want us to be all cognizant, cognizant of, is that we can't, everybody has a different way of managing their own process and make, coming to a decision, right? It might not be the best way of doing it for you, but that's just the way they do it. And I don't want to be, I don't want us to be in a position where we're demeaning people because that's their process. We can't do that. Like, I would, I just want it, because, like, everybody has their own process, and like, when we start saying, well, you're not doing your job, in that sense, like. No, no, I know, no, no, but what I'm saying is, like, when we, it's the, when we said the names weren't submitted, like, that type of stuff, because I think, because I don't know what everybody else's decision came to in regards to that, I just know that they made the decision to do that.
If I tell the HR director that I'm not satisfied with the candidates, and I openly express that to the manager, and the, and the thought, the response is, if you're not satisfied, the entire commission needs to decide on how to move forward, I shouldn't be forced to select from that pool.
And that, and that, and I understand that, I understand that. And I just want, I want us to all understand that. Commissioner Flormon, because I know you're, you're chopping at the bit.
No, Mayor, I just know we have other discussion items, I just want to refocus on what we're here to do. So, we talked about the headhunter, that's a decision that we decided not to move forward with. I'm glad that we are still doing national, and we're still doing the 45 days. I also appreciate what you said about the fact that you wanted to make sure that the process was more open, right? And I want also Commissioner Sue to understand, it's the 90-day window that seems to be the issue. The headhunter is something that I want, but the 90-day is something that they're not, they're not responding to. And so, I'm sorry, the 45 days is something that they're not responding to. And so, that's.
That's what they said to you.
Right.
They can't do it.
And I did not get that response, sir, but I did emphasize how, how important that was in any proposal that they, they give us, that there is a, a explicit focus on.
What you said was, you needed something to be done within 45 days. And nobody responded with 45-day proposals, they all responded with 90-day proposals, right?
Is that what you're saying?
Around that timeframe, 12 to 14 weeks, right?
No, let them answer the question. Jacob, Jacob, answer the question succinctly and to the point.
Yeah.
Because that's something that needs to be clarified.
Right.
I, I can confirm that I spoke to them explicitly about the urgency in, in completing this process. I can't say unequivocally that I share.
Say the work on, within that timeline.
45-day timeline for completion.
Because that's what I'm basing my, you know, my, my vote on, is the fact that.
We didn't create specs, remember, that was a point of, of discussion, that we didn't provide specs. We said as soon as possible, that was the attorney's, what he opined, but we never provided specs.
Right, but I, I appreciate that, Commissioner, Vice Mayor, the point, but, and I appreciate your response, Jacob, for clarifying that. But all of the, all of the, all of what they submitted to you was about 90 days, right? And they were saying that typically what their process takes is about 90 days.
And it was openly discussed of, you know, a need to do so sooner than that.
Got you, okay, so, I just wanted Commissioner Sue to understand, that's really where my, my, you know, my change or vote came from, is the 90 days. Anyways, so.
No, can, may I respond? I, I just want to, first of all, acknowledge you for, for really trying to, you know, like, accommodate and talk to me and, you know, like, make me feel heard, basically, but thank you very much. I just wanted to add, okay, 45 days is from which day? From today?
No, from October.
It would have been from the.
From October 9th, what was it? What day was it that we?
On Monday, the 6th.
October 6th.
October 9th.
October 6th.
Right, right. October 9th, was it, October 9th? No, 6th.
October 6th.
Okay, so, has anybody added 45 days to that?
Yes, we did, we did.
Right, and then what date does it fall on?
The 21st.
The 21st.
November.
Correct. And then, so, we are going to organize an interview, we're going to do all the hiring during the holiday season?
That's the next process that we have to discuss.
So, so, no, what I'm trying to say is, like, we, we put this 45-day thing, and I, and I get that, we also discussed during that meeting, that morning meeting, we said that we'd also have to accommodate and see what the headhunter had decided, or will decide on, or what they will propose. So, so far, they've given us their standard lead time, but they haven't given us the actual lead time that they, if, knowing that they have 92 applicants, right? And if they see, they feel that there's, there needs to be a mix, they haven't talked about possibly actually meeting the deadline. Now, if we wanted to hire someone by January, I think that's what Commissioner Smith said, right? Like, the new year, hopefully, the holidays are all gone, and then we would have something going on then, right?
We have six weeks.
Six weeks between then, then and January 1st. Are we not going to work the whole time, because it's Christmas coming?
I am.
Okay, but it doesn't matter, we, we decided not to go to the headhunter.
I know, I know.
Right.
We're just right back to where we started, and, but with the addition of 45 days for a national search. So we're right back to where we started. The only thing that's changed was the fact that we had voted for the 45 days.
No, we reopened it and changed the salary.
And the salary, thank you, Commissioner Chernoff. And in addition to that, it's a national nation, it's a nationwide search, that's it. So, the only thing we just did now was remove the headhunter. So, I don't, there's nothing more to be, to be, to really go into.
Yeah. Thank you for bringing it back to where it's supposed to be.
Your process in place.
We already have a process in place.
Ended the deadline.
Right.
And reopened it, and are looking wherever you can look, and raised the salary. Your process is, when those deadline, that deadline comes, everybody can look at all of the applicants that come in over, like, that Thanksgiving holiday.
December 1st.
And set a date for when you will ask, no, no, just, it's the process you have in place, you just need to set a new date for when everybody is, with the advantage of the increased pool, will offer their three choices out of the increased pool, and then anybody who gets a vote, you can move forward with. You'll probably have somewhere about 10 or 12 names that show up, more or less, and then you can decide which of them, you know, you can do background checks on them, as we also discussed, because it's a smaller pool, can do at least a preliminary background check, and then cut that, you know, to six or eight or whatever, and bring those people, you can have public interviews, we talked about, you can do private interviews with them, you can talk to them, and then vote on your semifinalists and your finalists. That's your process, but you do need to, with the deadline pushed back, with looking wherever you can, and increased salary, you'll need, at some point, not necessarily tonight, you'll need to set a new date by which people can evaluate the increased pool and cast their, their preliminary choice.
Next discussion item.
Yes.
All right. We're not, we're going to, no. All right, next, whoa, City Attorney, your item, please, let's do your item. Thank you.
There are two very quick items. The first is just an announcement that we need to have an executive session, I think I've said this before, but just in case, an executive session on the case of Raymond Gaylord Williams Trust versus NMB, and we're tentatively hoping to have that executive session, because we seem to be scheduled for a CRA meeting on the 4th before, excuse me, a CRA meeting at 4:00 PM on the date of our next commission meeting. We're asking for the executive session, based on comments made about our last executive session, you said do it earlier, so we're asking for 3:00 PM. The clerk has sent you a communication, I'm just saying on the record, we need to have the executive session. More pertinently.
Yes.
Was the issue with the Miami Dade County ordinance.
Mr. Attorney, before you go, a few of us are going to be going to an NLC on that date.
Which date?
November 18th.
Is it?
Yeah.
It's our commission meeting day.
Three of us.
Well, then, perhaps you want to change your commission meeting.
Well, maybe. Why didn't you look at the calendar when you booked it? You know, your, yours.
That's when the commission meeting.
That's when it's, uh.
Commission meeting is scheduled.
A scheduled meeting, but I wouldn't plan, you know, I'm not, if I'm going to go away, then I'm going to miss the meeting, or I'm not going to go away and miss the meeting. Like, you know, you should be.
Here's a question, here's a question.
Considerate of that.
Here's a question, because I know Tuesday is a holiday, that Tuesday is Veterans Day. Can we have our regular, ooh, state, no, 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 hang on, no, no, I, we can resolve this, hang on, hang on, we can resolve this. So, when is the NLC? Like, for what date is it?
The 17th, or commission meeting is the 17th?
The 18th.
We can do it on the 17th? Then, like, so, that's, that's the 17th, we can do that?
Could I just ask when we were going to change this meeting?
No, they're, they're making a request now.
Well, I mean, I'm just saying. Shouldn't, they've known about this trip for months, why are they making this request now?
Because we didn't look at the date and say, oh, we have a commission meeting.
Oh, so, wait, so then why are we bothering to do a second commission meeting every month if you're not going to look at the date?
Wait, hang on, hang on, hang on, hang on, wait, 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 hang on.
17th would work.
So I want to make a motion, so we can have the meeting on November 17th. Do I have a?
Second.
Okay, I have a motion and a second, right?
Can we look at the calendar real quick?
It's the 17th.
That's a Monday.
Come on a Monday.
Can we look at the calendar, wait, hang on, hang on, look at the calendar, please. 17th is definitely a Monday. I know it's a Monday.
Definitely did we have a commission meeting, but we also had a CRA meeting booked for that night. It's well-advanced in our calendars, so I think the next time you book a trip somewhere, please look at your calendars to make sure that there's a commission meeting every, every month on the third Tuesday of the month. But does everybody recognize we could have adjourned and think we're having the meeting and we have no?
Well, no, 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 well, no, no, we're resolving it now, the, the manager, the manager says it's okay, we're fine, all in favor, say aye? Aye. Any opposed?
I oppose.
Okay, it passes.
Well, Mackenzie didn't vote.
Well, when he comes back.
Oh, it still passes.
Okay.
I mean, I, I, I can take back my oppose and give it a positive, but I'm not sure I can come. So I'll, if they need that date, then I'm going to support you with that date and say yes, but I'm.
If, if something happens, something happens, we understand, but.
Did you check your calendars? Is the 17th good for you?
I also wanted to say, when, when, when our appointments are booked, we don't know who's booking what. So if someone's going on the trip, I don't know that so-and-so is going on the trip until, okay, hey, are you going? So.
No, but wait, if we don't have a quorum.
Exactly.
Like, yo, if you guys are going to go on to Thanksgiving, I gotta do that, like, I'm sorry, like, I, I was going to be like, no, but. That being said, please, City Attorney, finish up that one item, please, right now.
Okay, the, the other item is that, as you know, the county ordinance was up for a vote, second reading, and it passed 9-3, pretty overwhelming vote. We have sought the assistance of outside counsel, my firm will also be involved with it, but the same counsel that represented us and helped draft litigation in case the governor did not veto it, has, they're familiar with the issues, and we went back to the firm of Coffey Burlington. Mr. Coffey was there in person for first reading, and his partner, named partner Jeff Crockett was there for second reading. So they've, they're assisting us. We have reason to think that there is a substantial possibility that this is not legal for the county to do. I don't want to get into all the reasons, I'll name one, is that it may in fact be preempted by the state and the county can't get into it. So at this time, what I would like to ask is the authorization of the council, a commission, excuse me, add me doing it, Commissioner, the authorization of the commission for us to initiate litigation against Miami Dade County to challenge the ordinance that they've passed and whatever is related to that.
Can I just ask you, through the mayor, are you talking the same two attorneys that came down there to speak?
Well, it's that law firm.
It's that law firm.
Coffey Burlington and Green Spoon Water.
Okay, is there another law firm that maybe has a stronger ability to do this kind Okay, is there another law firm that maybe has a stronger ability to do this kind of litigation?
Not in my opinion. We did talk to two or three other law firms initially about providing, helping us as outside counsel, and they all backed off, okay? There's concern. People have issues at the county. Both Mr. Coffee, who is one of our best attorneys, and his partner Jeff Crockett teach constitutional law at University of Miami Law School. They're very familiar with it. They did a great job for us on the HB one. I mean, you know, there's, they're not the only lawyers in town, but they're very good lawyers. They know these issues. And I think they're, they're good, but the, that's my opinion.
Move to approve.
Okay. All right, so we have a motion and a second. Commissioner Vice Mayor, you wanted to say something?
I did. Thank you so much, Mr. Mayor. So one of the, two of the things I had requested, I'm still waiting for from you. And, you know, I don't want to speak to those in public, but one of the things is that each of these commissioners and the mayor should be briefed. When you have strategy, obviously, we understand the sensitivity of this case, but I've requested for some things pertaining to this, which I haven't gotten, right? So I think that moving forward, these are the things that we're talking about. Commissioner Smith's point is very valid, very valid point. And so from the top of your head for you to say, or maybe from your research, for you to say, you know what, they're the best. Yes, that's your opinion, right? But this is a very serious topic, which I know you're taking seriously. But to her point, we want to see options. We deserve options because this is a big deal. For us to publicly say that we're going to challenge Miami Dade County's decision is not, is something that each person should have been briefed on, not spur of the moment, hey, here's what we're going to do. That's the respect part. Respect gains respect. And that's what I want to really echo on. Respect each person up here. To give us that autonomy to, to hear your thoughts, not just in the spur of the moment.
Thank you. All right, we have a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Passes unanimously.
May I ask the clerk something about the calendar, please? I have to go back to it. So.
Point.
I just wanted to say that I'm, because I put my commission dates on my calendar and I sell, no. So obviously, obviously, they won't be here for the November twentieth, the Thursday meeting, so please remove that from the calendar because they, we're, we're changing the date to the seventeenth, but they wouldn't have been here on the eighteenth or on the twentieth, which was the second.
That's correct.
Which is the second schedule because normally it's the fourth Thursday of the month, but because it's Thanksgiving, we moved it to the twentieth. So please, you can remove the twentieth from the calendar because they like to complain that they don't have a second meeting, but then they don't show up.
But technically, that's only up to us. It's the commission to move it.
They make a.
Well, no, we don't. We have two discussion items we want to resolve before we go.
Mr. Mayor, I know what they voted on already. You don't, you didn't have a different date that they could come and have a meeting so that I could attend.
That was just the, the seventeenth worked because the.
She, she has a conflict that.
No, I understand. I'm not saying that, but I looked at eleventh, that's Veteran, Veteran Day. I looked at the thirteenth, that's, we have a state of education. So it was like.
What happened to the tenth? Can you do Monday, the tenth?
Let's leave it. I'm going to do the best I can to be here.
Please. We have two discussion items you have on your, on the agenda. I don't want them to roll over, so go ahead. Right.
Thank you so much. All right. So it's the regular commission meeting minutes. This is from June seventeenth. The vote was unclear. The, there's a conflict because Commissioner Chernoff wrote an email, Commissioner Chernoff wrote an email to a resident saying that he voted no on it. And then, and then when we counted the votes and when the votes were actually counted by the clerk, it was actually, it was actually Smith, Smucker, and Sue who voted no. So I just, and I wanted to be clear that.
On what item?
It was a meeting minutes. So it was a consent agenda item, nine point two, and on June seventeenth. This was the one that was including the Japan trip. So I remember that I voted no. You said you don't know what you're voting for, so you were voting no, right? Jay said to me that he didn't vote and a no vote, and an obscene vote is a no vote, right?
That's not true.
I didn't vote.
Right, he said he didn't vote. So if he not voting is a no vote.
No, it's not. That's not true.
I've heard, is a no vote.
No, it's a no vote.
It's neither. If you don't vote on an item, you don't count towards the vote. You're, you're supposed to vote on everything. You can't abstain, but if you're off the dais, you don't have to cast the vote.
So then the vote was six, nine, yeah, seven.
But off the dais, we heard that if you were off the dais at the League of Cities, that you had to come back and they had to take your vote.
Okay, well, I, I don't agree. You may have been told that by them. If you have a conflict and you're not on the dais when a vote comes up, you still have to file the papers that say you had a conflict. But if you're simply absent, for instance, if you're in the restroom and you're not there to vote and you're not, not voting because you have a conflict that needs to be disclosed, you know, they don't stop the meeting for you to come back. There's a vote and a vote is taken and whoever votes, those are the votes that determine it. So being off the dais, it's like if you miss a meeting, they don't say, well, how would you have voted on everything for the meeting you missed and didn't come to? That's not how it works. You vote. So, you know, I mean, somebody has an opinion? That's my legal opinion. You, if you had a conflict, you can't avoid declaring your conflict by absenting yourself from the dais. But if you, you could miss the whole meeting. When you come back, they don't say, how would you have voted on every item that was at the meeting you missed? And if you're off the dais because you're taking a personal phone call from your family, you don't have to come back and say, this is how I would have voted. That's not our, our procedure.
So Mr. Attorney, Commissioner Chernoff was sitting right here, but because he was also confused, as we all were, with the, you know, the walk-on item for Japan, he did not vote. So the question is, he's sitting here and he did not vote, is that considered a no vote or a yes vote? Then the.
Mr. Mayor.
I don't think we could have enough.
You can sit up here on the dais and they take a vote and you don't vote?
No.
All right, Madam, Madam Clerk wants to say something, Madam Clerk.
But it's not a, we, we just say, it's not, doesn't make it a yes or a no. But no, you're really not allowed to sit here and not vote on something. If you're on the dais, you are required to vote.
Madam Clerk.
It's a no.
No, Madam Clerk wants, Madam Clerk has a, has a point that she wants to make. Go ahead, Madam Clerk.
This was brought to my attention from Commissioner Sue and at one time from Commissioner Chernoff. If the mayor asks all in favor, no one says anything, then he asks any opposed. And I respect everyone here. I even asked for clarification that day and no one said anything. To call me after the meeting and to say, well, I meant to vote this or I didn't vote that, I can't go by that. And, you know, to respect whoever, all the residents of North Miami Beach, however they feel, you can't go back and say, well, the vote is incorrect. I have a gentleman in the office. His name is Sean Fass. And we've watched that over and over again. He's very meticulous and I've sent you a clip of it. So I respectfully, for you to say that, you know, the vote was incorrect, and I don't normally go back and forth with any of the commissioners because, you know, I respect you all. I even, whenever you say something, even if it's not to my, the best of my recollection, I sit back and I take and I'll pull you to the side. But this item has been on the meeting and it's been going over and over again. And Commissioner Sue, what you're, I mean, you feel however you feel, the clerk's office didn't do anything or record anything incorrectly for that meeting. Commissioner Chernoff, I, I mean you no disrespect, but all of you, if you do not want to vote for something and it's asked any opposed, I can't record what wasn't said and for the next day or the week after for you to call and make a, you know, statement, oh, I didn't mean to do, I, I, I don't work that way. And yes, Vice Mayor Jean, I know we all need to get better. And if this is not meant to be going back and forth with anybody, but we looked at that and the clerk's department, yes, any, every department needs to get better. If that gentleman looked at it, I looked at it, I sent you a clip of that. If you do not say that you opposed, then no, you don't oppose.
Well, I mean.
Voice vote, let me just add, the voice vote, by the way, excuse me, Commissioner, but the voice vote is, doesn't always record accurately, people, that's one of the perils of a voice vote. You know, it, it can be a little hard for the presiding officer. And when you hear all in favor and a bunch of people are saying aye, and then you say all opposed and no one says no, then it's presumed that it passed on a voice vote. And the recordation of it is, you, you don't have a precise record of who voted how because it was a voice vote. And anyone has the privilege of being recorded as a no vote, if you wish to be recorded that way on a voice vote or anything else. You are required, if you're on the dais, to cast a vote. But on a voice vote, it's just difficult to determine. However, the clerk is also correct. We have a procedure. We have minutes. We record the minutes. We present the minutes. The minutes are approved. There is no mechanism that I'm aware of. I, I don't know everything, but I'm not aware of anything that says after your minutes are officially approved, and especially on a voice vote where there's no definitive evidence otherwise. Now, I hate sports metaphors in politics, but when they say that if you appeal a ruling, there has to be clear evidence in order to overturn.
They're in convincing.
Ruling on the field. In this case, if there's absent clear evidence otherwise, you simply, there's no mechanism I'm aware of that you can come along months later and say, I think we should either revote, especially on something that's already occurred, or I want, you know, to change the minutes because I don't think that they were accurate. Well, I mean, absent clear evidence of that, even, even then, I don't know how you go back and change your official minutes months later. I've never heard of that.
You know, I want to say through the mayor that many, many times I've called the clerk. She'll testify that I didn't think the vote was correct. And there's only been one time of all those times where I still felt differently. But I have watched Sean work.
Yeah.
He has been a real partner to North Miami Beach. And I know how the clerk's reputation, forget anything else, her reputation. So even though I felt that I still thought, I knew that, you know what, let it go, let it go. Because you don't have all that behind you. I think he's been here ten years. He knows that inside and outside. And he'll go every mile to play it over and over and over, just so you understand it too. I just, I feel bad sometimes about what counsel people feel so strong about. But sometimes you just have to, being in government, you have to let things go. You just have to let them go.
So may I just chime in just a little?
Yeah. Because we need to get to your next item because we want to make sure we don't have any rollovers.
Okay, okay. So thank you very much for cognizant, being cognizant. I am not, I, first of all, I don't want to, I don't want the clerk to understand, like, I felt like she's not doing her job well. That's first and foremost. The point that I'm trying to make is that if Jay had not voted and according to other parliamentarians, that means that it's a no. And Commissioner Smith, Commissioner Smucker, and I voted no. So that makes this, that consent agenda.
But he didn't say no. So that means it was a yes. He kept silent.
So, so I. No, I got it, I got it. So.
I have the Florida law opinion here because one time I refused to vote on something. And, well, I refused and I did not vote and I was, I did ask the attorney, yes. So he goes, so the, the question is whether an elected official must vote on items at a commission meeting, assuming a proper motion and second are received, where conflict of interest does not exist under the Florida Ethics Code or Miami Dade and City of North Miami Beach Ethics Code. Short answer, yes. Florida law requires a vote to be recorded for each member of the city commission of North Miami Beach present unless a conflict of interest exists under the Florida Ethics Code or Miami Dade or City of North Miami Beach Ethics Code. Moreover, the failure to vote by a member of the city commission should never be recorded as a yes or no vote in the official records of the city. Further, an argument can be made that a failure to vote may be a violation of the intent and spirit of section two dash one of the city code, which provides that a member of the city commission must be present at a city commission meeting to conduct official business unless the elected official has to leave for emergency reasons or matters beyond the control of the member of the city commission voting conflict. And there's facts and analysis if you.
That's an attorney general's opinion, right?
This was.
Or is it an ethics commission?
Well, it says Florida law was, this, this was the attorney then who gave me this opinion, but it says Florida law requires that they are, they're citing Florida law. That you do, but, but you do have to vote, but it. Right. Right, but when, right, but it says you do have to vote, but if, for whatever reason you did not vote, it doesn't mean it's a yes or a no.
It's not a yes or a no.
Okay. So, so, Mr. Mayor, so we, let's take this opportunity to, you know, to set some ground rules and things like that. So we know that like now that if we're not voting or we've never said nay to, you know, all, anybody opposed, you know what I'm saying? Like, just can we make that clear? And so moving forward, like, I'm not going to change that, 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 that vote. I just wanted to make sure that like moving forward, we know now that we must vote.
I think that's pretty clear. Like, we've been doing it. We've already done this to death, but in relation to the, where am I going? You were just, when you, when you can object to the vote, when, before we approve the vote and say that there's something wrong with it. Yes.
No, I didn't, I didn't hear anybody.
What we're saying is it's two months later, you can't object to it.
Well, I actually put it on the agenda the next, the following month.
But it never got followed through.
It never, exactly. That's why I wanted two meetings. So anyway, my point is that to say that this was supposed to actually be heard and then voted on and then just, like, you know, go through the actual dispute, right? Two months later, I'm not going to ask that vote to change. What I want to make sure, the ground rules on that one is that we don't rush the vote, especially when we have thirty items on a consent agenda. Like, I don't know if the mayor is, is willing to do some kind of roll call or everybody has a clear vote and a yea or nay, whatever voice vote you want to do.
Some of those things as a commissioner, you just have to know. That if you want to say no, you have to say no.
No, that's what I'm saying, is that like there were, there were, Commissioner Smucker said no. So in this, in this instance, if.
But why did he say no? He could have said no.
I don't know. It was recorded that way from Sean Fass.
Mr. Mayor, if I, if I may say something to move us forward, Madam Clerk, I, I want to make sure that you're good, right?
Yeah.
And I think a lot of what we do is political theatrics. So we all know what our responsibility is when there's an item call.
All right.
If somebody chooses not to speak, you either want to be recorded as a yes or no vote or ambiguous. So let's not project that on the clerk. We need, like Commissioner Smith is saying, we know what we have to do.
True. All right, next item, Commissioner Sue, your next item is the.
So the next item is the condo association.
Man, we're gonna wrap up.
The homeowners transparency ordinance that we want to put through. Commissioner Smith, when are we having the, the town hall?
Well, we're going to try to have one. We're working on that. It was supposed to be coming soon, but unfortunately I had a delay, personal delay, but I definitely will. Before we end the meeting, and please don't go till twelve.
I do have a point in the mayor's discussion, something.
Okay, and I, I also have one thing I want to address the manager for his instructions. So I don't know, we're going to, we're working on it because I have to take and consider my time.
Okay. Because I wanted to have this ordinance be also communicated to the people and let them know, you know, if they had anything else they wanted to add or subtract.
It's, it's law that they have to do it. One of the things we're thinking is to get a mail out to every one of the condos and that's what we're working on. My aide is working on that now as we speak.
Okay.
And if it has to be set up a little bit later for us to have a personal meeting, it will. But she's working on that now. Thank you.
Thank you.
I just want to direct with, through the mayor, if I could real quick, I want to direct the manager. I understand from the clerk that the staffs at some of these meetings do not take minutes. The planning and zoning board, the utility board, please address to them that every board like that will take minutes and that, so that we can, I, I needed those minutes and to find out it was my neighbor across the street that I see twice a day, he just unfortunately put his dog down, maybe that little puppy rests its feet. I mean, I need those minutes when there's no, so I can call them and see what am I missing?
Commissioner Smith is correct, though. Those bodies need to take official minutes.
All right, thank you.
There were no minutes.
Thank you. Commissioner Smucker has one last discussion before I go to manager discussion. Go ahead.
Okay, so I brought this up earlier this year about charging for-profit vendors for tents, tables, and chairs and nothing ever. Yeah, and nothing has happened.
What do you want to happen?
Well, we have for-profit vendors who are coming to our events and we're paying for the tents, tables, and chairs. And I feel that they should be paying for the tents, but nothing's happened. We had.
They need a price sheet.
You want a price sheet or do you want to just?
Well, I mean, I, I spoke about this like in March. Well, I mean, I, I spoke about this, like, in March, and then the back-to-school happened, and, and...
Commissioner Smucker, you can ask the manager to bring something back to the commission as to what their, it, it, it's administrative, it doesn't require a vote, you could have a vote.
Right.
But you can simply ask the manager to bring something back that will be a policy...
Thank you, because we're paying for these tents, these tables, and these chairs, and I don't mind, you know, there's, there's, there's people that give out stuff, and, and are doing healthy things and all that, I don't mind. But then there's, like, there's a vendor that sells stuff, and yet, you know, they should pay for it, so I'm, I'm...
All I need is, is direction, and we will charge those that we feel need to be charged, and there'll be a different set of pricing for profit versus nonprofit.
Man, Mr. Manager, if you want to just propose, and you put it in writing, and it doesn't require a vote unless somebody is not happy with it...
And it's consistent for you to do it.
I'll work with the Commissioner Smucker.
Right. I'm not trying to make money off of them.
No, no, no.
Don't think it's fair that...
100% is, is, I, I definitely agree that if they commit, they need to show up, because we're providing, you know, and, and some of this, whatever fee it is, nominal, whatever it is, gives them a reason to show, because they put some skin in the game.
Right, and that's the other thing, sometimes we rent tables, chairs, and tents, and they don't show up.
Do you have the consensus?
All right, thank you.
So, we cleared out the agenda, one last thing? Okay, yes. No, no, do, what do you have?
No, I have nothing. You said you got a mayor...
Yeah, and I'm done. Public Works Director, please come on up. This is an Eastern Shores thing that needs to be resolved, and I'm, that needs to be resolved. This needs to be resolved. I know, it's not going to go past 11, this can be resolved relatively soon around later. There was a mistake done, in regards to the repaving over there, that has become a major issue. If we don't have some type of town hall to explain to them how we're going to fix this issue in an expeditious way, I'm going to lose it. Because they're, they're, they're righteous in this, and they're right. They're right. And I, I want us to engage them in a more active approach, and to give them actual information. I know we have the HOA there, but we have to make a very, yeah, very...
Mayor, I apologize for interrupting, but...
Yes.
The city's attorney's office has looked at this issue. There is obviously, I understand people have a problem, but to be clear, what the additional work that was done, we have been looking at this issue in conjunction with the manager's office, and the, the level of milling was so small, that maybe, how it made it worse, it, it's not, I, I...
Because they use, they use cheap, cheap material.
No, no, here's a, no, no, wait, look, here's an issue.
They took the lowest bidder.
No, no, here comes the issue. Look, and, and I want to, and I, and I want to respect this, very much so. We need to do a, a better job in explaining what the heck is going on.
There's still a problem, and you can still address it, but to say that it was absolutely actionable against the previous contractor is not at all clear.
Okay, Mr. Mayor, we don't care if it was actionable or not, we need to fix the problem.
Yeah, here's, that's, that's, that's the main issue, because there's a lot, I, I've talked with our Public Works Director, and I know she's talked to each one of us, because we know that what happened over there was messed up, and they are complaining, and they have every right to complain.
Absolutely.
Every right. And they need to have this mitigated. We need to know what the cost is, but we also have to do a better outreach in reaching, not just to the HOA, which, I, look, I, I, Ayupa, not...
Espoa.
Espoa. Ms. Roskins, I apologize.
Property owner.
Dr. Roskins, I apologize. However, we need to do a more robust approach in educating what we can and what we'll, what we will do.
Yes, sir.
And if that has to be a town hall meeting over there, where we rent a space, or we do it at Duffy's or what have you, that needs to happen.
Yep.
Because they're very, they're righteous on the resolve, because when I, when I'm speaking to you, and speaking to a couple of other residents, that I know we don't ever agree on anything, but this one, they deserve this.
We all agree.
We, you know what, Mr. Mayor?
Simply ask as a consensus, you can ask Public Works to develop a remediation...
You can ask the manager.
Thank you, Mr. Attorney.
Regardless of how it happened, or whether...
Or who's going to pay for it.
I don't want to concede it.
We, we need, through the mayor, we need a town hall meeting anywhere. There's parking issues, there's drainage issues, there's flooding issues, because the pipes haven't been cleaned, and they're broken from the drainage to the canal. We definitely, the sidewalk...
Could be that, could be that.
We need a town hall.
And that's the thing, and we need, we need, we need a town hall sooner around and later, to accommodate, but at the end of the...
Before we have the town hall, Mr. Mayor, to the attorney's point, you cannot go before the residents without a comprehensive...
No, 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 I, I understand what I, what I have in the plan.
So, yeah, you have to have a plan.
No, no.
You can't just go out there and say, what's, yes, they need to be heard, they need, their concerns are valid, but the city's position needs to be clear on moving forward, because you don't want to go before the, the people and not have a clear consensus between the parties.
We need to develop a remediation.
We are going to develop a remediation, but we need to make an initial first step in getting people on the same page, and saying what we're going to be doing. That's what I, I need that type of outreach, because they're, they are, they feel, and they're, and they're verified, like, we're not doing it enough. They don't know that what's going on internally, and I want them to know that. They pay, they pay a lot of taxes. I'm not, I'm not saying that that's reason for them to have a lot more attention, I'm just being honest, all right? I'm being honest.
Can I add to what you're saying? In addition to that, Mr. Mayor, there's a long list of items for Eastern Shores. It's not, that's one of the larger issues, but there are many...
That impacts a lot of people.
So, the plan is not just to add the staff to the, to the, to front, without having a comprehensive approach to addressing the concerns.
That's a part of the process.
I just have two seconds.
Go ahead, because you got four minutes, and then we're, we're done. But I just wanted to add that. Go ahead, go ahead, Public Works.
So, so I want to say with 100% certainty, we do have a strategic plan for Eastern Shores. Every one of those things have a timeline, they've been tackled, they've been in the pipeline, and we've been in constant communication with the city manager. I do agree with the mayor that we owe effective communication with Eastern Shores. I feel like that's where the disconnect is. I'm not sure if that's a town hall meeting, or if it's a newsletter, I'm not sure, but I know the manager is working on how we're going to bridge the gap.
And you've been able to relay those things through the attorney, because from a liability perspective, when you're saying we have a plan, you still need to run those things by him, to ensure that we're all on the same page, through the manager.
So, so we have, we have, I'm just saying, Public Works, Carleen has done a great job, there is a plan for, for the items there. There was direction prior to, to get it done, regardless, so the plan, regardless with the attorney's office, who's at fault, who's not at fault, the plan is the plan, because the direction was to, to, to get it done.